Okay, live stream is up. Sergeants, will you begin your recordings?
Computer recording started.
Cloud recording is up.
Backup is rolling.
Owen, you may begin with opening.
Good morning, and welcome to today's remote New York City Council hearing on the Committee on Education. At this time, would council staff please turn on their video? Please place electronic devices on vibrate or silent. If you wish to submit testimony, you may do so at testimony@council.nyc.gov. That is testimony@council.nyc.gov. Thank you, Chair, we're ready to begin.
Okay. Good morning. I'm Councilmember Mark Traeger, Chair of the Education Committee. I'd like to thank everyone for joining today's hearing. As Chair of the Education Committee and a former educator, I strongly believe that any conversation about school safety must be coupled with an emphasis on school climate and social emotional supports for students. So before getting into the city's transfer of school safety agents from the NYPD to DOE and the package of legislation we'll hear today, I want to begin by making it absolutely clear. We are continuing to fail to do enough to meet the social emotional needs of our students. In our schools, there are still more school safety agents than guidance counselors and social workers combined. At a time when our students are suffering from trauma, social isolation, and mental health issues. With emergency departments reporting increases in children presenting with severe suicidal ideation, this is inexcusable. With increased trauma, mental health issues, and distance from the routine of school, it is likely that we will see increases in behavioral issues in schools when we are able to return to in-person learning. The Education Committee has heard from students for years that police officers in schools do not make them feel safe at school. Social workers, guidance counselors, and appropriately trained staff make them feel safe. Over my tenure as Chair, the Council has taken this feedback seriously. We created an initiative to ensure that every school has access to a guidance counselor. We have added hundreds of new DOE social workers, funded Title IX coordinators, and created a dedicated City Council initiative for social and emotional supports for students. In fiscal year 2021, we restored the mayor's proposed $4.8 million cut of 38 social worker positions. The proposed cut, we restored $11.6 million to Single Shepherd Program, which provides guidance counselors and social workers at appropriate ratios in two school districts. And most recently, the cut to community schools. And that's in addition to restoring the cut of $100 million in fair student funding, which would have meant thousands of educators and school staff losing their positions. Our children cannot learn as effectively if they do not feel safe, supported, and welcome at school. At a time when students feel disconnected from school, we need to make sure that every single adult who they interact with in a building is trained in how to treat trauma rather than exacerbate trauma. We need to acknowledge that policing in schools has historically disproportionately harmed the very students who are most likely to have experienced the most adverse impacts during the pandemic. Data analyzed by the New York Civil Liberties Union revealed that in the 2018-2019 school year, Black and Hispanic students who represented about 66% of the student body accounted for 88.9% of police interventions in schools. And out of the 694 school-based arrests in 2019, Black and Hispanic students accounted for 90% of those arrests, compared to just 5% for white students. It is also worth noting from the same New York City Liberties Union analysis, school safety agents were only responsible for around 20% of those arrests. The transfer of the Division of School Safety from the DOE to the NYPD in 1998 was a reflection of the Giuliani administration's aggressive zero tolerance model, which meted out severe consequences for minor infractions. After many years of this punitive structure, the Council was able through budget negotiations to secure a commitment from the administration to shift the functions and civilian stack of the NYPD School Safety Division back to the DOE. I do firmly believe that school safety personnel should be under the jurisdiction of our education system, not law enforcement. Despite their outsized impact on a school's climate and culture, school safety agents do not currently report to and are not accountable to principals, which limits the ability of schools to develop a unified approach to school culture. However, we have much more work to do. We need nothing short of structural change that completely re-envisioned the roles that school safety personnel, who are mostly women of color, play in a school. We could acknowledge the place traditionally traditional security functions like protecting the entrance of a building have in school safety, while also understanding that at a time when students are experiencing more trauma than ever, we need to make sure that our approach to school safety is aligned to meet the holistic needs of children and to continue to shift from punitive policing-based interventions to restorative healing-centered ones. We have to listen to our students and ensure that they are at the table when we are having these conversations. I am painfully aware, despite assurances to the contrary, at how far short we have fallen of engaging students, advocates, and practitioners in a genuine, non-performative way. This committee has received no information whatsoever on how the administration is maintaining its commitment to having stakeholders at the table, nor on any progress towards moving School Safety Division personnel from NYPD to DOE, nor on any efforts to reimagine what school safety means in 2021. Let me be clear, this is unacceptable. This committee has always worked hard to develop policy in partnership and consultation with those who are most impacted by it. I am committed to the extent of my ability to work to rectify the areas where the city has fallen short of its promises and rhetoric and to ensure that voices of all stakeholders, including students, parents, educators, and advocates, are present in this effort to redefine the role of school safety agents and adopt plans to improve school climate and make schools safe havens for learning. Today's hearing is on four pieces of legislation. The package of legislation we will hear today aims to move our education system further in the direction of a reimagined approach to school safety, ensure that the transition of School Safety Division from NYPD to DOE is not merely a clean transfer of functions and personnel from one jurisdiction to another and help develop a more supportive role for SSAs to play within the school community. I will now turn to two bills I have introduced. I am proud to sponsor introduction number 2226, which would require annual reports on employment turnover of school safety agents and other school safety personnel. The bill would provide much-needed transparency on the employment of SSAs, including the number of transfers between schools, how many SSAs have been fired, how many have resigned, and the average length of employment. While we already have existing reporting requirements for complaints against SSAs, such information is meaningless unless we know what the consequences are for these complaints. Are we shifting the problem from school to school? Or if warranted, are we firing those who should not be part of the school community? Introduction number 2226 will begin to bring transparency to this. I'm also proud to sponsor introduction number 2227, which would require the DOE to report on school principal evaluations of school safety agents. When the DOE and NYPD were amending the SSA MOU between their respective agencies, I was adamant that school principals be given a role into the evaluation of the SSAs assigned to their school based on feedback that I had heard from school communities and also based on what I witnessed as a teacher myself. I was extremely satisfied when the MOU was eventually released that it included language to make that into reality. However, it is very unclear whether this commitment has ever been implemented. Now that SSAs are being transferred to the jurisdiction of the DOE, I want to ensure that principals continue to have this important voice into the evaluation of school safety personnel stationed in their schools. And to be very clear, school safety has an important role to play, but they cannot dominate the role on school safety and school climate. Introduction number 2227 will require the DOE to report on how this will be operationalized once the transfer has happened. Today, we will also hear introduction number 2211, sponsored by Councilmember Konstantinides, which would ensure that the NYPD will be fully removed from school safety no later than June 2022, except as necessary to address an imminent risk to public safety or property. The proposed bill would require significant reforms to the program and the role of SSAs by August 2021, so that SSAs no longer make arrests, carry weapons, or mechanical restraints, or wear war enforcement uniforms on school grounds. Lastly, once under the jurisdiction of the DOE, this proposed bill would mandate that school safety personnel be retrained with a focus on areas such as restorative justice, child and youth development, and de-escalation. Finally, we will hear introduction number 2188, sponsored by my colleague, Councilmember Adana Iala, which would regulate the NYPD's response to children in emotional crisis within public schools. Specifically, the proposed bill establishes procedures for department personnel responding to children in emotional crisis and limits the use of mechanical restraints on children in emotional crisis. I look forward to hearing the DOE's thoughts on how SSAs will be transitioned from the NYPD and, most importantly, what the DOE will do to truly make school safety personnel a part of the school community and support them in uplifting and sustaining students and not as vehicles towards punitive deterrence. Importantly, I look forward to hearing feedback from parents, from educators, students, school leaders, and other educational stakeholders. I want to thank everyone who's testifying today. I want to thank also the City Council staff, which is extraordinary. Malcolm Butahorn, Jan Atwell, Kalima Johnson, Chelsea Bedamore, Misses Sarkisian. I also want to thank my staff, Aneskae, Vanessa Ogo, and Maria Henderson. And we will now hear from Councilmember Iala, sponsor of introduction number 2188. We need to unmute Councilmember Iala.
Thank you. Zoom, zoom, everybody. Good morning and thank you, Chair Traeger. I'm really excited to be here today. As was stated, you know, we're going to be we've introduced in my bill Intro 2188. And I wanted to just give a little bit of context as to, you know, how we arrived at this bill. So a little bit over a year ago, I was reading an article where a recent report on the number of children in schools who were handcuffed was highlighted. This was a report that was published by the Advocates for Children. And it clearly broke down, right? What exactly was happening in schools when children were suffering from some sort of emotional distress? So for the year 2016 to 17, the NYPD responded to 2,702 incidents in public schools involving a student in emotional crisis that were being sent to the hospital for psychological evaluation. 95% of those interventions involve students of color. And 12%, or roughly 330 of such students, incidents resulted in the NYPD using handcuffs, including on children as young as five years old. As a parent, I was horrified by those numbers. I don't know, you know, how any of you feel about that, but the idea of, you know, one of my children, and I happen to be the parent of a child, my eldest son suffered from, you know, ADHD when he was young and, you know, had a propensity for having, you know, fits in school. And I was horrified by the idea that so many, and I was, you know, further horrified by the data that suggested that many of these cases were happening in districts like mine. So Intro 2188 would address this by regulating the police department's response to children in emotional crisis within the public schools. Specifically, the bill establishes procedures for department personnel responding to children in emotional crisis and limits the use of mechanical restraints on children in emotional crisis. Additionally, school safety personnel will be required to receive training on identifying and responding to children in emotional crisis. I want to clarify that in the event of a true emergency, the school staff would still have the ability to call 911. This would not prevent them from being able to do that, but rather it would set forth a few basic steps that officers need to take before jumping in. Steps that are also in the DOE's Chancellor's Regulations governing emotional crisis and that any officer should be trained to do already, such as conferring with members of the School Crisis Intervention Team and mental health staff, if available or applicable, before intervening and finding out what the escalation strategies have already been tried. Third, the bill would make clear that the police can help de-escalate students in emotional crisis in ways after following these few basic steps. I look forward to hearing to everyone's testimony today, and thank you for having us today. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember, for your leadership. Next, we're going to hear from an opening statement from our public advocate, Jomani Williams.
Thank you. Can you hear me? Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. As mentioned, my name is Jomani Williams. I'm a public advocate for the City of New York. I want to thank Chair Traeger and the members of the Committee on Education for holding this hearing, and Chair Traeger for his leadership on this and so many issues when it comes to education. The bill is being heard today all center on the role of the New York City Police Department in school safety, something that has been problematic for several years now before the city budget vote last year. I call for commitment from the mayor and the council for a just transition away from the current school safety model over the following year. I'm proud to see my colleagues in the council trying to do just that by bringing forth these pieces of legislation. I'm also proud of the larger package that I know will be heard over the next few weeks that I must say doesn't just focus on simple police reform that people often bring up, but I think really begins to have a conversation to redefine what public safety actually is. Discussions around school safety reform cannot only focus on school safety agents. We must also include the topics of psychological safety and emotional safety in these conversations. One of the points in my redefining public safety plan released in September of last year aimed to provide thriving environments for young people in our public schools. Must maximize the number of social workers and psychologists who work from a restorative justice model and trauma-informed approach. Implementing this change will empower students, prevent violence, and resolve conflicts before they cause harm. We kind of ignore that there are instances and issues that we have to deal with that sometimes fall in categories of violence or others. This is not to ignore that, but what we know is that there are people apologizing for the way they had tried to approach this 30 years ago. It didn't have the impact that folks wanted and caused cascading effects on these communities. In an effort to protect our students' emotional safety, Councilmember Iala has introduced a bill which would regulate the NYPD's response to children in emotional crisis in public schools. At the crux of Intro 2188, the provision that school safety agents can only intervene at the request of an onsite clinical school staff or the school's crisis intervention team. The same rules would apply to precinct offices. I support these efforts to regulate the intervention of school safety agents as it would significantly eliminate unnecessary interactions with students in mental health crisis. I also fully support the provision prohibiting any NYPD personnel from using mechanical restraints on a student in emotional crisis. Putting a student in handcuffs or any other restraints, devices only adds trauma to what is likely to already be a horrible encounter with law enforcement. I grew up in a public school system. I have attention deficit operatory disorder and Tourette syndrome. I can only imagine if my school trajectory took a different turn. Some of these impacts and these traumas I might have also experienced. Councilmember Konstantinides's bill, Intro 2211, seeks to ensure that NYPD be fully removed from school safety farm and after June 2022, except as necessary to address an imminent risk to public safety or property. I deeply respect and commend all of my colleagues and their efforts, though I believe there are a few areas where the transition plan must go further. First, there's often one voice and experience that is often missing from this discussion. It's that of the young people, students to be exact. And the traumas of feeling surveilled and policed from the moment they wake up to when they go to sleep. Often, it seems there is more law enforcement structure than any other resource that are needed for healthy and safe growth. In addition, many students report verbal, physical, and sexual abuse that have been committed at the hands of school agents. Even more troubling is that neither the NYPD nor the DOE have a clear scope of the abuse. Both are unable to produce the number of officers in schools who committed these egregious acts. Because there's no way for a young person to report misconduct outside of IAB, a process even adult New Yorkers have hard time navigating. Additionally, it is telling that the application process to become a school safety agent is not through a process that begins with intent to work in education or even with young people. More often than not, it begins with an interest in law enforcement. This is the framework that we are working from. Having said that, I also want to be clear that I have worked with many SSA employees. I need to make clear that we can't paint everyone with the same brush. I've worked with them personally back when I was councilmember to create programs and environments to enrich young people's lives. We have to be clear about that. Still, we cannot ignore the context that brings us here today. To that end, a true discussion must begin to address the existing amount of current police infrastructure in schools, including the high number of currently NYPD-trained school safety agents in schools. That simply transferring jurisdictional control over SSAs with nothing else can complicate restorative justice training and practices. While removing school safety personnel from the jurisdiction of NYPD is absolutely necessary, we must commit to a true, just transition from the current SSA structure. We must also think about the potential employment impact that can have on school safety agents, many of whom are people of more color, many of whom are women. These individuals are some of our city's most marginalized employees. We need to ensure they can maintain their livelihoods and their family. If we are going to remove them from our schools, we need to make certain they will receive job placements elsewhere for those that cannot work in the new restorative justice model. That is why it is imperative that we pass Chair Traeger's bill, Intro 2226. This legislation will require the NYPD and the DOE to report on the employment turnover of a school safety personnel after the transfer jurisdiction. The data will tell us if this change will be contributing to our city's already high employment rate of 11.4%. Job security for people of more color is essential, especially during this pandemic. Councilmember Traeger's other bill, Intro 2227, is also important as transition. This bill will require the DOE to report on the policies and procedures developed between the agency and the NYPD with regard to school principals, providing input on the performance of school safety agents. It also mandates principals are made aware of deployment changes to the school safety personnel assigned to their schools. We need to include principals as much as possible in the process because they know the impacts school safety agents have on their schools and the areas that could be improved upon. I believe we should also include the students themselves and as well as the parents. The community should be instrumental. This legislation will help to establish their participation and their inclusion in the transition. Each bill being heard today represents steps toward fully removing school safety agents from the NYPD's jurisdiction and hopefully removing the police infrastructure from these schools. That said, I do have concern that advocacy and policy solutions from and by young people who attend our schools have not done enough to inform these bills. My hope is the voices of young people who intend to testify today will directly shape our next steps. It is clear we cannot depend on the administration to take the steps needed to make this transition happen. So we have to use our legislative powers elected officials to do it ourselves. I look forward to working with my council colleagues and getting these pieces of legislation to where they need to be so we can get them enacted and that we are not pitting one against each other, but are collectively moving toward true safety. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Public Advocate. I just want to also just acknowledge members who are with us this morning. We've been joined by Councilmember Riley, Councilmember Gredchen, Councilmember Kalos, Councilmember Barelli, Councilmember Lewis, Councilmember Amber Samuel, Councilmember Iala, Councilmember Holden, Councilmember Lander, Councilmember Barron, Councilmember Brennan, Councilmember Adams, Councilmember Rosenthal, and forgive me if we missed any, Councilmember Barron, yes, we got you as well. Forgive me if I missed anyone. I do want to just quickly add something kind of building with what the public advocate said. I am a former teacher and I appreciate working with every member of my school community, all the school stakeholders, including the safety agents who I work with. I want to just, you know, note for the record that even during this entire pandemic where we've lost school safety agents tragically to this pandemic as well, school buildings, many of them have remained open to help feed our families, school food workers, school cleaners, school safety agents, school crossing guards. I want to add to this conversation that fundamentally, to me, this hearing has to answer a question. Who is in charge of a school building? Because I would argue that the current structure is actually not safe and not ideal for kids and for school staff. I have witnessed myself professionally where principal and school safety would get into an argument about decisions to keep kids safe. So quite frankly, it's not just a theoretical exercise or just a quick policy debate. Do you fundamentally believe that principals are in charge of a school building? We run a school system. This is not a police system. When you're in that school building, every kid, every kid must feel safe, supported, loved. And that's what this is about. And school safety agents play an important role, but they cannot dominate the role. Because to me, as a teacher and as someone who actually has a license to be a principal, I was taught that the principal is in charge. And right now, the current structure doesn't really have it that way. With that, I'll turn it over to the committee counsel and to swearing our panel.
Thank you, Chair Traeger. Good morning, everyone, and welcome to Education's February hearing. I am Malcolm Butahorn, counsel to the Education Committee. Before we begin testimony, as with all education virtual hearings held to date, there are a few reminders I would like to go over. I will be calling on witnesses to testify in panels, so please listen for your name to be called. I will be announcing in advance who the next panel will be. Once your name is called, a member of our staff will unmute you and the sergeant-at-arms will give you the go-ahead to begin after setting the timer. So please listen for that cue. All public testimony will be limited to two minutes. At the end of two minutes, please wrap up your comments so we can move on to the next panelist. Councilmembers present, for those of you who have questions for a particular panelist, please use the raise hand function in Zoom and I will call on you in the order with which you raised your hand after the full panel has completed its testimony. We will be limiting councilmember questions to three minutes. This includes both questions and answers. For purposes of this virtual hearing, there will not be a second round of questioning. I will now call on the following members of the administration to testify. From the Department of Education, Deputy Chancellor of School Climate and Wellness, LaShawn Robinson, Mark Rampersant, Senior Executive Director, Office of Safety and Youth Development, and Kenyadi Reed, Executive Director, Office of Safety and Development. From the New York City Police Department, Deputy Chief Obay, Commanding Officer, School Safety Division, and Michael Clark, Managing Attorney, Legislative Affairs. I will first read the oath, and then I will call on each of you individually to respond. If you could, please raise your right hands. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this committee and to respond honestly to councilmember questions? Deputy Chancellor Robinson?
Yes, I do.
Deputy Chief Obay?
I do.
Mark Rampersant?
I do.
Kenyadi Reed? Kenyadi, we could not hear you.
I do.
Thank you. And Michael Clark?
I do.
Thank you. Finally, for question time, due to the large number of administration officials present, anyone that will be answering questions with the deputy chancellor and deputy chief, if you could please state your name before you speak, it will make it more clear in the official transcript who is speaking. Deputy Chancellor Robinson and Deputy Chief Obay, whenever you both are ready.
Thank you so much. Good morning. Chair Traeger, Chair Adams, Public Advocate Williams, and members of the council. I am LaShawn Robinson, Deputy Chancellor for School Climate and Wellness at the New York City Department of Education. Joining me today from the DOE are Mark Rampersant and Kenyadi Reed. And today's Mark's birthday. I'd like to say a happy birthday to Mark. And I'm also joined by Deputy Chief Obay and Michael Clark from the New York Police Department School Safety Division. I know the council is holding several hearings on public safety, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to discuss school safety and the proposed legislation as part of this important process. Before I begin, Before I begin, I would like to acknowledge Speaker Johnson, Chair Trager, and the entire city council. You have continued to provide strong support and attention to the D O E's critically important focus on nurturing the whole child while building safe, inclusive, and affirming school communities. We thank you for your continued leadership in this area. Under this administration and strong partnership with the city council, the D O E has reimagined our approach to safety in our school communities. Schools should be places where all students, families, and educators feel safe, welcome, and supported. That fundamental priority has never been more essential than throughout the COVID nineteen pandemic and the history-making protests for racial justice. As part of this commitment, we have focused our efforts on providing schools with the resources and tools that they need to support students and educators and proactively fostering trusting relationships, strengthening student development of social and emotional skills, and responding restoratively to deescalate difficult situations. For example, in June twenty nineteen, we announced our Resilient Kids Safe for Schools Plan. That was an effort designed to expand key initiatives and programming, such as our restorative justice program, which is now featured in approximately three hundred of our high schools and middle schools. Additional components of this initiative include access to social emotional learning support for all elementary schools through a partnership with the National Cell Program that's social emotional learning called Harmony, supporting educators and administrators with expanded citywide training and building positive school cultures based on practices that teach emotional growth and problem solving, excuse me, hiring school response clinicians who are social workers specially trained in crisis response and management who provide services for students in need of intermediate clinical counseling while also connecting students with long-term care. School response clinicians support approximately three hundred middle and high school. The Resilient Kids Safe for Schools Plan also included measures to reduce the use of punitive and exclusionary disciplinary measures, including changes to the discipline code and the NYPD D O E memorandum of understanding, along with the NYPD patrol guide. Among other things, these changes significantly limited interactions between schools and the police, including stricter guidelines on arrest in schools and limit on the length of suspension, keeping our young people in supportive school environment. Additionally, early in this administration, the D O E issued a new chance with regulation addressing crisis de-escalation and contacting nine one one for students experiencing behavioral crises. The regulation sets forth the policies and procedures to be followed when such situations occur. Under the regulation, schools are required to develop crisis intervention plans which identify strategies and interventions for addressing students in crisis. The regulation also requires that every effort must be made to safely de-escalate a situation, drawing on strategies and resources provided to schools. If a student poses an imminent and substantial risk of injury to themselves or others and the situation cannot be safely addressed, the principal or designated must call nine one one. In addition to the change in policy, we increased the number of school staff who have been trained in therapeutic crisis intervention for school. We are already seeing how these initiatives are creating more supportive climate in our schools. Last year, which was the first when many of these changes were in place, we saw a major drop in both the youth and length of suspension. Our report on suspensions covering the period of July one twenty nineteen through December thirty one twenty nineteen shows a nineteen point eight percent decrease and the total number of suspensions compared to the same previous timeframe. EMS transports for children with emotional and psychological conditions decreased thirteen point one percent during that period. Those decreases follow an improving year-over-year trend under this administration as a result of rapidly increased investment and new initiatives that give teachers and students the tools they need to foster trusting, caring relationship while directly addressing the root cause of behavior. From twenty thirteen fourteen school year to the twenty eighteen nineteen school year, suspensions decreased by thirty nine percent, keeping our children in school and classroom. The work of making our schools welcoming and supportive for all students is also making them safer. Let me repeat that. The work of making our schools welcoming and supportive for all students is also making them safer. Even NYPD school safety data from January through March of twenty twenty show a total decrease of interventions in schools by eight point three percent compared to the same period in twenty nineteen. That includes arrests dropping by thirty three percent, child and crisis interventions declining by nineteen point five percent, and school-based summons falling by sixty seven point four percent. While we are very encouraged by the results so far, we know there is much, much more to do. We will continue to build on this work this year as we begin the transition of our school safety agents and school safety division from NYPD to D O E. The transition of school safety from the NYPD to the D O E is a natural next step in this important work and we are approaching it with the same vision. Schools must be environments where children feel safe to be themselves. All children feel safe to be themselves and develop confidence by not being afraid to make mistakes and having opportunities to explore, understand, and engage as community members. Complete safety or true safety includes physical, emotional, and psychological safety. The core of this transition is creating the intentional presence of trusting relationships, equity, affirming young people and educators, compassion, dignity, and respect. We understand the significance and urgency of this work and share the goal of the June twenty twenty two timeline for the transition to be completed. Fundamentally, a successful transition requires that the roles and responsibilities of every member of our school community, including safety personnel, align with our shared vision for complete safety, complete safety. Although the transition will not be fully effectuated until the summer of twenty twenty two, work is already underway. We have created a school safety transition team led by representatives from the D O E, the NYPD, and the mayor's office. The transition team comprises four committees that are specifically focused on identifying and addressing major policy issues of the transition, like operations, roles and responsibilities of the reimagined safety personnel, data systems and transparency, and community engagement. The transition team will consult and welcome feedback while monitoring progress and implementation, hearing directly from students, families, and school community members. These committees are in the very early stages of their important work and are only just beginning the process of engaging with the fundamental and sensitive question this transition and reimagining of school safety requires. Our committees need to be able to continue the work they are charged with and need latitude, flexibility, and discretion to consider their input. This is a complex process. I want to be clear. And we are committed to it being organic, thoughtful, and genuine. It should be driven driven by research, best practices, models of success, and community input, the lived experiences of our young people, and not predetermined outcomes. This process is not just about a transition from one city agency to the next. It is about developing a system and structure that will support and promote complete safety. So while we will not have the answers to every question here today, the committees are focused on all aspects that will go into making this transition a successful one in the end. More specifically, the operations committee is focused primarily on the logistics of the transition and making sure this body of workflow smoothly from one department to the other. They will help us ensure that the transition happens without disruption to employee pay, benefits, and other important considerations, while also identifying changes needed to budget. They will meet legal requirements or contracts or contract for any shift we may want to undertake regarding school policy. Our roles and responsibilities committee is examining the role of school safety in schools and working to align that role with the D O E's vision of safe and supportive schools and complete safety. School safety personnel is fully integrated members of the school community will be expected to understand their role and fulfill their responsibilities in a manner that promotes a positive, supportive, and safe school climate. School safety personnel will receive through the D O E the necessary training and a number of practices and will adopt these techniques to holistically support students' social and emotional well-being. To that end, school safety personnel will be trained to support child and youth development and community building. That training will begin during this school year. The data committee is working to ensure all necessary information and information systems are properly transferred to D O E so that we are prepared to report out all the information we need regarding school safety post-transition. Transparency through this transition and going forward is essential to the work of school safety and I know how important these values and quality data are to the council and your oversight role. Crucially, we have created a community engagement committee that is solely dedicated to creating outreach and feedback opportunities for family, students, educators, our school safety agents, advocates, and others across our school communities to learn what those stakeholders want to see as part of this transition. That group began their outreach to various groups and we are continuing to work on community outreach events across the city. This transition is an opportunity for us to hear from those on the ground about school safety. What works? What doesn't work? What can we do better? What changes will better serve our children? These issues we want to hear about are wide-ranging and connect to the to the priorities of the other committee. What should safety look and feel like in our school? What role should school safety personnel play in the school community? What information do we need to look at to figure out what's working and what isn't? We believe firmly that community voice, especially student voice, should play a significant role in shaping what school safety looks like in this transition. For this reason, we are remaining open-minded about many key issues the transition team hopes to address, especially about the roles and responsibilities and expectations for safety personnel. With our vision of supportive school communities and complete safety as our guidepost, we are eager to hear from our school communities and come up with an approach to safety that ensures everyone feels completely safe and supported. Let me now turn directly to the proposed legislation under consideration today. As I mentioned, we are in the process of engaging with a lot of the issues and and questions raised by these bills. So it would be premature to respond to specific provisions. With regard to intro twenty two eleven, we are committed to the transfer of school safety from NYPD to D O E and we are on pace for this transfer to happen by June of twenty twenty two. We need to make informed decisions and be confident that the system we develop ensures complete safety for our students and staff, positively impacts school climate, and carefully considers the livelihood of the more than five thousand civil servants who are school safety agents and are mostly women of color. Finally, I would also note that I understand that the law department is reviewing these bills and defer to them with regard to any issues or concerns. We look forward to further discussions on this legislation. With respect to intro twenty two twenty seven, on the topic of principal evaluation and assignment of S S As, we agree that input from principals in the evaluation process of S S As is key to creating safety in schools because this is not a one-size-fits-all model. In addition, intro twenty two twenty six on employment turnover data speaks directly to the work and goals of one of our committees ensuring transparency, as well as our systems allow, throughout this transition process and beyond. We look forward to working with the council on both of these bills. Thank you again for your time and attention to these important matters. Getting this transition right is critical and ensuring the success of our shared goal of creating safe and supportive schools for all students. We are continually appreciative of the council's consistent and thoughtful advocacy on everything related to the safety and well-being of our children. Again, I invite you all to be part of the community outreach we will be doing over the next several months. And I look forward to all of us working together to listening to our communities, listening to our children, and building on the success we have been achieving and creating an approach to school safety that is best for our children. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. Good morning, Chair Trager, Public Advocate Williams, and members of the council. I'm Deputy Chief Olufimila Obay, Commanding Officer of the New York City Police Department School Safety Division. In addition to my colleagues from the D O E, I'm joined today by Michael Clark, the Managing Attorney of NYPD's Legislative Affairs Unit. On behalf of Police Commissioner Dermot Shea, I would like to thank you for this opportunity to discuss the ongoing transition of school safety agents. In order for a student to meet their potential, it is essential that they're able to learn in a safe environment. Students cannot effectively learn if they're focused on traveling the halls safely rather than their math assignments or their art classes. This has been at its core the mission of NYPD's school safety agents, our S S As. We aim to ensure that students are provided the freedom to learn by being free of fear in their schools. We will remain committed to this goal as we work with the D O E on transitioning the functions of school safety to them. I also want to speak briefly about our dedicated S S As. These individuals, approximately ninety percent of whom are black and Hispanic, about seventy percent of whom are women, are consummate professionals. I'm extremely proud to have spent the last few months working with these steadfast individuals. They routinely make the NYPD proud and I'm confident that they will continue to serve the city, the schools, and the students with the highest levels of professionalism that we have come to expect of them. I do not believe that we will be experiencing the successes we have seen in reducing enforcement interactions in schools while also reducing crime without the strong relationships our S S As have developed with school principals, school administration, teachers, parents, and most importantly, the students. The personal relationships formed with students and staff are important to preventing conflict and promoting a healthy learning environment. The over five thousand S S As have been involved, have become beloved members of our school communities. In order for S S As to provide high-quality service for the school students. In order for SSAs to provide high-quality service for the school students, we must provide them with high-quality training. SSA recruits participate in a seventeen-week training program at the police academy. This comprehensive program includes training in the areas of law, police science, behavioral science, physical education, and tactics, with a focus on topics such as bullying, the LGBTQ community, tactical communication, and defusing hostility. In order to assist in preparing SSAs for their special role in the school community, DOE personnel participate in our training sessions as instructors and address specific areas such as special education, school administration, school governance, adolescent suicide, conflict resolution, bullying, child abuse, and substance abuse prevention. Training also focuses on how to better work with school administration and students in areas of collaborative problem-solving, restorative practices, conflict resolution, de-escalation techniques, and working with special needs students. SSAs receive further additional training throughout the year in such important areas as problem-solving, mediating conflicts, and responses to emergencies or dangerous conditions such as an active shooter incident. The NYPD and the DOE have made great progress on reducing the number of students who are arrested in schools. Pursuant to the memorandum of understanding between the NYPD and the DOE, the NYPD included SSAs does not respond to non-crime minor misconduct. These incidents are best handled by teachers and other school staff. Additionally, the NYPD agreed to utilize discretionary response and protocols such as warnings in lieu of arrests or summonses for many low-level criminal conduct. We implemented Patrol Guide Procedure two fifteen dash seventeen, which has aided in reducing the number of arrests in schools. Patrol Guide two fifteen dash seventeen introduces a layer of checks and balances within the police department to ensure that students are not being arrested inside of NY, New York City DOE buildings unnecessarily. If an arrest must be made in a New York City DOE facility, the department's policy on handcuffing students is strictly adhered to. These reforms were essential in reducing police actions in schools and allowing educators to do what they do best, educate. The SSD, that's School Safety Division, has enhanced relationships and develops greater trust with students, teachers, and staff by expanding its neighborhood policing initiative to the city's schools. The goal of the neighborhood coordination model for the SSD against School Safety Division is to further decrease crime and violence in our city's eighteen hundred schools by approaching each school as a neighborhood and involving students as community members. School coordination agents are tasked with solving a variety of issues as an alternative to the need for enforcement. Additionally, it's noteworthy to mention that the one hundred and thirteen uniformed officers formally assigned to the School Safety Division Uniform Task Force, who supplemented the security needs of our school system, have been reassigned within the police department, and the unit has been disbanded. In the last full, in the last full school year, twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen, school arrests decreased twenty-eight percent in comparison to school year twenty-sixteen, twenty-seventeen. Additionally, there was an eleven percent reduction in the seven major felony categories when comparing the same period. Period, prior to the school shutdown, we were on pace to have significantly fewer arrests than in school year twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty. Beginning last year, the NYPD has engaged in conversations with members of the city, of City Hall and the DOE regarding the transition of responsibility for school safety from the NYPD to the DOE. The School Safety Division has been working tirelessly to ensure that the NYPD meets the established deadlines for the transition of the SSAs. I would now like to turn my attention to legislation being considered today. I'd first like to discuss introduction twenty-two eleven dash twenty-twenty-one, which would require the transfer of school safety functions to the DOE and would prevent the NYPD from playing any role in the safety of schools. The NYPD is committed to working with the DOE on the expeditions transfer of SSAs to the DOE. The NYPD has fully engaged in the transition planning and discussions and is committed to a progressive and successful transition of responsibility. The language in this bill, however, is broadly broad and would potentially prevent the NYPD from even so much as consulting with the DOE on school safety plans. Additionally, the department opposes removing school safety agent's peace officer status. This status is important to help maintain safety in the schools. Removing the status could have a negative impact on the contractual labor agreements and benefits that SSAs currently have. Next, I'd like to discuss introductions twenty-two twenty-six dash twenty-twenty-one and twenty-two twenty-seven dash twenty-twenty-one. Both bills require certain reports related to school safety. The department has worked with the council on numerous reporting bills in the past and is committed to working on a reporting bill that provides the council with necessary information. Finally, turn into introduction twenty-one eighty-eight dash twenty-twenty, which would limit a school safety officer and the precinct's officers' response to a student in crisis. The department agrees that students in crisis should be treated with the utmost sensitivity, but the department has concerns regarding the rigid nature of the legislation's language that would delay the NYPD's response to life or death situations. Any legislation passed needs to take into account the safety of our children. In closing, the department takes the responsibility of providing a safe climate in every New York City public school very seriously. Even after the transition, the police department will continue to work in partnership with the DOE, parents, students, advocates, elected officials, and the community in furtherance of this goal and will remain committed to ensuring a safe environment for our students. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today and please answer your questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Obey. Also, just want to note that we've been joined by Councilmember Solamaka as well. I will begin some questions. I want to just, just to kind of follow up, Chief Obey, if I may. Just also clarify, you had mentioned in your closing that the police department has cooperated with the council on bills, reporting bills in the past. The council still, you know, never received information with regards to metal detectors in schools, which was a law that we had passed, and we actually still have not received that information. So I will re-up that request at the start of this hearing as well. I want to just ask this fundamental question, Chief Obey. I mentioned earlier in my opening that as a former teacher, and first of all, I want to acknowledge and appreciate your service to the city. And I definitely, I do appreciate the value schools, that they are part of our school community, that school safety agents play. But my question, chief, to you is, do you agree with me and my assertion in my opening that the principal of the school building is fundamentally in charge of the school building?
Thank you, Councilman Traeger. What I will, my comment to that is currently the principals will confer with the SS. This is just the evaluation process as it is right now. They will confer with the SS's supervisor as appropriate when needed. It's important to all parties involved that the agents are fairly evaluated to ensure good order and efficiency of the school community. I know that you're probably alluding to the Principal's Comment Card that was established as a part of the twenty-nineteen MOU. It is, it's implemented, it was implemented. Unfortunately, it's been further delayed and with the pending transition efforts with the DOE, it will be rolled into the transition discussions.
And I appreciate your acknowledgement that, you know, that is a change to the MOU that my office fought very hard for, that I still firmly believe in, but my question is kind of deeper than that. Do you personally, professionally believe that a principal is in charge of their school building?
I think that, you know, when you talk about in charge, I think of schools as communities. I think that there's stakeholders in the school environment. So that's a school principal, of course, our SSAs, that school staff. I believe in that collaborative effort. I don't know about anyone, you know, sector or stakeholder being in charge of schools. I think that's just my take, and I think that we can all have voices and seats at the same table and together put our heads together and come to, you know, a sensible solution. So I will say that our SSAs work closely with the school principals. I mean, I've been with the, with the School Safety Division about five months, and unfortunately, I haven't enjoyed the relationship as much due to COVID. But I look forward to schools opening hopefully in the fall of this year and hopefully establishing relationships with principals. But I, you know, I hear, I hear, you know, just, I, I know that some of the relationships, some relationships are better than others. But we do have a lot of resource space when you have, and there are issues with principals who have concerns about school safety. Certainly, they could always tap into me as the CEO of SSD. We also have on ground, you know, every single borough, there are borough commanders stationed in the, you know, in the, in the high schools, in the boroughs. There's also the DOE also. We have a great relation. I know Mark is here. I'm going to blow you up, Mark. Mark, Kenyatta, you know, for me, that's the DOE. I've been here five months. That's what I know as the DOE. And we have an amazing relationship. So I think all those voices at the table, I think that's, that's, I think, a proper response to that. I don't know about principal, anyone being in charge, really. I think it just takes that effort. I will tell you that Mark will reach out to me when there are concerns about school staff. Two, three in the morning, Mark? So it's about collaboration more so than one person being in charge. That's my answer to that.
So, chief, just to be clear, I agree with you to the extent that you definitely need partnerships and collaboration and working together. I think that's healthy for any, for any place. I fully agree. But I just want to just share with you that, you know, your response to my question really contradicts my training. When I, I have a degree to be a principal. I was never a principal. I was a teacher, but I have a license from Brooklyn College Community to be a principal. And I was taught by my professors, and I have a degree, that the principal actually is in charge of the building and that, you know, basically, everything is observable except for lunch. And I think that this gray area, because this has been a gray area for many years in the city of New York, between DOE and NYPD, has resulted in a lot of problems. Problems that I have personally have witnessed during my tenure as a teacher. So if the NYPD cannot even clearly state that a principal is in charge, just like, for example, in New York City, the mayor is in charge of the city, not the NYPD commissioner. It's the mayor of New York. Is there agreement on that?
Yes, yes, Councilmember Brenner. I think, you know, everyone has their different expertise that they bring to the table, and the school safety agents bring their expertise to the table and bring that perspective to it. But I also will say that part of the whole, you know, agreement to bring school safety agents over to DOE is to, you know, bring that more together and have, do we have more oversight in that area? You know, and I think that's something the NYPD is working diligently with DOE to make that happen. I, I think we do, as a department, have expertise in keeping people safe. It's what we think about all the time, and there are certain decisions that-
So do principals, and so do educators, and so do social workers and counselors, right?
I understand that, and I know that, you know, I have children in public schools, that the school staff are amazing. The principal of my school, I couldn't adore more. Same with our school safety agent at the school. I think we all have a role to play in this, and, you know, collaboration is key and essential. But that's part of the whole conversation we're having here today and the conversation that NYPD is going forward is how to, how to keep schools safe going forward. And that's the committees that Deputy Chancellor mentioned about, is how do we envision this? How do we look at school safety going forward? And we are willing partners with the Department of Education to make this happen in the best way for our, for the students, for the teachers, for the principals, for the school safety agents going forward. I, I think you're right. This is a conversation that we had, and that's part of the reasoning that the council pushed this, and the mayor agreed to make this change, and the mayor is on board with this to make this change in order to, you know, have more of a seamless role in the school.
Michael and chief, would you, would you agree and confirm that historically there have been decisions made by NYPD with no consultation to the principal and the school community that impacted the school community?
Just like, you know, I just mentioned, I think it is something that I'm a part of that transition team also. So if that is the vision, you know, that the council has for the, you know, for schools moving forward, it certainly, I have meetings, we have meetings twice a week. You know, I know that there was talk about the different committees that are part of, you know, the transition makeup. We could certainly move, you know, moving forward, it's something that we could absolutely do. If that is your vision for principals being in charge of schools, maybe that's the DOE's vision moving forward, and we could certainly incorporate that into the transition talks that we're having currently. So I don't know if that's, if that's a good enough, a good enough answer.
And in the past, you know, I, I know that the Department of Education, the School Safety Division consult a lot. I know on the ground, the school safety agents are having interaction with the principal. I, in the last twenty years, twenty-five years, has there ever been a case? Probably. I, you know, I don't know. I'm sure you have examples in your mind of your experience, so I'm not going to discount that. But I think especially under this administration, there's been a focus on collaboration and working together. And I know probably under the, maybe previous administration, that I don't know if the relationship, you know, at the time when you were teaching under the Bloomberg administration, if this was the case then. But I know the goal now is to have a lot more collaboration, and as Chief Obey said, and Mark Rappert said, they speak all the time, and there should be a lot more collaboration on the ground. So I think we all bring our expertise to the table, but again, this is part of the conversation going forward of how we keep students safe and how, what the best way to do that is. And the Department of Education has numerous committees on how to do this, and we are willing partners in making this happen. Our sole goal is really the safety of students. We want to work with everyone to accomplish that goal. And going forward, we are to continue to work with them to do it in the best way possible.
So, Michael and chief, I appreciate your answer about commitment to safety to students. And I just share with you that historically, and it's not just, you know, a decade ago, it's certainly in, you know, in recent years, where, for example, if there was an iPhone that might have been taken blocks away from a school and the police wanted to execute a search warrant, they would work, they'd enter a school building without notifying anyone from the school that they're coming in and go into a classroom during class time to execute a search warrant, exposing a class full of kids to a dramatic experience that they're not going to forget. To follow up on an iPhone case. As a teacher, let me just say, I would be pissed as hell to have police enter my class during instructional time. To do that, I could just imagine how teachers and kids felt during this time. And these are, that's an example of why the MOU was also created and amended. But the fact that we, I'm going to move on to my question, but the fact that we, there's not even a clear agreement about who's in charge of a school building really just underlines the point why we need to have a clear, single accountability structure. There's a role for school safety to play. There's a role for them to play. But I just want to say that a school building, everyone cares about safety in the school, and it's not just physical safety, it's social, emotional safety. I, I had kids experiencing trauma for a whole host of issues that a school safety agent cannot do anything to keep them safe. They needed food, they needed shelter, they needed support, they needed counseling. That's also safety issues that cannot just be, that cannot be addressed by school safety agents. And even school safety agents told me, our schools need more social workers and counselors. Chief, can you agree with me on that at least, that our schools need more social workers and councils?
I think our schools need everything, Councilman. I just want to just backtrack a little to, so you're, you're talking about the stolen iPhone of school sites, but arrests made on school grounds, essentially disrupting the students from study. Also, going back to that MOU, twenty-nineteen MOU, the NYPD put together a policy, and this is documented, you see in Patrol Guide two fifteen dash seventeen, that outlines steps to be taken. We do not, are not supposed to go into schools to make arrests. It's one thing when incidents happen in schools and arrests are made in schools. Uh it's one thing when, when incidents happen in schools and arrest a major school, it's a whole different ballgame when. Incidents happen off campus, off school grounds, off DOE facilities and we now. Um you know, uh going to schools to make arrests of students, so there's, this, this policy that uh. That um, you know, supports not doing that and um it's, we have it under uh Patrol Guide two fifteen dash seventeen, so.
Well, but we, we limited the times where we could do it, it's not, it's not, you're right, it's not an absolute prohibition. Um but our, our arrest numbers in schools have declined and as part of this MOU that we limit the circumstances which. And officers make arrests in schools for off-campus conduct, um. And we have rules in place about how it's supposed to happen, right, we're supposed to be talking to the principals, I believe, before. Before we make the arrest, we're supposed to, but school safety staff and hopefully take them in a place that's outside. The view of other students, right, and so we tried to change our policies on that to, to reduce that. That harm that you're discussing and we, we agree that we need to take these proactive steps to. Prevent the traumatic harm of the classroom being interrupted by police officers coming in, so that, that is the goal going forward. Or the last few years and going forward is to, to limit the time that happens to the most serious cases. Um when the officers may have to do it, when we know, when we can find the person who's committed serious crimes. Um and to, to limit the impact that happens when, once the arrest is made.
Chief, do you have data from the, the year pr- pr- prior to the pandemic, let's say the twenty eighteen to twenty nineteen school year? Do you have data with you on how many school safety agents transferred? Uh whether, you know, between schools, uh do you have any information on that?
I'm sorry, just give me just one quick minute. No, uh Councilman, I don't have that on me. We could definitely get it.
Are, are you, yeah, I, I would definitely appreciate it, um because we need that information. Um are you aware, can you speak to just your own, from your own professional experience? Um is, is requesting, uh how, how often would you say school safety agents request transfers? From their school communities and how often are they granted those transfers?
I mean, from my experience, what I've seen.
Um I just wanna interrupt, I'm almost sorry, Deputy Chief and Michael, your video is out, just wanted to let you know, we just have a blank screen. We can hear you though, yeah.
So we'll, we'll fix the video, I apologize for that.
A- and whoever, I don't know who is in charge of the uh, of the caption for the screen, they. They have to put, they, they misspelled NYPD, sorry, that's the teacher we know.
Um but I think we can continue while you can still hear us, we're, we're, we're work on our. Um on the video as we speak, on the, on the, the video, the video issue.
Um so regarding transfers, my personal experience has been. I work in Manhattan North, I live in Staten Island, can I possibly move over to Staten Island? Uh you know, just for hardship concerns, that I've seen we do that. We also, um the, the transfer itself is based at the end of the day on the needs of the departments. So essentially reducing hardship, uh commuting type issues. That's, that's what I would say about my own experience when it comes to transferring of agents between schools.
Chief, so you've never heard of, of, of a, an experience where. The safety agent requests to transfer over a disagreement or an issue with a school principal or school administration?
That I haven't heard of, Councilman.
You, you have never heard of that issue?
Well, I, again, I was, I've been here five months, schools have been out for the most, so.
Understood, yeah, yeah, no, yeah, completely understand that, yeah, it's pandemic.
It happens on a, you know, at times that the working relationship between the principal and the school safety agent isn't what we want it to be. Um and in that case, the, the appropriate thing is to find a new spot for that school safety agent. For, either by their request or by our, you know, evaluations, what we're learning or what we're hearing. And it could be places that we understand that that should happen. Um so I, I'm sure it does happen, uh we don't have the data, Chief Obay's been here for five months, so in her experience, not yet, but. It'd be surprising if it didn't.
And, and just think about what a disagreement between a school safety agent and a principal means. Not just between the two parties, but for the students and staff. Um because I could, I could speak to personal experience, what that meant as far as dismissal during high school. Um where there's disagreement between creating a safe passageway from the school to the nearby subway station. To make sure that our students were able to safely go home and there was a disagreement about placement and so forth and. So there was the adults disagreeing, but really. We had to prioritize and center the students, which, which quite frankly was not really centered in that conversation. So these disagreements have implications on school climate and school safety. And that's why I go back to the central premise that you do need an educator in charge of the school system. Um and folks can collaborate and talk, but at, at, at the end of the day. Someone has to make a decision on the best interest of children and that's, that's a licensed educator, I wanna just move on. Um question about this task force. Um will this task force include students, parents, educators and advocates, can anyone speak to that?
Yeah, um good morning again, uh certainly, you know, we see this as an opportunity. To really lean into our top priority of creating safe and supportive schools. Um and as part of the committee, we absolutely want to engage students in particular. Um their voices are key for us as part of this process. Um along with the engagement of educators, family members, advocates. Uh the school safety agents and other key stakeholders. Um and we look forward to feedback from um all interested parties. Um I am joined by uh Kenyatta Reed, he's been uh doing extensive work. Um around engagement in particular, so I would like to invite him um to share about that experience momentarily. But what we understand is that we have to do this work differently. Um if we continue to do the same thing, uh the same way, we'll get the same result. This is an opportunity for us to genuinely and authentically engage the community. And I just want to emphasize genuinely and authentically engage the community. Because so often we have these engagement sessions that are not authentic, they're not genuine. And we want this to be authentic and genuine, the community also has a vision for this work. They understand the current conditions, they understand what's working and what's not working and they also understand the solution. Um they have to see that we are listening in this moment, this moment in particular. And that we're actually implementing their feedback as servant, servant leaders, we are civil servants. Serving the community. When we listen to what our communities say, they tell us that they want counselors and not cops. They tell us that they want support and not suspensions, they want jobs, internship. Relationships with trusting adults, they want their mental health uh needs addressed, they want sports programming. And not just sports, but equitable sports programming, they want community schools and of course our young people. They want an outstanding, high-quality culturally responsive education. We have to keep all of these things in mind because they're very much related to safety. Safety and having a young person connected to a caring adult, that's an important part of safety. Safety and having a young person, um having an internship opportunity or a paid job opportunity. That's an important aspect of safety. Safety and engaging our young people in sports programming, we know that our young people who participate uh with the PSAL. They're less likely to be involved in um incidents, more likely to be uh connected to a positive peer group. And a trusting adult, these are the voices that I hear when I listen to the community and this has to be a genuine. And an authentic engagement process. Outside of this um uh engagement opportunity, we've also started to engage. Other municipalities and school districts that are engaged in this work. Um and I know Kenyatta, he, that team is phenomenal, Mark Rappert's at. Um and Kenyatta, they are part of um my division for school climate and wellness with the Office of Safety Development. And I'd like Kenyatta to just talk about some of that work around engagement.
Thank you Deputy Chancellor Robinson and good morning Chair Traeger, um other members of the city council, I thank you for your time. Um as stated before, we have four committees that are working diligently. Um to really facilitate this transition. Um they are operations, data, um roles and training and then the last being, um what you had mentioned Chair Traeger, uh community engagement. And as our Deputy Chancellor stated, this is real, genuine, transparent engagement. Um and our first question as we engage communities is, how would you like to be engaged? We are not setting the stage for our community, we are going with an open question of what is the best way for us? To, to engage you and to bring you into the fold so we can hear from you, we can hear questions, concerns. Ideas that will all be infused into the work of our committees, our committees are designed. To get ongoing and regular feedback from the community and then provide that feedback back to them. Um they are at the center of this work, um our communities, as stated by Deputy Chancellor, we are civil servants. Um not only is that our stance, but we also learned from researching other municipalities that that is the way to do it. That is the only way, we've been in constant contact with folks in Los Angeles, Oakland, Denver, Minneapolis, Toronto. Um because all of these cities are in the midst of this process or have already gone through this. Um and we are, our committees are in this research phase right now. So that we can research best practices and a core tenement that they all utilize was early. Ongoing engagement and transparency with the community. Um and that's just one of the many things that they, that were consistent across the board as we spoke to. Um our sister, our sister cities across the nation and also into um Canada.
And Mr. Mr. Reed, if I may, just quickly on that, um Director, thank you for your service, by the way, and I appreciate you being here. Um you mentioned Los Angeles and I know that there was a headline that they reduced their. Um I guess their school safety or police force there, but in an article I read in the Los Angeles Times. It states that they're hiring people. And there was a job description or uh saying that uh folks with a law enforcement background. So can you clarify for me what exactly are they doing? Because there is some confusion there.
So I'll do my best to clarify what LA is doing, um and, and again, I'm an outsider, not in.
I hear you. But I. You mentioned that you spoke to them, so I'm curious to know if they told you about it, right?
Um so first and foremost, they're, they're starting with, um as other cities is. The, the removal of police officers from schools, utilizing that funds to create different positions. Um positions being RJ coordinators, school climate coordinators. They are investing in culturally responsive curriculum, they're investing in professional development. They're investing in literacy for our young people. I, 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 let me digress because I will say that. We've recently been, it's been brought to our attention recently that, that NYPD is bringing in two new classes of SSA. And, you know, and those two new classes account for almost four hundred and seventy-five new agents, so when you ask me about LA. Like I see this, that, this is our opportunity. Four hundred and seventy-five new agents account for almost twenty million dollars, imagine if.
So are you saying that school, NYPD school safety or the NYPD? Is hiring additional school safety agents after the administration told us there was a hiring freeze on school safety?
Chair Traeger, there are two new classes coming in right now, one in March and one in June. And what I will say to you, imagine if we use that twenty million dollars. Or imagine if we use that for restorative justice coordinators. Imagine if we use them for social workers or, or guidance counselors. Imagine if we used it for culturally responsive curriculum development. Um literacy programs, like, well, imagine if, like Chair Traeger, y- you and I and other members of the city council, we know. Restorative practices work, we know social emotional learning is what is needed right now, we are in the midst. Of a pandemic, the likes that none of us have been alive for before, I am deeply concerned that our investment. Is in the wrong place and, and I will tell you, like, a- and I'll give you an example, okay, because. Um recently, a principal reached out to us, Principal Carlin Washington of West Prep Academy in District Three. Reached out, emailed myself and Deputy Chancellor Robinson, really thanking our RJ team. Um and two in particular, I'm gonna shout them out, Brian Bearman and Carlos Munoz. They conduct weekly Zoom sessions with families about social emotional awareness and development. Where parents and, and community members can come together and just share challenges and successes. Those are two of our nineteen RJ coordinators, I just, I, I just say, imagine if. We would actually invest in that. And like really fully fund restorative practices across the city. The, the Department of Education, we can't even backfill our position. I have three RJ positions that cannot be backfilled and like I said, in March, we have four hundred and seventy-five. Agents coming in. Imagine if, imagine if we invested and fully funded single shepherd. Or school response clinicians or community schools. That, that's, I, I think we, we all say these things, but when you ask me about LA. That's what they're doing and we can do that.
So, no, no, I, I appreciate, I appreciate. This breaking news for me because this is the first I am hearing about four hundred and seventy-five. Uh new school safety agents after the administration told us during our budget agreement. That there is a hiring freeze on school safety agents, as has been a freeze on many critical. DOE positions which you've stated and it is outrageous. It is outrageous that they first of all. Lied to this institution and quite frankly, did not invest the resources where our kids need them the most. Um and so we are in full agreement with you, Director Reed. Um and certainly this is going to be a major issue in our budget season now. Uh and quite frankly, right after this hearing, I will take it up a- a- as well, I just wanna get to a couple more, so I. Yes, anything you might add, Mr.?
Sorry, yeah, I just wanted to say, we, we, you know, that's something we are constantly looking at our attrition le- levels to see about new hiring, I'm not sure. That, you know, we, we have been discussing this previous days, but I'm not sure that, that the final, the final. Sign-off has happened on that, but we've been talking about uh a- as attrition levels drop, school safety. It's, the conversation can continue, I just wanted to say I'm not sure that this is officially, officially uh been decided.
Respectfully, it was decided at budget adoption, budget agreement. That there's a freeze on these positions, so as far as I'm concerned, that was the agreement. If we're hearing now and I trust Director Reed, this is unacceptable. Um d- do you know how many principals right now are in need to fill? Uh social workers or counselors or special education teachers or folks within our school systems, I, we can't even get. Folks in, in related service providers to, to get, get basic contracts and get payments. Folks, our priorities are out of the whack right now. And, and, and also this is a co-equal branch of governments. This is the city council, we had a budget agreement adoption, this is unacceptable. So this is something that we're gonna bring up certainly right after this hearing, certainly during the budget season, I do wanna just ask some. A- additional questions in terms of, to my colleagues. To Deputy Chancellor Robinson, who by the way, I wanted to say for the record, is an outstanding. Outstanding education leader in New York City, we're very fortunate to have Deputy Chancellor Robinson in, in her role. outstanding education leader in New York City. We're very fortunate to have Deputy Chancellor Robinson in her role. I admire her patience. I admire how much she tolerates, quite frankly. But just to note, she is a social worker and she climbed up the school system to 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 the top. So I truly appreciate your leadership and your you being here Deputy Chancellor. Can you just elaborate for us? What structural changes do you foresee with the deal we make to absorb to its leadership structure and chart as it prepares to absorb the jurisdiction and responsibility for over 5,000 school safety agents and who in D O E leadership will be directly responsible for the oversight?
Yes, thank you so much for that question, which is very important. And as I shared, you know, we are right in the process of, you know, working within the community. We attend to hear feedback from school communities on what the reimagined school safety should look like. As of right now, the Office of Safety and Youth Development is taking the lead under the leadership of Mark Ramper Sam. That's the office that has the current partnership with school safety from the DOE. And the Office of Safety and Youth Development is also a part of the Division of School Climate and Wellness. And they work with our sister offices to address the needs of the whole child. So that's an important part of the work and it's very much still in development. But we should have more on that from council soon.
And Deputy Chancellor, from your perspective, and I know that you just mentioned that this is still in development. What role do you see? And also do you agree with with my view at least that principals should have a role to evaluate these positions in their school communities? You know, it's very, you know, to give an example, principals don't directly hire their custodians. And we certainly value and appreciate our custodians, but principals do evaluate them at the end of the year. And what that means for my colleagues and those watching, what that means culturally in a school is that the school custodian sits down with the principal at the start of the school year to discuss the vision for what a clean and nice building is going to look like. And at the end of the year, the principal sits down and says, let's see how consistent you were with the vision. And that's really what's needed here as well. Because of different accountability structures, there's never an opportunity for school safety and principals and school leadership to have that collaboration. To to discuss what is the singular vision to keep kids safe and supported in a school community? The structure doesn't allow for that. If anything, the structure almost prohibits that. They go in different directions. So this is not just a theoretical conversation. I am telling you as a teacher, I live this. Where there were disagreements between school admin and NYPD about decisions that impacted our kids. Now again, everyone has a role to play, high school deans, school safety, assistant principals. But if we can't get on the same page, what does that mean for children? If 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 everyone's saying this is all about the kids and the adults can't work together, folks, it's not going to work and kids suffer the most. I just, I really have to spell that out because I lived through this. I, you know, and and most importantly, our students live through this every single day. And that's what this is about, our children. Okay, I I have to say, I am infuriated that we got this news today, especially at a time when we have to fight like hell to get community school funding restored and we still have to fight for L T W and P S A L equity. But rest assured, I, we're going to fight like hell for our kids in this budget. Again, we're going to get funding, more funding for where our kids need it the most. That is my top, top priority. I'm going to turn it over now.
I just want to add one thing. I just wanted to, the hiring of the school safety agents, that's not, that has not officially been approved. It is something we have been talking to O M B and the mayor's office about and and not to counter Director Reed, I, that was something that was said on a phone call that he was on. But I think further investigation, it was not approved. It has not been approved yet. So it's discusses we're having. I just want to, I don't.
Chief, if I, if I may.
I just, it's a front that beyond what I, we had, I had spoken with Director Reed about, so I don't want to, let's say.
If 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 O M B is watching, if the mayor's office is watching, take that $20 million and and we need more, restore the cuts to learning to work. Restore the cuts to L T W. Get more funding to P S A L. You want to keep kids safe and supported? These are the people that during the pandemic have been checking up on kids, making sure that they're fed, that they're, that they have safety at home and that they're providing them counseling and services, being a mentor to these children, keeping connections with them. So that's safety. That is safety. Take that $20 million, restore the cut to L T W. I'm going to turn it over now to my colleagues for questions because I have to, I have to gather myself a little bit right now and just make sure I follow up with some more information. Malcolm, you could please call.
Sure. I will now call on council members in the order they have used the Zoom raise hand function. We will be limiting council member questions and answers to three minutes. The sergeant at arms will keep a timer and will let you know when your time is up. So in order, we will start with Councilmember Lander, followed by Councilmembers Ayala, Rosenthal, Miller and Levin, Councilmember Lander.
Thank you very much Chair Traeger. And I really share, thank you very much Chair Traeger. And I really share your outrage here that City Hall decided to, or you know, whether they already decided or think they have the authority without even asking us to hire 475 new school safety agents, even as we're having this hearing. Thank you Deputy Chancellor Robinson for making clear that safe school communities for all our students requires that we prioritize their social and emotional and mental health needs. But our police and schools approach is not doing that. And I'll give you one very clear and painful example. On one of the very first days of in-person school this past fall, I joined students and parents outside John Jay Educational Campus of high schools in my district where students were forced by school safety agents to wait in long lines outside to go through metal detectors, to be treated as though they were criminals as their very first experience of their school. After so many months away, after all the trauma they've experienced in the pandemic, our police and schools approach traumatized them at the very door of their school as they came back in. That is not in any way prioritizing the emotional or mental or social health of our students. So we need a more transformative approach than the one we're discussing here that genuinely centers student needs and the voices of young people themselves. So I support the introductions by Councilmembers Traeger and Ayala. But like our public advocate, I oppose intro 2221 in partnership with the dignity in schools and police free schools campaigns. And we're going to hear from those young people in a few minutes. Simply transferring the school safety agents from the NYPD with new uniforms and maybe a little additional training. Although from the NYPD testimony today, it sounds like the administration actually believes they're already getting all the training they need. It's just not meaningful change. Yes, we need a just transition. That means job and pay security for school safety agents who are overwhelmingly women of color. And many of those, like the ones I got to know in my kids' elementary and middle schools are wonderful people and may well be appropriate to work in our schools. But a real transition must do more than change their uniform. So it was infuriating to learn today that in the middle of the pandemic with a hiring freeze and so many of our schools closed in person, the administration wants to hire 475 more. Instead of rushing through a bill that holds the NYPD division into DOE, we should work with these young people, advocates and stakeholders on a genuine citywide approach for safe and supportive schools, free of police and with the social workers and counselors that we need. Finally, for my question, I want to ask about those metal detectors. What will it take to remove them? And how can you tell us that the goal is the social and emotional health of our students? When in the wake of this trauma, we still tell them that we think of them as criminals right at the door of their school?
Thank you so much for that question. And we are certainly seeing safety in the context of being multi-dimensional and encompassing the needs of the whole child. Not just physical safety. Psychological safety is important for us to be able to speak to here.
Do you think that, do you think that the metal detectors do that though, especially with no policy, no data-driven policy? We've been talking about this for years in this committee. And yet we don't have a clear data-driven or safety-driven or student-centered policy for where they're placed and where they aren't corresponds overwhelmingly with the race of the students. Do you think that our current policy of metal detectors at the door of our schools with school safety agents policing those kids right at the door is in any way consistent with the, what you're saying is needed? Because I sure don't think it is.
I think, I think we are absolutely grappling with these issues, the issues that you just raised about scanning and metal detectors and others. We have scanning protocols and procedures and a policy that outlines how to go about changing scanning designation. And, you know, some schools who may request it, we can, at this point, request changes. Principals can do that after conferring with their school communities and gaining support from various members of their school community and working collaboratively with NYPD and DOE. I'm very well aware of the school that you're referencing. We have been in close communication with those principals and the superintendent and that school community. But these are the kinds of issues that we're grappling with right now as part of this committee work. And through how we're viewing moving forward.
Respectfully, Deputy Chancellor, and I'm wrapping up. I don't, I'm not going to ask more questions. And and with deep regard for you, I think what the chair has said about what you care about, what you want here, what you fought for, I've seen it firsthand. But the answer about scanners after a decade of grappling and asking the same questions is what gives me confidence that what we need are police-free schools. And the young people we're going to hear are going to say that as well. And they don't have confidence in this process because it feels too tepid. Because it's going to keep telling them we're grappling, but it's going to keep making them go through scanners at the front door of their schools. And the uniforms of the people making them do it, changing, is not going to help them feel safe and whole and be the students that we want them to be. Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Lander. And for the record, we just want to recognize that we are joined by Councilmembers Miller, Rodriguez, Levine, Ulrich and Levin. And next, if we could unmute Councilmember Ayala, please.
Thank you.
Starting time.
Thank you. I think, you know, first of all, I want to recognize, and I fail to do this, I fail to recognize the advocates for for children. Dawn Euster, Meg DeRoe, John Kingsley, Michelle Cruz and Bianca for helping us draft the the bill. But, you know, I need to recognize that, you know, school safety looks different for all students, right? It is school safety in the way that, you know, that that is done in elementary and middle school and in high school is very different. And I have, you know, four children, all of whom are already just about done with school and, you know, have had that experience. And 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 it's different, it's very different. So, you know, I need that to be kind of recognized, that children that are in high school are, you know, twice as likely to come in contact with, you know, a police officer and that the school-to-prison pipeline is a real thing. It is a real thing and that many of our kids, black and brown kids are exposed unnecessarily to the NYPD. Simply, you know, for expressing themselves in the way that children and young people are expected to express themselves. I was wondering if there were any thoughts on our bill. And also if someone could, someone could explain what the current protocol for dealing with children with disabilities who are suffering from some sort of emotional distress is. I had a conversation with a parent not too long ago who shared a story about, you know, having to beg her school to please call her first. Her child suffers from severe autism and many times has had 911 called for an ambulance. And when she has got into the hospital, her child has been handcuffed to a gurney. And so obviously this poses more of a of a trauma than is necessary. And so I was kind of curious to hear what the current protocols are for dealing with children with disabilities that are suffering from emotional distress.
Thank you so much for that question. Right now in schools, when young people are, have a behavioral crisis, we have a chance regulation in place, that's chance regulation eight for 11. It is the department's policy and guidelines for responding to and de-escalating situations. Staff members are trained on strategies and techniques and de-escalation. There are, they have, they receive support such as, you know, school counselors or social workers and positive behavioral intervention and supports program to be able to work to de-escalate situation.
I'm sorry Deputy Chancellor, but how is the V O E then ensuring that the schools are following their own procedures? Because it doesn't appear to be as though.
I'll just add that each school is required to have a school crisis team. And this team assists in de-escalating crisis, like behavioral crisis as you described and other types of crisis situations. And each school is required to provide in a document called the Consolidated Plan, their school-specific plan for addressing a crisis situation. That's what happens in a DOE, both to be proactive before crisis occurs. How do we organize as a school community to prevent crises and to de-escalate when they occur? But when they occur, how do we get involved and start from a supportive lens to so, to address the needs of our young people?
I don't think that, I don't, I don't think I'm satisfied with that though. How do you ensure that they're following their own procedure though? Because I, you know, I find, I mean, we can have, we have procedures for everything. It doesn't mean that people adhere to them. And if, you know, there there seem to be some, but yeah, we're still hearing from parents, especially parents of children with disabilities, severe disabilities, right? That their children are being handcuffed prior to, you know, being taken to the hospital, which a practice which I find really cruel and unnecessary. So I'm just wondering then, what, what, what is the, what is the buffer between the DOE and each individual school to ensure that the schools are complying with their own rules?
So we carefully track and monitor data I shared earlier as part of testimony, the gains that we're seeing here. In regards to the handcuffing of students, I'm going to defer to the NYPD DOE personnel. We do not handcuff or restrain students. But we carefully monitor this data and really, you know, we expect to see declines in calls for EMS transports or 911 calls. And we bolster supports to address the root cause of what's happening with the child. But I defer to NYPD to talk through the handcuffing situation.
So the current procedure and how to respond to children in crisis is the policies laid out on the patrol guide 250 dash 13. The primary factor when determining whether to restrain a student and how to do it is safety to all persons involved. So the minimum level restraint necessary should be used in school environments. Our officers are instructed to confer with school staff prior to putting any students in restraints. Absent exigent circumstances, handcuffs and velcro cuffs should not be used or placed on the student while in the classroom. As mentioned earlier, in a cafeteria or area where other students are located. And members of the service should coordinate with school officials to have the student moved to a semi-private location. Principal's office, school security office, et cetera. When possible, members of the service are also instructed to defer to school staff when the incident is not criminal in nature, but is instead related, instead related to school discipline. We have also the procedure for students under 12. And metal handcuffs may not be used without prior approval of the precinct's school safety sergeant, patrol sergeant or school safety supervisor. They may, they may only be used as a last resort when other means of restraint have not been effective and the student or others would face risk of bodily harm if metal handcuffs are not used. When metal restraints are used on a student less than 12 years old, the precinct CO, XO or duty captain must investigate and prepare report for the chief of patrol and a copy to the commanding officer's school safety division as to why the use of handcuffs were appropriate in that circumstance. A student less than 12 years of age will not be handcuffed to a restraining bar. I know you just mentioned that Councilwoman. Chair railing or other fixed arms. Uh chair railing or other fixed objects and must be kept under constant observation by uniform member of the service or the school safety agent at at all times. Um I just um wanted to just um in in speaking to the uh the use of restraints. And I know you you alluded to some of the um the numbers earlier. When we look at our data for child in the crisis overall. Total interventions, if we use school year nineteen twenty, uh we had twenty two fifty nine interventions in that one school year. That's child in crisis interventions. Um of the twenty two fifty nine, there were twenty thirty four instances in which no restraints were used. Uh when you look at the difference between that, um there were two hundred and twenty five out of two twenty two fifty nine where restraints were used. Of which one thirty one ins uh uh there were one thirty one uh incidents in which restraints were used by SSAs. And ninety four by the respondent patrol officers. Uh I also wanted to mention that, again, going back to the school year nineteen twenty, the twenty two fifty nine incidents are all nine one one calls. So it takes a call uh response team, the local police desk responding, the SSA on ground, school staff uh in accommodating. Uh you know, in dealing with the situation on hand. So we've also seen a a a reduction. When you look at the school year sixteen seventeen, it was twenty seven oh two. Uh you look at school year seventeen eighteen, it went up to thirty five forty seven, all nine one one calls again. And when you look at eighteen nineteen, coincidentally, same number, thirty five forty seven, again nineteen twenty, twenty two fifty nine. My point here is that if we look at nineteen twenty, ninety percent of the cases, nine one one calls, twenty two fifty nine, there are no restraints used. It is the ten percent of cases where we have our SSAs or we have the police officers respond and use restraints. So I think that something is working here. Um and uh it is troubling uh the one incident that you mentioned that goes against PD policy. Uh but we are not to handcuff uh children to uh hospital beds and uh and stationary objects.
Uh of of the number of children that were restrained, do you know what the average, the average age was and what the nature of the complaint was?
Um child in crisis interventions, but we actually broke it uh by uh, I don't have the ages, I just have the, I have school type. Um so you look at um. Yeah, no, I I apologize. I don't have that broken down by age.
Okay, I mean, I guess the concern here is that even a child that is flailing their arms, right? Would be considered a threat in some instances and would be subject to some sort of restraint. And I think that the 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 intent of the bill is to ensure that there are other protocols in place. Before and that that is the last, you know, that's the the only, the only alternative. Um and that it will only be used in cases where there was a severe emergency where somebody, you know, was going to get seriously hurt. Um I, you know, I I appreciate that. I think that, you know, there's still a lot of conversation that needs to be had. I, you know, I, again, as a parent of a child, you know, who suffer from disabilities. Um, you know, I, that's, that's pretty alarming, you know, I would have expected, you know, and I expect that the schools at least would. You know, I would be the first point of contact um and not nine one one. And I think that, you know, um the fact that we're so readily available and willing to make that nine one one call on young children. And I am not talking about a, you know, a a student with a, with a knife or a student that is physically threatening someone. I am, this, this, that is not what I am referring to. I am referring to a child that is obviously behaving in a manner that is consistent with whatever, you know, uh disability. Uh or challenge they may be going through um is restraining that that's to me is, you know, i i unconscionable. Like, there's no, there's no way that I can rationalize that in my mind. Um and so I, you know, I hope that this bill does, you know, something to help rectify that and and we'll be exploring other ways. Um that we can be helpful as well. So I, you know, I welcome any, any feedback um and and appreciate the time. Thank you so much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, uh Councilmember Ayala. Next, we will hear from Councilmember Rosenthal. If we could unmute Councilmember Rosenthal.
Thank you so much, and thank you, Councilmember. I share your uh hor, you know, outrage and horror. Uh so thank you for pursuing those questions, and I too was disappointed at the answers. The first part of my disappointment was the answer to your question begins with, well, in the patrol book, in the patrol guide, here's what it says to do. That should just not be the first three words of a response to how we're handing, handling children in need. Um and with that, I really do want to thank um the Urban Youth Collaborative for a terrific meeting that we had this week. And um from that meeting, I just want to share with you that. You know, w- we, we have to think out of the box. And so far, what we're hearing from the administration is still inside the box. And the box is NYPD. Uh that's the box we have to get out of. Um, you know, I refer to this frequently, I think it's in Denmark where corrections officers. So can you imagine you're a corrections officer at a prison? They must first be trained as social workers. Before they can even enter the field of being a corrections officer. That should be the norm. Full stop. That's what makes sense. And, you know, the police, the NYPD refer to themselves as a paramilitary organization. So why would we want anyone who's part of a paramilitary organization to be in our children's schools? How do your, the changes that you've proposed? Address that? That reality? That we want people who are trained as social workers, not people who are trained in law enforcement. And I share Councilmember Traeger's shock and outrage. That there would even be consideration of a new class of school safety agents. How how is that possible? When in terms of social workers, we're still sending squads of social workers to, you know, a district of schools. We don't even have one social worker for each building, let alone one social worker for each school. Yet we would contemplate training more school safety agents. I really didn't mean this as a lecture. I really want to hear from you. I want to hear how. I I I do want to hear your comments and thoughts, how the approach is defensible. Why does it work?
Um, I'm, I'm happy to get started. Um and thank you so much for um presenting the framing. Um there is lots for us to consider here. Um and I know earlier, uh, you know, my colleagues talked about what's happening um in other municipalities. Uh across the nation, strategies that, you know, they're taking, we're, we are learning from them. Um we're taking a look at their practices, what they're implementing. And looking at um opportunities to do this work at a high level. We must think outside of the box. Um I agree with that, you know, um wholeheartedly. And I, you know, I know earlier, um the discussion was about whether uh new school safety agents would um be hired. And of course, I do not work for NYPD, I work for DOE. But from what I'm understanding is that um there haven't been any decisions made uh along those lines as of yet. Um I believe there perhaps were some discussions about it, but I want to emphasize for the record that there are no decisions. And I believe that, you know, uh my team members are talking about the possibilities when we see what's happening in other places. The possibilities for, you know, us to be thoughtful about how we um ensure more social workers in schools, for example. The possibilities of ensuring that we have um more restorative justice coordinators.
Deputy Chancellor, I appreciate that and I've heard that. So I really appreciate that. That's what we should be doing, full stop. Let me ask you a blunt question, and I would appreciate a blunt answer.
I'll do my best.
Is the issue here resistance from the union?
Um, we have not um experienced a huge degree of resistance. I cannot speak to um the union's position. I'm sure um they will share their position. I don't want to speak for them. Um I think what we have done is that, you know, we have started the the research and discovery phase as part of this work. We form the committees. Um we are hoping that this, you know, transition can be a positive experience for our school communities, especially our children. Um centering our student voices and educated.
So I, I mean, it seems to me like the unions are, is the union leader part, does anyone know if the union leader is part of these discussions?
Uh Chief Obay would be able to speak to uh the union.
Yeah, I just wanted to just mention that uh speaking bluntly, uh the NYPD Office of Labor Relations. Has been tasked with engaging the unions in the transition process.
Do we have someone from that office here?
We, we don't, but we, you know, this is something we've reached out to them.
The topic of the conversation, how could you not? I mean, can you call them in? Councilmember Traeger is going to be here for the entire time and he has prerogative. I mean, I, I shouldn't speak for you, Councilmember, I apologize. But it would be good to have the people who are doing the negotiations on behalf of school safety agents from the administration. Represented on the, on the Zoom, no?
I, I mean, we're talking, I mean, Chief Obay is one of our primary members on the transition committee. We're, we're going to work with the unions.
But it sounds like Chief Obay is not part of the labor.
We, no, right, we have, we have an independent labor office that deals with our unions. But, you know, our goal is to have the unions as part of this process. We're still in the early phases and.
Early phases?
Well, we're in the research phase, but we're, we.
We made this decision in June.
Yeah.
Two thousand, you know, what year are we? Two thousand twenty. It early, we're in early phases, eight months later. Is this just not a priority of the administration? I understand and have seen and worked my butt off on all the COVID related issues. I get that. But as your mayor regularly says, he can walk and chew gum at the same time. So is this a priority or not? And I'm going to end there. I know that was an obnoxious question. Thank you for your indulgence, Chair Traeger.
Thank you, Councilmember, and I just, you know, I I heard very carefully the answer from Deputy Chancellor Robinson. That no final decision has been made. I want to be very clear. That the, if OMB and the mayor's office folks are watching. We had a budget adoption agreement that there was a solid hiring freeze. And I want folks to know that mid-year, in the middle of this fiscal year. They cut money to learning to work LTW, which works with many of our students. Um who are, go to schools that, you know, quite frankly, are trying to better support their needs. Because they went through a school system that was failing to meet their needs. And LTW case counselors and workers have been the connections that these kids have relied on as a safety net and support system during this entire pandemic. I know because I have them in my district. And if you want to keep kids safe, you want to keep kids safe, invest money in LTW. Invest money in PSAL. Because many of our communities, particularly communities of color, don't even have access to quality programming with PSAL. Want to keep kids safe and supported? That's where we should go. I have schools still that need a full-time social worker. You want to keep kids safe? That's where we need to put the money in. OMB, Mayor's Office, I know you folks are watching because you've been texting me during the hearing. That's where that money needs to go. Malcolm, please quote, quote next.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Thank you, Councilmember Rosenthal. Uh for the record, we want to um recognize that we've been joined by Councilmember Reynoso. And next, we will go to Councilmember Miller. If we could please unmute Councilmember Miller.
Uh. Good morning, and uh thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh let me just preface it by saying that I am a a parent of five public school graduates, including myself. Uh South Jamaica, Cambridge Heights, East New York, Brownsville, Brooklyn, no, no matter what, I I think every child deserves quality education. Um I I I do want to uh, it wasn't my line of questioning, uh but I do want to address the labor relation issue. Uh because I did have um introduced legislation that would codify what this transition would look like. And we're not having that conversation really now. We're just talking about what what the move looks like. And 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 so um if if we can, I I I think that's what the committee was trying to talk about, what the chief was trying to talk about. But I I did say that the chief with all due respect herself is not qualified to have this conversation, having arrived in five months, right? Having the the the, you know, the, spent my entire life um in 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 the public school experience. Mother being in school, eh, working away through teaching and and all these other things, having um all these experiences. And when you talk to the young people in my district, um in my household and the community, and you talk about school safety agent. The, when the mention of that, there's a glow. There is a glow, and then they talk about their experiences. Oh, Miss, uh, or was it so and so who did this or that? And 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 not to say that no one's not having a negative experience. But the most fa, most part, that's what they talk about. And then they also talk about being safe. Then they talk about those experiences. I witnessed myself, a school safety agent, of course, from the, from the office. Stop a young lady at seven o'clock in the morning, go to the trunk, pull out a bag of clothes and 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 say to her. That only a black and brown woman could say that, young lady, you know, your attire is not appropriate and it's not fitting, right? You know, ma- ma- maybe this is helpful. That, when when we walk into the building, we don't necessarily see that blue uniform and the extension of the police department, but an extension of our community. And oftentimes, the only extension of the community that that you're going to see. I would submit that we can walk and chew gum at the same time, that it is not that that we should not. We should be investing in professional development in these safety agents, whomever they are. To to think that we're going to remove these folks from the building um is is just absurd. Uh whatever sense of safety and security that these young folks have often comes more than not by virtue of 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 these women from their community. So um we need to address holistically uh uh the value of of what they're doing. And and, you know, there needs to be. There also needs to be a real conversation about safety. I happen to have one of those schools that that have uh um a high school that has uh metal detectors. And 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 the children should not become culturally sensitive or or culturally um. Norm that they just go through this, right? That they have to go through a detector and 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 be criminalized in that way. But we also have to have a real talk conversation about um weapons or whatever else that may have been taken off or of of violence. And how do we mitigate that? And and that's what needs to be done in this period, right? And it's it's very easy to say that, and I do believe that principals should have say so over everybody in the building. But I would also submit that a above everything else, what what diminishes the principal's authority is collective bargaining agreements. And 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 if we're not talking about all of this holistically, if we want to say that um that these women. Oftentimes are the pond of defund police and get them out. The very people that we're looking to to support our children, our 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 single uh black and brown mothers are the ones that are going to be impacted most. So let's not throw the baby out with the bath water. Let's really address this holistically. And 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 certainly, um I would like to hear uh why uh two thirty seven is not involved directly in this negotiation, if in fact that is. I have spoken regularly to Office of Labor Relations about this. I have spoken to two thirty seven's leadership. And there is no, th- th- there is no aspect of policy and DOE that CSA and UFT is not involved. And why why then dismiss this organization from having to say so and what their transfer looks like as well? Um that was the agreement um during the budget, that it was going to be a a um a committee put together. And a committee that does not include them is just not a just committee and does not serve our young people. I would like to hear um uh someone from DOE really speak to what the committee is doing and how, in fact, we are codifying. The services uh that transferring those. the services, uh, that transferring those services and how we intend to keep our children safe at the same time, um, maintaining this workforce, uh, because they do have value. I I I know what school safety was like, what schools were like twenty years ago, what they're like now. Um, I think that the the council has has done, um, tremendous work around reporting and mandating certain things. I absolutely support, uh, Councilmembers Ayala's legislation. Um, I I'm still traumatized from seeing a a a young boy of nine in a straitjacket. Um, and 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 he is now a twenty-one-year-old college graduate, and 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 I'm sure he's traumatized as well. Um, but again, let's not throw the baby out with the bathwater, and let's let's really hear from what this process is really going to look like at the end of the day. Um, are we going to transfer folks out? And and our babies aren't safe? Are our babies aren't given the 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 tools? Uh, the the workforce aren't giving the tools to the young people to really give them the educational experience that they deserve? Um, that's what I like to hear. I don't want to beat up on anyone. I want to see what that process looks like as we ask, how do we codify, um, the move? Um, if 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 someone could speak to that, you know, I I I'd really be happy to hear. Also, again, um, Chair Trager uh, and 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 Rosenthal, my my, um, labor relation expertise is always available to this body um, in this process. We've, you know, I I I'd love to, um, you know, be a part of this process wherever, and 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 if ever necessary. Um, certainly something that we've experienced in in my professional experience and and, uh, um, I I think that is important, that we give the work, and and I know you acknowledge, of of these agents, the the really the respect that 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 they're due. Um, and I'll end with this. I've I've actually had the the privilege of walking through Brownsville with, uh, Ms., um, uh, the, uh, Councilmember, uh, Alika Samuel, Anthony Sambu's mom, who who was the school safety agent, and she was the mother for all of Brownsville, and 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 how the young people responded to her was was absolutely amazing, and we cannot dismiss the value of 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 the work that that some of these folks have done. So thank you so much for the time. If if we could really talk about to the work of the transition team, I think that that that's really the right direction. Thank you for your leadership, Mr. Chair.
And I I thank you for your leadership, uh, Councilmember Miller, and for always, you know, centering, you know, working families, and you are a outstanding labor union um, advocate, and you come from labor. I was a union delegate during my time, and I certainly appreciate and understand the importance of having labor certainly at the table, and that should be happening. If it's not happening, labor must be, but so do other stakeholders, uh, because this this really is about, you know, if if you signed up to work in a school, uh, regardless of your job title, you should be there for children. That's what this is about. And, uh, and and I, you know, and I and I appreciate Councilmember Miller, and I and I also emphasize the point that during this pandemic as well, the physical buildings have been open uh, with, uh, school safety, school cleaners, school food workers, crossing guards, helping our communities from across the five boroughs, and that must also be recognized and appreciated. We've, school safety agents have also tragically passed away because of the pandemic.
That's right.
Uh, in the line of duty and service, and that has to be recognized. I think for me personally, uh, you know, I just, from my experience as a product of public schools, a teacher in public schools, my family's from public schools, and my training, um, is that schools are run by the school system. And we, you know, we, you know, just like in New York City, the government structure, the mayor's in charge, not the NYPD commissioner, same thing. It comes in the school system, you know. School leaders, being a school leader is tough. It is not an eat, and it is a tough job. You know, every time they tweet out a change about guidance, who do you think has to operationalize everything? And, uh, it's the school leadership, and 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 they also on their mind is are are their kids okay? Not just whether they're okay academically, it's are the kids safe? Are they okay? Do they have food? Are they, you know, school administration, school, you know, teachers, they also worry about the safety of their kids. And 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 school safety, of course, plays a role in this, but to me, you know, we are a school system, and that's why, you know, I go back to my first questions at the start of the hearing. You know, who's in charge? And if we're saying it's a school system, educators need to be in charge of the school system and work in collaboration, of course, no question. But to me, and of course.
I agree.
Respecting labor and, uh, you know, binding agreements, I get this, but end of the day, we have to make decisions in the best interest of children, and we are a school system. Uh, so thank you, Councilmember Miller. Really appreciate you always.
Thank you so much, Brother Trager, and and look forward to working with you, yes.
Always, always.
Absolutely.
Appreciate it. Uh, uh, next, Councilmember Malcolm?
Uh, uh, yes, so next we will hear from Councilmember Reynoso, followed by Councilmembers Holden and Councilmember Gredenchik. If we could unmute Councilmember Reynoso, please.
Starting time. Thank you. Uh, first, I just want to thank, uh, Councilmember Trager for all the work that he's done, um, really highlighting, uh, the issues, um, that continue to impact students in the Department of Education. So thank you to my Brooklyn colleague, Mark Trager, for that work. Um, uh, I I would rather take this time to make a statement, just because my history um, in hearings with the NYPD tends to be a lot of, um, you know, not a lot of, not a lot of content comes from the Department of Education as to why they're not doing something, which is what is traditionally the case. Um, uh, I want to thank, uh, the Urban Youth Collaborative for their longstanding advocacy to ensure safe and supportive learning environments for students in New York City public schools, the majority of whom are youth of color. Today, I want to talk about the process and outcomes. This bill impacts two large constituencies, our students and our school safety officers. Neither of these groups are at the table when this bill was being drafted. We just can't accept to achieve, we can't expect to achieve good outcomes when impacted communities are not consulted in the process. Our students want and need support. Our schools need guidance counselors and social workers, but it seems our young people were never asked to provide input what a safe school community environment looks like. Our school safety officers just need a transit, need a just transition away from having to criminalize students who look just like them. Changing the path on an officer's arm and sending them to a couple of retraining classes does not achieve this, has never achieved this. Retraining is not reform. We need to focus on the outcomes we're trying to achieve here, and looking for a solution before we fully identify and work through the underlying problem isn't the way to go about it. Any solution that doesn't fully integrate perspectives, experiences, and needs of those impacted is a half measure at best. School safety must be a top priority, and we know that policing schools fails to achieve that. But we can't move forward until we conduct a thorough review on how we got to this place where we felt the need to put police officers in our schools in the first place. And when we remove officers from schools, we need to provide them real opportunities to pursue meaningful careers that don't require them to criminalize children, and those officers need to be at the table when we're having these discussions. I look forward to working with my colleagues on a more inclusive process as we seek to create a safe and productive learning environment in our school. Thank you, uh, Chair Trager, for giving me this opportunity to make this statement.
Thank you, Councilmember Reynoso, and next we will hear from Councilmember Holden. If we can unmute Councilmember Holden, please.
Thank you so much, and thank you, Chair Trager, for this great hearing. Um, I just want to echo, uh, Councilmember Denise Miller's comments regarding the NYPD school safety officers. Um, after I was elected to the city council, and I I toured every school in my district, and and I was amazed. What a difference in the schools that I I witnessed. My kids went to school it probably, I would say, starting in the eighties and nineties. And I hadn't seen, until I got elected, the inside of a school until I toured every school in my district. And I couldn't believe the difference. Uh, the principals were engaged, the teachers were motivated, and the students were motivated. But what struck me, uh, and I and again, I witnessed this in every single school, that the school safety officers knew every student, knew, were were engaging with them, were were actually telling them by by their first name, um, you've been you've been out in the hallway too too much, you better get back to, you know, your your room, your homeroom, or get back to your classroom. Um, and it was done in a nice way. It wasn't yelling, it wasn't forceful, it was like they were either, you know, uh, a parent or, uh, what, they were a friend. So I I, again, going to my C E C meetings and P T A meetings, remembering coming off Parkland three years ago and Sandy Hook and the school shootings, and I think most councilmembers remember that there was a push to lock the school doors, to get, uh, police with with arms into the schools to protect our kids. And I, you know, again, I I wasn't sure about the the arms, um, officers in the school, but I did say that we should keep NYPD engaged because they keep our kids safe, which is the most important part of it. And knowing what I know about the school safety officers, uh, knowing my district, and I think every, you know, again, I'm not seeing what what all the districts are seeing, I'm seeing a a a school system light years ahead of when my kids went there. Went to went to public school, all of them went to public school. Uh, all three kids. And and I would go into the schools, and I I saw a marked difference. But I was most struck with the school safety officers, how professional, but yet how loving I felt they were. And so I'm not seeing the same thing some of my colleagues are seeing with, oh, they're NYPD. No, they're they're human beings that are motivated by the principal possibly, or by the school staff, but they are engaged. So I wouldn't be, I wouldn't be quick to just, like Denise said, just to throw out, throw out the the baby with the bathwater here. Um, I would, I would actually look at this very carefully, uh, and it'll cost a lot more money to transfer the the programs or to to the the agency. So I I I just think at this point, we have to tread carefully, but I have a totally different opinion than some of my other colleagues that I've heard on this, um, on this, um, uh, call. And I, by the way, being a college professor for um, for over forty years, I witnessed a a shooting in my school, in the college, and I understood how it was, it was very important to have the police um, that responded very, very quickly to, um, to really stop the shooting and to and to save lives, and two people were killed, two, uh, a technician and a faculty member. So I remember those days, and, uh, that's why I think safety should be number one, that number one with thing we're thinking about. But I obviously we need more councils in the school, that's that's a no-brainer. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Holden. Next we will hear from Councilmember Gredenchik, followed by Councilmember Levin. If we can go ahead and unmute Councilmember Gredenchik.
Uh, thank you. Thank you very, very much. Um, like many of my colleagues today, I'm trying to do a lot of things at once. Um, I want to thank the Chair, uh, for, uh, the hearing today on this very, very important topic. And I want to thank my colleagues who, uh, asked questions uh, for their questions, and, um, I want to associate myself with the remarks made by, uh, the Chair of the Labor Committee, Chair Miller and, uh, Bob Holden. Um, I have made, since, uh, becoming a council member, uh, at least five hundred school visits. I visit every single school every year. Uh, regrettably, like the rest of you, I am making my school visits virtually this year. I I have become on a first-name basis with my principals, um, and to a large extent with the school safety officers. And I can tell you, Mr. Chairman, and to everybody who's listening, that every single time I have visited a school, whether it was to see the principal, to go to a cultural event, to meet with the P T A, to go to another community event, there was not a single time, not one, not one, where I was not stopped politely by the school safety officer. I have found every single one of them in my thirty-five schools to be an utter professional, um, doing what is a difficult job, first and foremost, guarding that front door, um, because we know that there are people that should not be in our public schools. So I want to thank all of them, and I don't know if we're going to hear from the President of the Union later, uh, but I want to thank him as well for the work that they do on behalf of all of them. Um, somebody said, or may it may have been, several people have said, one size does not fit all. New York City spreads out over three hundred square miles, and it spreads out over eighteen hundred school sites. And I am, um, very concerned that in this transition, um, we will be losing things or leaving things behind. And so uh, I think this has to be done with the utmost care. I was not in favor, to be honest with you. Um, because as as Councilman Holden said, um, we have witnessed the professionalism of the people that are working in these schools. And by the way, almost every single one of them is a woman of color. I would say probably eighty to ninety percent of the people doing this job, um, are women of color, and, uh, they do it so professionally. And so I I just want to put that into the record. Um, these are frontline employees. Um, they are polite, they are understanding. Um, and it has been my experience that every single one of them is an integral part of the school community. And I have, uh, in all my meetings with the principals, um, I have not had a single complaint about their school security, uh, not once. Uh, I haven't heard it from the teachers, and I certainly haven't heard it from the parents. That's not to say that there haven't been, there have been a couple of issues in my district. Thank you very much. Um, but they were handled professionally, and, um, I was satisfied with those outcomes. So I wanted to put that into the record, Mr. Chair, and I look forward to working with you through this budget process with all my colleagues um, to get the money where it does need to go, and that, of course, means more guidance council. So I'll put in a plug because I know that's your your number one priority. Thank you. I'll see you for the rest of the hearing.
Thank you, Councilmember Gredenchik, and next we will hear from Councilmember Levin. If we could please unmute Councilmember Levin.
Thank you very much. Uh, first off, thank you very much. First off, I'm I'm very, um, upset at this revelation around, um, uh, the, going back on the agreement around the hiring freeze. Um, uh, first off, um, uh, this chair, I I want to note that this represents um, yet another example of where O M B, um, has this discretionary power to determine policy in our city. It's a huge problem across agencies. Um, uh, because because budget equals policy, um, that O M B acts as an independent actor, um, unbound by agreements by the administration. So that needs to be addressed and should be addressed uh, uh, at the outset of our, um, uh, our our budget discussions in March. Um, uh, secondly, this administration um, needs to publicly speak to the agreement that we made at the budget around a hiring freeze and the entire agreement around, um, uh, N Y P D, um, uh, uh, budget and how, where we are in that process. Um, so they need to publicly acknowledge that that they are not going to be hiring additional school safety officers, because there's a hiring freeze across New York City. Let's be clear, this isn't a a going against school safety officers. This is because there's a hiring freeze for every other position in New York City government. Um, and they should not be exempt from that. So, um, but my question here, um, is where are we in the process of reimagining and reassigning the Division of School Safety from the NYPD to the D O E? Where are we in that process? Who has, who has, um, been responsible for, who is responsible, um, for seeing that process through? Um, uh, whose jurisdiction is it under? And, um, and 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 who is now involved, and why is, uh, why are we not seeing on student representatives and, um, two thirty-seven involved in this conversation? Because obviously they need to be. So, um, where are we in that process? What's that process?
Thank you so much for that question, Councilmember. Um, I, you know, I want to start, a lot has been said about safety here. And I want to start, um, by saying that when we talk about safety, we have to talk about comprehensive safety. That's physical safety, which a lot has been said about that. Um, there's also psychological safety. There's social emotional safety. The question is, is everyone safe? We cannot have schools where. We cannot have schools where some children feel safe and some children feel police. They do not feel safe. And let me just say that this is not about individual school safety agents. I was a high school principal and I had a very positive relationship with my individual school safety agent. But we also have to come to this conversation fully understanding how communities historically have interacted with police in this country. Failure to have our eyes wide open in this thing will mean that we will not make the best decisions here. We have to ask ourselves who benefits from the current structures and systems and who is placed at risk. And that's an honest conversation. I believe that's the conversation that council was grappling with during these historic protests in our city and across the nation. Also during, uh, COVID nineteen. So first I'll start there. The second thing, uh, that I will reiterate is that there have been no decisions, um, about bringing on board new school safety agents, from what I understand. I don't work for N Y P D. Um, but that is what I'm being told and what I am communicating, um, here today. I think this is an opportunity for us as a city to really think about how we value our young people and how we make decisions from, you know, like you shared, uh, budget decisions and other decisions that reflect our values and what we want for the children of the city of New York. And then I'll add that we've been doing this work for some time. Right? I, I, I really want us to think about this work as a continuation of investments that we've made, investments in restorative practices over the years, investments in increasing the number of social workers and counselors. And council has been at the forefront of this and Chair Trager in particular. Um, the work that we've done around changes to the discipline code, the update to the, and, uh, the M O U and also, uh, the patrol guide update that have yielded, uh, the outcomes that we see. We have a long way to go. We decreased suspensions, but we know racial disparities still continue to persist in this work. We've done a lot and we're building upon that work. So we're not starting from scratch here in this space. And I want us to all, um, keep that in mind. This is an opportunity to engage students first and foremost, educators, families, and council, all of you, to create the vision for this work together. We see it as encompassing all facets of safety. And we certainly want to continue to partner with you along with Local Two Thirty Seven, who represent the school safety agents. Their voices are important here. They must be at the table. We know they have a relationship with N Y P D. We look forward to developing a relationship with them and the D O E and trotting this path forward together.
Thank you. I, I just, uh, I'm sorry, but I just, I do want to just, um, ask where we are in the process of that, of the structure of, because this is, it was announced last, last July that, or June, that it would be a, um, a, a two-year process. And I'm just, I want to know where we are in that process specifically.
Um, absolutely. Um, as I shared earlier, as, um, the committee structures in place, we're working across agencies and with city hall to continue to take these, um, important steps forward. So we have, uh, formalized those structures. Um, and I shared, uh, some of the, uh, committees, uh, earlier and testimony. I also just, you know, um, Chair Trager, I believe it was in what he shared to open, when he talked about, um, how this work transitioned from the D O E to N Y P D during the Giuliani administration. It took that administration four years to do this work. Four years. Other municipalities, it takes them years to do this. We are working diligently and with great speed to make this happen within the timeframe established by council and city hall. Uh, we see it as important. We see it as building upon investments that we've made to be. Um, and we look forward to, um, continuing to work expeditiously to make it happen, but also thoughtfully um, and fully engaging communities and, um, as I shared, all of council to, um, forge a path together.
Thank you, Deputy Chancellor. Thank you.
Uh, Chair Trager, that's all for council member questions. So I will turn it back to you.
Thank you. I, I just want to make a quick comment and I do have a, just a couple of questions and, uh, we'll move on. Um, you know, to kind of echo what Deputy Chancellor Robinson said, you know, we have to look at the word safety holistically. Um, you know, I had students in my classroom that discussed safety issues with me. They shared with me that they needed help, uh, to, to get food. They asked sometimes for financial assistance to have a, a meal after school. I had students that shared with me that, um, they were not sure if they were going to be, um, in a safe housing environment that night with heat. Um, I had students that shared with me that they were still coping with the impacts of certain social issues in their, um, communities, uh, students that were impacted by domestic violence. Um, I know that some of my colleagues also, you know, Councilmember Gredenchuk, who has been one of the leaders in, in the council as far as emergency food assistance, right? Uh, to make sure that we, we tackle food insecurity. What I tell my colleagues is that getting money to a food pantry is really important. But understand that that is trauma that our kids are carrying, not knowing if they're going to have a meal to eat, uh, not knowing, uh, what housing will look like, not knowing how they're going to cope with so many other, uh, traumatic experiences during the course of their life. And that is why when they enter school, school is supposed to be the great equalizer. School is supposed to be a place where regardless of what's happening in the world, that they come into the school building and they are loved and they are safe and they are supported. And there's a whole support system there to say that things are going to be okay. We're here for you. We're going to do everything we can to help you and support you. School should not be adding to any type of trauma that they might be already experiencing during the course of their lives. Schools are about healing and building and growing. Um, that's also safety. And I will never forget the story of an educator who shared with me that a seven-year-old child who was having a bad day in school that didn't have a full-time social worker. When the child had an episode, they called the cops on a seven-year-old having a bad day. A seven-year-old having a bad day is not a police issue. That's a crisis for us as a city that we have to, it, that is, that is a failure on our part. That the cops had to be, five cops had to respond to a seven-year-old having a bad day in school. That's outrageous. We're better than this. But because we don't have adequate support structures in every single school, because we don't, we still have schools without full-time social workers. We still have schools that don't have conflict resolution counselors and mediators. Folks that can teach our young people to solve problems without resorting to violence or physical violence. People that could work with the kids to heal our kids and, 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 and train all staff in restorative justice practices. Because of this inadequacy, it falls to this punitive structure that was packaged by the Giuliani administration. Can anyone rap, can anyone rationally tell me knowing who Rudy Giuliani is, that that is the structure we should leave our kids in right now? No. And so we have to have full faith in school leadership with educators, with support staff, with parents and kids, and with folks in school safety to work together to keep our kids safe holistically. Because as Deputy Chancellor Robinson mentioned, there are many things that are compromising the safety of our children. And we cannot have one, one person or one group dominate that role. Um, I want to just ask a question, um, about with regards to the youth. Uh, you know, I, I support, of course, hundred percent labor at the table. Because this is, this is going to be a labor, uh, this is, this is a labor process as well. But my question is, um, what youth-led, uh, or youth-centered organizations are part of the transition team? I have, as the administration engage youth-led groups, uh, for example, dignity in schools and other organizations that have been working on school discipline and safety issues for, for a long time.
We have started, um, to engage community groups, including youth groups. Um, and I look forward to providing, um, specific details to council. We can certainly share the list of everyone that we've engaged to date. Um, and also, uh, those that we hope to engage moving forward.
Thank you, Deputy Chancellor. I think it's really important that our young people are very much, uh, centered in this conversation. I know that you share that goal. Um, it, it's really important. And also, I know my colleagues, you know, you know, I feel compelled to respond to this. I know some of my colleagues reference some tragic and painful, painful, uh, school shootings across the country. Um, and as a teacher, when I saw these head, when I saw this headline, you, you, your heart breaks. And I want to note for the record also that educators, uh, have actually died in this country defending their students. Educators put their bodies on the line defending their kids. And many of these schools actually had school resource officers and school safety personnel and the shooters still entered the building. Uh, it's not to minimize their role and their importance, but I'm just, I think if we really want to eradicate school violence as far as shootings, let's pass comprehensive gun reform in this country and, and, and make sure that we pass universal background checks. So guns don't get in the hands of very bad people. Because many of the students, if you look at the, the record, many of the students that and folks who engaged in this horrific and tragic behavior, this was not the first symptom of a problem. Uh, there were just years of built-up untreated trauma. The impact of untreated trauma should not be underestimated. We see it on the streets of the city right now. Look what just happened, for example, in our, in our subway. Talk about years of untreated trauma and what happens when we have a system that breaks down. We fail people, people get hurt. But if we had those support structures in place in our schools all these years, just imagine, uh, not just the tragedies that we're preventing, but the lives that were blossoming and turning around. Um, school social workers, school counselors, uh, support staff, their work is transformative. Um, they don't just see the fruits of their labor tomorrow. It's, it's about years of growth and transformation. Um, that's what this is about. So, uh, with that, I thank you, Deputy Chancellor and the administration. Your testimony, I want to say again for the record, um, that the administration needs to hold true to the agreement of our budget, uh, agreement. And I'm going to continue to push that twenty million dollars. And I'm going to fight for more money than twenty million, but that twenty million dollars learning to work, P S A L, guidance counselors, social workers, let's, let's get our kids a support with, with, uh, with that they rightfully desperately need. Okay? And I thank you, uh, very much for your time today.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Chair Trager. And next we will move to, uh, begin public testimony. Uh, just reminding council members that if you have a question for a particular panelist, use the raise hand function in Zoom and I'll call on you after the entire panel has concluded its testimony. I would like to remind members of the public that, uh, we are limiting people to two minutes, um, for their testimony. Uh, a member of staff will unmute you after I call on you. Please wait for the sergeant-at-arms to tell you your time has started and then you may begin. At the end of two minutes, we ask that you please wrap up your comments so we can move on to the next panelist. So first, we will be hearing from a panel of students. Dariel Infante, Jasmine Morales, Josh Melendez, and Belka Rodriguez. Following that panel, we will hear from Rosemary Sinclair of the C S A, Greg Floyd of Local Two Three Seven, and School Safety Agent Quinn Simkins. So we will first begin with Dariel.
Starting time.
Hello, everybody. My name is Dariel Infante and I'm a youth leader with Future of Tomorrow and Urban Youth Collaborative. I'm seventeen years old and I'm a Y C student attending Multicultural High School. As a youth leader, I take responsibility in advocating for the rights and safety of other students. Today, today I'm here to post bill number twenty-two eleven in telling the transfer of S S A to D O E oversight. I want police free schools and investment on guidance counselors, nurses, and restorative justice programming. As an immigrant student in N Y C, I was shocked after I saw so many school safety agents on my school campus. I remember my first day in school and how anxious I was to see so many officers that work in a school facility. As I waited in line to enter the school building, I was shocked to notice that the school staff and teachers didn't have to pass through the metal detectors. Their experiences were different from my peers' night. Well, what made them so different? Those that D O E only view students as criminals. Cops in our schools criminalize students along racial, racial lines at disproportionate rates with zero consequences. More schools with black and brown students have an increased police presence in our environment. In N Y C public schools, there are more than five thousand school safety agents, but less than three thousand guidance counselors, two thousand social workers, and one thousand five hundred school nurses. Mayor de Blasio stated that he plans to invest in mental health support staff in schools. Why not just use the school safety division funding to do that? Instead of spending unnecessary funds to deepen police involvement in schools. If the city plans to invest in the mental health of its students and hire more mental health support staff, then we must invest from things that are not immediate priorities. I'm, I'm asking the city council representative to vote against the transfer of S S A to the D O E and invest in the needs of students. Thank you.
Thank you. And next we will hear from Jasmine Morales.
Starting time.
My name is Jasmine Morales and my pronouns are she/her. I am a youth member from Youth Power Project at McThuro, New York. I am here today because it is important to talk about intro twenty-one eighty-eight bill. This bill will change the way youths are traumatized by schools, by police in schools, especially when they are having a mental health challenge. The bill would end the handcuffing of students during a mental health crisis. We support prohibiting school personnel from handcuffing or restraining students during a mental health crisis. Young people face stress and difficulties for so many different reasons. We need support when we are in school and going through a crisis. We don't need to be criminalized. In fact, this is exactly what happens in New York City schools if you are black and Latinx. The youngest students handcuffed during a mental health crisis are five years old. Almost all of the students handcuffed during a mental health crisis are black and Latinx. In our time of need, we are treated differently in our schools because of the color of our skin. The, this bill could be a significant step in removing police from mental health responses. However, the bill requires school safety personnel to be retrained on how to de-escalate situations regarding young people's mental health. Not only is it time-consuming, but it's a misuse of funds and resources that should be hired, um, that should be used to hire professionally trained people such as show, social workers and therapists. The N Y P D is not equipped to handle such, such situations and should not be first responders for youth mental crisis. The N Y P D has a history for harassing black and brown youths. We need personnel that do not have a history of policing students. I went to a high school that encouraged a school-to-prison pipeline and there were more school safety agents than guidance counselors and therapists. Teenagers were constantly getting into fights and suspended. The majority of the students that attended my high school were black and brown students. A social worker or therapist were never called. It's always security or dean. We want police-free schools. Thank you.
Thank you. And next we'll hear from Josh Melendez.
Starting.
Good afternoon. My name is Josh Melendez and I'm in seventh grade. I attend James Kenyon High School, uh, high. Uh, I live in Council District Eight in the Bronx. I'm in, I'm a Youth Leadership Brothers Unite. I'm in, I'm a youth racism brothers unite, the urban youth collaborative, and dignity in schools. I'm here today because as a young Latino boy, I feel scared and unsafe in my school. When SSAs are around, when SSAs are around, and I know that my school will feel safer without them. I remember a time when I was walking to the bathroom and an SSA stopped me and asked to see my hall pass, which I did not have since my teacher lost it. The SSA immediately started yelling at me and scolded me like I did something awful and sent me to detention. Although he said he could do a lot more worse. And he wanted to, and if he wanted to. He had terrified me and my friends and made me and my friends not want to attend school. As he made all of us feel unsafe. I also remember a classmate of mine arrived to school late and an SSA started screaming at him and saying that he should have not been late and threatening him, which led him to crime. Everyone from the city council, the DOE, and the city and the mayor continue to fund and expand on SSAs in, in our schools. Thinking that they can make me and my other students and peers feel safe. When reality, they make us feel like we're their next target. And they're ready to take us down for anything. Data shows that the black and Latino ex students in New York has consistently represented around ninety percent of all youth arrests, court summons, and juvenile reports issued by school police. Intro twenty-two eleven is yet another way to retain policing personnel in our schools. By another name, but more importantly, it continues to expand on violence. And I and my peers face another day, fear, feel fear on a day-to-day basis. This is why it's important to know, this is why it is important to vote no on intro twenty-two eleven. It seems like the council, the council is looking to just save five thousand-plus policing, policing jobs while sacrificing the social and emotional needs of students and police in, in schools. I believe students' mental, social, and emotional health is important, but we lack the resources to guidance counselors and social workers in our school. And now that we are in a pandemic, we also need more nurses in our school. Police-free schools means attending to school that prioritizes young people's well-being as a whole. It means students feel safe and welcome in schools. And it does not mean feeling like they might be, that we will be their next target of an SSA or whatever you hope to name them as a disguise. While intro twenty-one eighty-eight is a great start to, to how we can further remove police from entering our building, is not enough, and is not enough. It is time to really care, really, it's time to really care, value, and support students who are black, brown, queer, and trans, and students with disabilities. Thank you.
Thank you. And next we will hear from Breilka Rodriguez.
Your time starts now. Hi, my name is Breilka Rodriguez. I live in Staten Island. I'm in ninth, I am in ninth grade. I'm a youth leader at McThuro New York and Urban Youth Collaborative. I'm here today testifying because I'm concerned about the school eight safety agent bill, intro twenty-two eleven. This bill is not what students want. When we say police-free schools, we do not mean transferring SSAs from the NYPD to the DOE. I was excited to be in high school, but my freshman year was not how I imagined it to be. When the pandemic hit, it made me realize that my school and all the schools across New York City were not equipped to deal with a situation like this one. My first day of high school was disorganized, stressful, because I was not informed about my staff or school schedule. No emotional support was available to deal with my anxiety, anxiety from the pandemic. Immediately, I became aware that there is a lack of funding for social, emotional, and mental health support for students. To me and probably to many students, the lack of resources is a nightmare. My school is located a couple blocks away from where Eric Gardner was killed. It's unbelievable to know that those same police from the precincts are in my school. It's more infuriating that close to four hundred and fifty million is spent on police in schools. And even more so that all they are doing is now policing empty school, empty buildings. Transferring SSAs from NYPD to the DOE is not what young people like myself want. For years, we have been extremely vocal about removing police out of schools. We have been demanding to reallocate the funding from policing students to social, emotional, and mental health supports. There are more school safety agents across New York City schools than school, social schoolwork, social workers, guidance counselors, and school nurses available for one million students. Every time students of color like myself walk inside a building, we have to go through metal detectors. We get treated like criminals and different from others. Transferring SSAs to the Department of Education will not erase the harm that NYPD has inflicted on black and brown students for like the last twenty years. This transfer will not undo the trauma that many have experienced. I have a little sister who's nine years old and is in elementary school. And because of her, I am committed to keep fighting so she does not have to experience police in schools. Now, more than ever, we need cities, city council to listen and stand by us. We need guidance counselors that can help us be on track. We need college success centers that can make the process easy, less stressful, and scary. We need staff on our side that will make us feel safe and supported. And I want to go back into school buildings that prioritize students' needs and wellbeings. Not that criminal, criminalizes just because of our skin color. Thank you.
Thank you Chair Trigger. That concludes this panel. I will turn it to you for questions. And council members, please remember, if you have a question for any panelists, please use the raise hand function in Zoom.
So I always want to thank our students for taking time to testify and remind them this, this is about them. I'm just, it's an open question to any of the students for them to answer. I, I know that, you know, schools have school safety agents. I'm curious to know if any of the students in their schools, do they have a, and how many? Do they have a full-time social worker? And how many do they have? Do they have someone, a restorative justice coordinator? Do they have a full-time counselor? How many? I'm just curious if any of the kids could speak to, to us about what does their support system look like? Because we certainly hear their concerns about other school stakeholders. Thank you.
I can go first. I'm sorry. From my knowledge, there was only one therapist out of the seven schools in my campus. There only, there was only one therapist. And in my school, there was only two guidance counselors. And there were like a tons more of schools, school safety agents. There was like a whole, I think there was like a whole floor dedicated to them, a piece of the first floor dedicated to them. So yeah.
I'm gonna go next. I, we do have, and in my personal, in my personal experience, there's a time I, I needed someone to help me. I needed someone to help me on a, on a issue. But they, they couldn't because they had so many kids. I had to make an appointment and at the end of the day, they couldn't help me because they have so many kids and they're only three of them.
That's the other issue. Even if you have a full-time counselor or social worker in a school with a thousand or so more children, you have very big caseloads. And, you know, it's, it's painful to hear that a student cannot just walk in and get services right there and then, but they have to now schedule appointments. And that's, 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 that's a challenge. That's a breakdown in our system, folks. That's, that is a breakdown, especially, and I, I want to emphasize this point because educators know what I'm talking about. It takes courage for a student to speak up, to go speak to an adult in a building, to share a challenge or a problem that they're having in their lives. Don't assume that that happens just by snapping a finger. If a student is sharing something, it really, really is important for the school to immediately in, intake that and respond immediately. And if a student shares something and we don't help and there's no adequate support system, that is the beginning of, that already is the failure, but that's when things continue to spiral down. How many kids we know shared with someone, but they didn't have an adequate support structure to respond? So I thank the students for, for, for sharing that, that very important testimony. Thank you Malcolm.
Thank you. Next, we will hear from Rosemary Sinclair of the CSA and Greg Floyd of Local 237. After this panel, I will be calling Oliver Cannell, Mary Hemmings, Muscula, Horisius, and Isha Taylor. If we could please unmute Rosemary Sinclair.
Your time starts now.
Good afternoon. My name is Rosemary Sinclair, and I'm the first vice president of the Council of School Supervisors and Administrators, the labor union representing New York City school leaders. Thank you Chair Trigger for today's critical hearing. The health, welfare, and safety of our children is every school leader's first priority. Thus, we have many questions and concerns regarding the decision made about nine years ago, nine months ago, to transition the oversight of our school safety agents from NYPD to DOE. First, the oversight was taken from the DOE over twenty years ago due to its inability to manage the unit. What gives us any reason to believe that the DOE is better positioned to take this opportunity and responsibility on today? Secondly, in the nine months since this two-year transition began, we have seen no sign of progress, nor have we been informed of the plan and process. Who will be creating the protocols and providing the training? Who is providing the funding for this transition? What is the plan for ongoing training and staffing? What will the role of the principal be in the hiring, supervision, and evaluation of school safety personnel? Under what circumstances will police involvement be warranted? And have just what the DOE can, will coordinate? Will they coordinate and maintain a working relationship with the NYPD? What assurance do we have that the number of safety agents assigned in each school is adequate? What will be the process for securing substitutes? And are there plans for add, added additional supports? Despite our questions and concerns, CSA is committed to making this a successful transition. In fact, we have been trying to stay ahead of the issue during the contract negotiation that we had. We advocated to have an assistant principal in every school to help with school climate, and the DOE agreed. We asked for the city council's support in assuring the contract provision is utilized by the DOE, and we feel that it will greatly help the transition. Finally, our members will do everything in their power to improve safety procedures and protocols in their school to create optimal learning conditions for our students. We humbly ask that the city councils help ensure that the voices and experiences of school leaders are regularly heard and on these matters. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And next we'll hear from Greg Floyd of Local 237. If we could unmute Mr. Floyd, please.
Your time starts now.
Thank you. Two hundred eighty-eight, that is the number of major crimes in public schools ranging from rape to grand, grand larceny in two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty. Nine seventy-six, that's the number of crimes for the same period ranging from assaults to petty larceny. Some would say, wow, that's an improvement from the previous years in which the numbers were even higher. I say, no, that's not an improvement. It's just a result of the mayor's new math on what constitutes crime in our public schools. And that's not where the problem begins. This administration has changed the definition of crime in public schools, so fewer incidents are reported, thereby giving the public a false picture on how really dangerous many schools are. Parents beware, your children are not safe. And they will be even less safe if the city council's proposed legislation goes through. This legislation is filled with misinformation. For example, school safety agents do not carry weapons. And on the first day of school in two thousand eighteen, school safety agents confiscated nine knives, four box cutters, three razors, broke, broke up hairpick stabbing, and evacuated two schools that received bomb threats. That was only on day one. In fact, between two thousand eighteen and two thousand nineteen, two thousand seven hundred one weapons were confiscated by school safety agents. We have all read the headlines. An eight-year-old brings a loaded three-eighty caliber gun into a classroom with PS nine ninety-one. Eleven-year-old fifth-grade student brings a loaded semi-automatic into PS forty. A fourteen-year-old has a loaded Smith &amp; Wesson in his backpack. Sixteen-year-old student brings a loaded twenty-two caliber gun into John Adams High School. And how could we ever forget bullying, the bullying that led to a fatal stabbing of a fifteen-year-old student at Urban or Wild House Management? This was a tragedy that left one life lost, another ruined. Thirty parents immediately requested transfers of their children. And that's only fifty-five percent of the students and nineteen percent of the teachers saying that they felt safe in the schools and that school closed down. Over the years, school safety agents have been both hero and victim in countless ways, to name a few. The students' safety, saved the safety terrorists at Stuyvesant High School in Lower Manhattan. They saved students from a vicious stabbing by four rival gang members outside the PS thirty-five. It was school safety agents whose quick response to an ambulance alert in Staten Island that saved a youngster from being kidnapped. School safety agents are mentors of the Explorer Program and local students who are interested in careers in law enforcement. As, school safety agents are also driving force behind many community outreach programs where they believe their own time, where they give their own time and their own money for such worthy programs. Free backpack schools filled with notebooks, toys for tots, providing turkey dinners homeless families, knowing that one in ten students live in a shelter, with breast cancer being the highest among black women wearing pink throughout the month of October, providing free prom gowns and makeup. Advice for high school students, seniors, and school safety agents do these things and much more. But school safety agents have been victims of physical and verbal attacks by both students and parents. And some agents were even left with broken arms, broken fingers, torn eye sockets, and assortment of bruises. My concern here is twofold. For the five thousand school safety agents, seventy percent who are women, mostly black and Latinos, and many of them are single parents, local community whose livelihoods are in jeopardy, and one million schoolchildren who would be in danger. I can't understand the logic, which most, and much of the world is having chaos, at the time when racism and social justice have reached a boiling point in our country, at a time when so many of our government leaders, our healthcare professionals, and even next-door neighbors have failed us, disappointed us, and misled us, and betrayed us. Why do some people think the solution lies in knee-jerk, political correct reaction that ultimately harms the very population they want to protect? School safety agents are not part of the supposed pipeline to prison. It's quite the opposite. They do not create criminal, criminals. They help to protect the children. They wear a uniform as a beacon and sign of authority to let students know who to run to in time of need and potential troublemakers. Legislation to take school safety agents out of public schools is wrong. It's phony. It does not do what we need. I urge council members to talk to the parents and talk to students and talk to each and every stakeholder before making such a draft, drastic decision. And I also urge us to remember the Parkland Sandy Hook shootings. They are not some faraway places. They occurred right here in the United States. Thank you.
That concludes this testimony Chair. And after Chair, after your questions, Councilmember Rosenthal has questions for this panel.
Sure. I, I want to just begin by, you know, as a, as a former member of labor and a union delegate, I certainly appreciate CSA. I also appreciate your service, Mr. Floyd. And, you know, labor is, is really very important. And, and I think we're going to try to see clarity about how much they've engaged labor because I think there's concerns about labor has not been adequately engaged. I, I just, my experience, and I'm just adding my voice as a school stakeholder or someone who taught in the public school system and family came from the public school system. Students don't really respond to authority. They respond to relationship. students don't really respond to authority. They respond to relationships. And I think we don't do enough as a system to build positive, healthy relationships in our school communities. Um, and the school safety agents that I've worked with, and I want to say for the record, I worked with extraordinary school safety agents in my school. Um, um, they shared my opinion and views that we need more social emotional supports in our school. Um, they understood that they were not licensed to provide therapeutic services. They were not licensed to provide direct help. Um, and I, I just, I really think it's important because I, the word safety is, it's, it's critical, but it, it's, there's a holistic point to this. Um, and many times we're not meeting the needs of kids and things fall in a particular agency. And that's when I think we continue to fail them, quite frankly. A, a seven-year-old having a bad day is not an NYPD or really it should be a school safety issue. A child hungry and experiencing trauma and having an episode resulting from that trauma is, that's really not an NYPD or a school safety issue. Um, I, I could also share with you stats where we have seven hundred and fifty thousand students in our school system out of one million that qualify for free and reduced lunch, which means that three-quarters of a million kids in our school system live at or below the poverty line. If folks don't think that that has an impact on their social emotional well-being, then I, I don't think you really understand children and communities. Um, and I, I again repeat respectfully, those school shootings were painful, tragic. Uh, I think every single person that's ever worked in school or gone to, it, it hit all of us really hard, continues to hit us very hard. Those schools did have school resource officers and we appreciate their work. The shooters still got in. Educators died. Students died. Educators actually put their bodies to defend their kids. Um, when you unpack what happened after the tragedy to learn where the system fails, again, case after case of a person who exhibited signs of trauma and impacts of trauma, untreated trauma, no one intervened, no one stopped. There was inadequate supports to stop the tragedy from happening years before it actually happened. And I think that that's what we really need to have centered here is a holistic approach to school safety and school climate. But I, I do want to recognize again, just to go back, I completely appreciate and understand and support the critical role that labor must play at this table. Um, and that must happen. So I, I just would like to, if I could hear both from CSA and from Mr. Floyd, uh, represents the school safety agents. And again, Mr. Floyd, I want to note for the record um, that during this pandemic, I have gone around to many of our grab-and-go meal sites. Um, it is your members, school safety agents, it is school cleaners, school food workers that are keeping our schools open to our families, helping feed families, even putting their lives on the line um, in doing so. And I want, I want to publicly acknowledge and appreciate that service. Because when people say schools are physically, you know, there's virtual learning going on and some hybrid, but the physical buildings have always been open during the pandemic. We appreciate every single city worker who has put their lives on the line, including school leaders who go to their buildings, quite frankly, to make sure that things are, are operating, you know, well, we thank, we thank all of you for that. But if I, if I could just hear both from, from CSA and from Mr. Floyd, um, to what extent has the administration engaged you about this transition? What do you know about it? And, uh, are you satisfied with what's happening so far as far as the level of engagement and collaboration?
Thank you. And I want to say for the record, it was the city council who first didn't engage us in the discussion. You had these discussions without involving labor. I had to read about it in the newspaper. So it wasn't the administration. It was you and your colleagues, the city council, who didn't engage us. So, you know, you could look and point to somebody else, but look at yourselves at the city council. Because it's you and Corey Johnson who first came up with this idea in July and I had to read about it in the paper. And we weren't given the respect as other labor leaders would have been given and other unions would have been given on your thoughts on this process before you even got to this point. Secondly, as far as seven-year-olds being called, uh, handcuffed and the police being called, that's the school administrators. The police aren't responding because somebody didn't call them. They were called to that building. You didn't need to call the police. You're blaming the police for responding for, to something that you called them to respond to. So I, I listened to it and I keep hearing it. My heart goes out for, for you. But the schools should have been able to handle that problem without calling the police in there. They weren't involved in that situation. The next thing is we're, we're going on a two-year study. We haven't even been engaged in the study. You are all transferring them. It would, no one said that they would be transferred. It was supposed to be a two-year study to see the feasibility of moving school safety from the police department to the Department of Education. Where is that study? Where are your statistics? So I think we're all being disingenuous when you want to say, where is the administration? Because the agreement was supposed to be a study. I'm still waiting for that study to be conducted because no one has any data on if you can move the school safety division from the police department to the Department of Education. What is the fiscal impact? What is the operational impact? What is the feasibility? So you ask me, there's my answer.
Uh, Mr. Floyd, I, I would say respectfully. Um, I actually, uh, myself and my staff, uh, we, we met with you during the time when um, I was pushing for, uh, school leaders to have a chance to align vision with school safety agents with regards to evaluation. We met in your office and this is prior to, prior to the transfer discussion. But we met to discuss, um, my concern about the current structure where school safety agents don't report to principals and don't, and there's really no structure in place to even verify that there's a meeting in place to make sure that there is alignment on school climate and school vision. Um, and I remember hearing your concerns and I took time to, to hear them out. And we even discussed the issue where I shared with you what I had witnessed with regards to a disagreement between, uh, the administration and school safety about safe passageways during dismissal. You had mentioned about the safety issues that your members face outside and I heard you respectfully. Um, I, I have heard, um, but I fundamentally believe and, and I respect everyone's, you know, personal views on this. But I believe that a school building is run by a school leader. Um, that is my fundamental belief. And because there has been a gray area in this for years to the fact that they had to make an MOU speaks to this gray area. And respectfully, it was really, um, I think insulting to the institution that after we got the MOU amended between NYPD and DOE to have school leaders, to have a chance to sit down with school safety agents at the start of the school year to say, let's find a way to build a, a shared vision of what positive, safe, supportive school climate looks like. So we could see if that's going to be followed consistently during the course of the school year. They never did it. The NYPD and DOE, they never did it. And if you speak to them privately, they point fingers at each other. And as I shared before, Mr. Floyd, principals, in my, in my, in my view, should have a chance to sit down with safety agents to say, this is what I think, and I want to hear from you as well, as far as safety agents collaborating, what does safety and positive school climate look like? Um, I have heard more than once that school safety agents and principals sometimes don't see eye to eye. And I think during the meeting we had together, you had mentioned that there are transfers at times during the course of the school year because of those disagreements. I heard from principals who tell me that they don't support, and I don't support firing school safety agents, but they said to me, how can I build a sense, sense of community if they keep transferring the safety agent every two, three months? And, and I've heard that from a number of school principals that how do I build a sense of community if, if, if it's a new face, a new name every other month? So this is, you know, this is a part of the challenges that we have faced in terms of getting answers, in terms of just getting basic information. Uh, but I, 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 I hear you and I, I, I respect your, your opinions and your views, Mr. Floyd. If I can now turn to please, CSA.
For, for one thing, I want to clear up something.
Yes.
Your meeting with me was the introduction meeting. It was not to discuss policy. In that meeting, we did discuss policy. So I don't want anybody on this call to think that you and I met over policy because we didn't. We didn't know each other. That was our first and only meeting. So I think it's disingenuous for you to outline that as that was a step toward where we are today.
Mr. Floyd, I, I agree with you as an introductory meeting, but at the meeting, mostly policy was discussed.
Stop right there because it wasn't a policy meeting. Because in a policy meeting, you call me up, you say, we're going to discuss policy. It's disingenuous for you to use an introduction meeting for your own purposes of moving forward. And I, I reiterate, we were not conferred with.
I, I, I will respectfully just disagree on the, that you are disappointed about my view about evaluation of school safety agents.
Paper. I wasn't disappointed. And you read my views in the paper. It was no mystery to me where you stood. But you're not going to tell anybody we had a policy meeting when we didn't.
We discussed policy at the meeting, Mr. Floyd.
Meeting. This is the official policy meeting.
Mr. Floyd, I, I respect your views. I want to be, I want to be respectful here. Um, but I also.
I want the record to be straight because I'm not going to sit here in silence and listen to disinformation and misinformation. And my silence would be agreeing with it. And I'm not going to do that.
And, and we have an honest disagreement. And that's, that's, that's what I'm saying. I, I, I didn't come there to drink coffee. I went there to discuss students and, and the issues that, that I shared with you.
For a meeting, an introduction meeting. Whether you drank coffee or not, it's not up to me. If you said, I want to discuss policy with you, then that's what the meeting would have been about. So I want to preference, the meeting was an introduction meeting that you asked for.
I, I think reps, I, I want to move on. I want to hear from CSA, uh, to, to extend of collaboration information. Please, thanks.
Hello, thank you. Um, as far as collaborating with CSA, that did not happen. We were not informed of even when the plan started, nor we were, nor were we informed of the planning process. That's why I was, um, asking those various questions.
Thank you very much. And CSA, can you just speak to some of the, some of the criticism or concerns about, uh, moving school safety division over to DOE and reimagining? There were some folks who shared the opinion and views that somehow it, it went, going back to the, to the quote-unquote bad days of the BOE, even though there is no more Board of Education. It's now the Department of Education. It's an entirely different structure now. There's no more school boards that, that make hiring decisions. It's now centralized by, by DOE. Can you respond to those concerns that some folks feel their principals are not best suited to, um, evaluate or oversee school safety?
Um, it, it's not a matter of if we feel that we, uh, can evaluate or, um, supervise, uh, school safety, the, the, we just want to know what the role of the principal, uh, in this process because we have not heard anything. So we want to know what would be the role of the principal.
And can you just speak to me from your angle point from CSA? Have, um, have during your experience and during your time in tenure, were there moments when transfers had to be made or, and I saw that you were kind of nodding in agreement when I mentioned that sometimes there are transfers so often that it's hard to build a sense of community. Can you speak to the level of turnover or transfers that happens during the course of the year and what that means for a principal?
Well, um, I, I will definitely speak to, as I was a former principal, to if a safety agent is transferred or when you come into the building that morning, they are redeployed somewhere else. That definitely affects the whole operational process during the day. Uh, you need to make sure. And, and you know, as we look to, um, safety agent, I personally, from my experience with safety agents, they were a part of our community, right? You know, so we definitely feel that when they come in, they are the individuals that when individuals come into the building, they first see them. They're the ones that look at your identification to make sure that the school is safe. So when I look at safety agents, I look at them as safeguarding the school, not policing children.
Right. Uh, and, and you mentioned that when, if there was a change in turnover, it impacted operations for you. Is that correct?
Yes, it does. It does. Uh, because you definitely want to have someone at the desk who have the credentials to really safeguard the school.
And did you ever get reasons why they transfer them out of your school?
Well, as a, as a principal, there were times that they were redeployed to another school because they didn't have enough, um, agents at that particular school or there's something that came up. And, um, and then we always will say, well, what about our school? We feel that we need someone at our school also.
And did you, uh, we don't know if you heard my testimony where I had witnessed a disagreement between my school administration and school safety agents with regards to safe passageway. Have you heard of these types of disagreements on policy in, in a school, what that means for kids?
Uh, I, to tell you the truth, I've been at CSA for now. I ju, I just turned four years old at CSA. And prior to that, I don't, I mean, there's definitely there are times that there are disagreements, but I haven't really heard of a, like a policy, uh, discussion or, or, um, intense discussion, um, concerning children. You know, in, in, in my time being a principal, working with the safety agents, there may be times that we discuss where safety agent is going to be at this particular exits and so forth. And we meet with the level three to discuss various things. But as far as, um, having, I didn't experience that.
Thank you very much. Thanks for your testimony today. I'll turn over to my colleagues for further questions.
Yes, if we could please unmute Councilmember Rosenthal. She has some questions.
Thank you so much. Thank you. And if there's noise, background noise, I apologize. I just ducked in somewhere, um, in order to ask these questions. First of all, I, I want to let both union leaders know how much I respect them and appreciate the work they do on behalf of the workers. And, uh, I guess I'm going to join in the chorus of my colleagues, uh, to say that of course I've visited all the schools in my district and of course the school safety agents are lovely and I always feel warmly welcomed. So, you know, I, I, this is not a discussion about the individuals who are school safety officers. And I want to make that clear. I mean, I'm very proud of the fact that one of the school safety offer, officers in my district won the Sloan Public Servant Award. And I understand why. She is an extraordinary public servant. You know, this is not about, um, uh, Mr. Floyd, I, I just want you to know how much I appreciate. And actually, I was the one in asking questions to the administration about what your involvement in the process has been because you have to be involved in this. We're talking about the workers in your union. So, you know, my hope would be that you are engaged in this and a part of the discussion because you bring the experiences of your workers. You bring great value to the discussion. What I would argue for the people who are saying, my goodness, guns come into the schools and knives and if our school safety agents weren't there, these wouldn't have been caught. I think what people, I, I, I just don't, you know, after the Parkland shooting, there was a call for, you know, principals having guns, school safety agents having guns, lockdowns. You know, I think that's the exact opposite response. I had the exact opposite response. The response I had was, let's have some honest conversations with our kids about why this happens and what led up to, uh, the shooter feeling a need to do that. Because as, I mean, Chair Trigger, again, um, I think just nailed it when he said, that's why we need comprehensive gun reform. Because as, I mean, Chair Trager again, I think just nailed it when he said, that's why we need comprehensive gun reform. Right? But this is something similar to comprehensive gun reform. What we're saying is if our model was not a model that had the word, like, or let me say it differently, we have to change the, change the entire dynamic so that my school safety agent and the one that Councilmember Gredencheck mentioned, who brought out clothes for the students, that those individuals are lauded for those traits. And those are some of the traits that would be great to have in a school as somebody who greets children when they walk in the door. I mean, that's not a joke. You know, my principals who stand outside and greet children on the first day of school and then at least once a month thereafter are sending a message of respect. And I think we have to have room in our can that having restorative justice might have been a better response for the young man who felt the need to bring a knife to school because he was being relentlessly bullied by someone. My goodness, if we had had social workers, guidance counselors in the school that were sufficient to know those young men, there would have been no razor brought into the school. Right? Because when we address anyone's problems head on, that's how we averted. And the people who are qualified to do that are social workers, right? So, so I just, I, I want to, I want to let, I, I just want to make it clear. My part anyway, is that this has nothing to do with Mr. Floyd, with your leadership. I think you're, you know, you are representing your union as best you can and, and same to CSA. The important thing is that your voices be part of the discussion. But the outcome might be very, very different. It might look very different. It may look like having people there who don't wear blue. People there who, who come with a different premise. Frankly, much of the premise that as everyone points out, you know, 80% of the school safety agents are brown and black women. My goodness, I'm sure their hearts are full for these students. So let's not set them up to fail, right? Because if the system says, go to your patrol book in order to get guidance about a situation from the get-go, we're setting them up to fail. So I guess that's my two cents. I guess there wasn't a question in there, although if either union leader would like to respond, I'm of course interested in what you have to say. Thank you. Sure.
One, why is everybody concerned about the union being involved when you weren't concerned when you cooked up this scheme of restorative justice? You didn't involve us. You made your announcement.
Right. I hear you and that's horrible. Full stop. That's horrible. You're right.
Wait, wait. It was the city council who did that.
Yeah, no, you're right.
That young man who stabbed that child to death did go to the authorities of the school and was ignored for three weeks. Why do we know this? His mother said that. So that process could have been stopped if someone from the school would have stepped in on that child's behalf.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
It failed. Not because of school safety, not because of anything. He was ignored and I feel horrible for him. There's a death. There was another child who was maimed and now there's one in jail. Why? Because that child was ignored, not because there wasn't a guidance counselor, because the teachers, the principals, assistant principals, no one came to that child's defense. He was bullied. And he responded the only way he thought he had to. He killed his bullier and his attacker. That's what happened there.
So let, let's be clear that.
I, I mean, if I can, well, please, I, I don't, I don't want to lay blame on anyone's feet.
Thank you.
So, so that's not what's going on here. I didn't ask you, why did the knife get through? That, that I did not ask you that. What I said was exactly what you just said, which is had the boy gotten the attention he needed. Right? Which is means integrating restorative justice into the workings of a school under the leadership of a principal. Perhaps there would have been a better outcome. And sir, honestly, I don't speak for the council. I'm just one member. But from me to you, I think you're, it's fair, I think personally, it's fair for you to be saying and upset about not being consulted, but I would also say, you know, I mean, I've been slighted every one, every day of my seven years in the council. That's part of leadership. You get slighted and the question is, how do you deal with it? How do you move forward? That can't be the end of the discussion. We're at, you know, so, so today's day one and we want to have a constructive conversation. But I, I just want you to know, I appreciate what you said.
And now you want me to engage to help you get this plan instead of engaging me from the beginning, right?
Sir, I'm not, I'm.
Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, my bad. I, I shouldn't have said anything because I have no role in this, so I don't, I shouldn't open my mouth. I'm just sharing with you personally, as somebody who is empathic, that I see where you're coming from. That's all, sir.
Councilmember Rosenthal, with all due respect, you are a duly elected official. You work for the city council, were a colloquial branch of government with the administration. You have constituents that elected you more than once. You have every right to share your thoughts and words and experiences. No one should silence you or minimize you. I think CSA wanted to say a few words. Please, CSA.
Yes, I just wanted to say that before we say, I'm just going back to the incident that happened. Before we say that administrations, teachers and everyone ignored someone. The people are not here to defend themselves, so we cannot say that. And we saw that it was just something that we felt very saddened by this incident, right? But to say, well, this one did it, that one did, that's not a good place to start.
Thank you. I'm done. Thank you, Chair Trager.
Yeah, and I wanted just to build on what the CSA just said. When there are neighborhoods in New York City that are experiencing crime, that are experiencing gun violence, does anyone go out and say, you know, let's shut down the police precinct because they're not doing their job? No, they say, how can we address the roots of the violence? How do we make sure that it doesn't happen in the first place? And so what we're sharing here is that there were systems that were inadequate to begin with, because let me repeat some data for folks. We have 1 million kids in our school system. Three quarters of a million of them live at the poverty line. We have over 110,000 students who live in temporary housing. We have over 200,000 kids with IEPs, over 130,000 plus students, multilingual learners, kids who I met with prior to the pandemic. I'll never forget in Councilmember Drums District in Queens, who were scared to go to school because they were afraid of encountering an authority figure, because they, they were afraid of compromising their family's immigration status. And that impacted their attendance in the school. Those kids told that to me to my face, to my face. So when we discuss safety, children were afraid to go to their own neighborhood school because they were afraid that somehow that would lead to a deportation of their family. That's real. Don't minimize them. That's real. And they missed school. And, and their grades suffered, that their lives were impacted. And you know what turned that school around? Not that it's finished as far as the turnaround. When they got community school money and 100% of their fair student funding money and they were able to hire a bilingual social worker that speaks Spanish and English. And the first thing she did was she visited the kids in their home to say, I'm going to make sure that you're safe. I'm going to make sure that you're okay. No one's going to hurt you and your family. They then went to school, attendance picked up. The school was removed from renewal and became a rye school. So folks, let's have a real comprehensive conversation about the safety needs of our children. Yes, there's a role, there's an important role for school safety and I'm not minimizing it because I value and I appreciate them, but it's not the entire role. Our kids are suffering from many crises during the course of their lives. I want to turn next to any other Councilmember Gredencheck, I think is next to ask questions.
Yes, if we could unmute Councilmember Gredencheck, please.
Well, I, that was something and I, I appreciate, I, I appreciate the discourse, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chairman. I, I just want to, I want to thank Ms. Sinclair and Mr. Floyd. The chair knows and we've had many personal discussions about the state of our schools. And I share his desire, which I know is sincere and heartfelt for every single one of the children in our schools. And I think he's made quite clear today that there are many aspects to safety. And that children need places to turn to, especially at school because they spend most of their lives at school. And I have mostly fond memories of my New York City public school education. It was interesting, I had a discussion some time back with this Chancellor of CUNY, who was affectionately known to us as Phelo. And he was president of Queens College at the time, which my son just graduated and I attended in for a while. And one of the problems he said to me is that young people don't go for counseling. And that really is something that we have to work on. I do want to say to both of you who, I want to thank you for being here today. And there's no question in this city, I live in a union household. My wife is a member of NICE. She's a professor at Nassau Community College. And the unions must be at the table. And if they haven't been, then that is certainly a mistake that I am certain our chair and the leadership of the council will work to rectify. I take you, and I know, Ms. Sinclair, we have been in several meetings and I have enjoyed a very fine relationship with all your members in my district. And I have many of your retirees residing in my district. And Mr. Floyd, as I said before, the professionalism of your members, it goes without saying as far as I'm concerned, and we've heard that from other members here today. And everybody, everybody has a role to play in this school system. So that's really what I wanted to say. I wanted to thank you. I can't thank each and every one of your members. I, I have been visiting my schools virtually, as I said before, but I haven't been able to see my school safety officers and I enjoy them very much. And I, I know, as I said before, I have made approximately 500 school visits. And I know they don't care that I'm the councilman. They like me personally, but every time I have to show my ID and that is important. And that is where it starts. Where it ends, we have work to do, obviously. So that's all I wanted to say, Mr. Chair. And I know the day has been long and we have a lot more people set to testify. And I want to thank all of you for your professionalism and for being here today because ultimately this is not about us. It's about the children of New York City. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember.
All right. Thank you. The next panel that we will hear will be Oliver Cannell, Mary Hemmings, Muscula, Horisaius, Isha Taylor. Following that panel will be Yasmin Aquino, Mam Fatu Dukare, Shadavia Laney Burnett, Merrill Massum and Miriam Chardot. So we will start with Oliver Cannell.
Good afternoon. My name is Oliver Cannell. I'm a restorative justice coordinator at MS 839 in District 15 in Brooklyn and a member of Teachers Unite. I'm here today to urge the city council to reject intro 2211, a bill that would codify the transfer of the NYPD School Division to the DOE. For the last five years, I've had the privilege of working to build a restorative program at a young middle school. Our school was an early member of the diversity and admissions pilot and we now have a district-wide diversity plan. I bring this perspective knowing that we are building momentum to dismantle racist exclusionary practices and fully integrate our schools. In order for that to work, we need to make a meaningful culture shift and this bill is not it. The proposal to transfer and retrain all existing SSAs entirely ignores the fact that the culture of policing in schools is entrenched and damaging, specifically to black and brown young people. We don't need police by another name. What we need is investment in the supportive staff positions that our students demand. Let me tell you about my colleagues, black and brown New Yorkers who graduated from our public schools, who are dedicated to our school's restorative mission and to our young people's health and wellbeing. They are paraprofessionals, youth advocates, guidance interns. They form meaningful relationships with our most vulnerable students. They go above and beyond regularly to hold circles, follow through on accountability processes and show our young people love, making the restorative justice program work. They are also among the most poorly paid staff members at our school. They deserve better. In contrast, to quote a student, interacting with school safety agents makes them feel as if they have done something wrong. When all of these people I referenced earlier, in addition to our one guidance counselor, feel as overwhelmed and undercompensated as they do, even in pre-pandemic times, how can we contemplate such a superficial yet expensive move? I'm asking you to truly divest from police in schools and invest in young people. It's the only way to build the schools that our young people and their families deserve and demand.
Thank you. Not seeing Mary Hemmings. Next, we will go to Muscula.
Hi, my name is Muscula Horisaiatus. I'm a teacher at LaGuardia High School. I'm working with Teachers Unite, the organization of New York City Public School Educators, working to dismantle the school-to-prison pipeline. I'm here to urge council members to reject intro 2211. We're calling for New York City Public Schools to divest from policing and practices of student control and invest in quality education that respects the dignity of all students and pursues restorative approaches to conflict and harm. As a teacher, I've seen my students struggling with mental health issues. We have one full-time social worker for almost 3,000 students. However, we have many more school safety agents. We need more counselors and social workers to support our students. We don't need police by any other name. We're calling for funding to hire black and brown New Yorkers into jobs that support young people's social, emotional, mental health. At LaGuardia, I've seen how physicians, like restorative justice counselors, paraprofessionals, youth advocates, community outreach coordinators, parent coordinators and more can support students. We used to have students help out at our attendance office and be paid for their work, but we lost that funding. The attendance office is one of the places in the school where black and brown adults are leaders. It is a place for students to work together, support each other and receive support from adults. Mariana, one of my students who was struggling academically, found the attendance office to be a place that supported her in her academics and her personal life. We need more investment in places like this. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I just have to say very quickly, you are a highly effective educator because I know many folks would have probably lost their train of thought with the, you have a beautiful cat with you, but I just wanted to say that is, that is, that's skill and that's work. And thank you for your testimony today. Thank you so much.
Next, we hear from Isha Taylor.
Starting time.
Hello, Chair Trager, NYC Councilmembers, NYC School Safety Leaders, Deputy Chancellor LaShawn Robinson, Kiana Reed and other community leaders and advocates. My name is Aisha Taylor and I have the opportunity to serve as a council member on the Community Education Council for District 10 in the Bronx. I advocate in support of our 62 schools and over 55,000 students. I also serve as a member of the Education Council Consortium which unites districts and citywide education leaders across all 32 NYC school districts. I'm also here in collaboration and standing with the Teachers United to dismantle the school-to-prison pipeline. As a CEC member, I advocate for over nine schools in my district. And I would like to encourage the council members to reject intro 2211. I would like to recommend instead that our schools be fully funded, that we reallocate the $451 million annually spent on police to hiring more social workers, school nurses and adequately train all DOE staff from custodial engineers to the principal. It is time that we stop only speaking the language. It is time that we stop playing pass the blame and point the finger. Our students and the community that serves them deserve action, accountability. Our students and the community that serves them, um, deserve action, accountability, and implementation, not just empty promises and feel-good policies. I would also like to highlight the school safety agents who are dedicated to meeting the needs of students and families. School safety agents are not the problem, the system that does not bridge the gap and create processes that holistically and strategically, um, address the needs of our individual school communities are the problems. It's time that we stop using the pandemic as a crutch, it's time that we stop declaring war on our students and their families. If COVID nineteen hasn't taught us anything, we should learn that we need a new normal. We are tired of the empty promises without actual implementation. I am tired of scripted answers. The issue is not the school safety agents and I want to say that again because we keep bringing them up. But we need to address the lack of training, the lack of investment. Everyone should be trained in conflict resolution, mental health first aid, social emotional coping skills, and alternative holistic health methods. Transferring school policy to another department is like putting a Band-Aid on an open, uh, uh, open wound. It's time for action, it's time that we stop addressing the symptoms and dismantle the root cause. It's time that we fully fund our schools and see our students as assets and not statistics. We heard the students speak loud, clear, and unapologetically about what they need. Students have demanded investment that further their development. I am retired combat Air Force veteran and I'm tired of feeling like I'm sitting by allowing domestic terrorism to take place by our government on our students and our communities. New York City Council members, I would like to ask that you connect with your respective community education councils within your districts and get a real account of what's happening and support your fellow council members and constituents. Thank you so much for your time today.
Uh, that concludes this panel, Councilmember Trager, I will turn it to you if you have any questions.
Just want to say thank you to our, our CECs, uh, parents and education stakeholders, our educators. Um, you are at the front lines of this very much as well, I mean, we're all about the kids here and, uh, and our students. Um, but certainly we must absolutely have parents, educators at the table. Um, and, uh, as you see, we've already had quite a bit of spirited conversations and I'm gonna do the best that I can to always center this about the students and not just a transfer, but reimagining these positions and investing in greater social emotional supports for our kids because we are failing to do that at this time, thank you.
Thank you to this panel. Next, we are going to call Yasmin Aquino, Mam Fatu Dukare, Shadavia Laney Burnett, Merrill Massum, and Miriam Chardot. The panel after this one will be Jasmine Del Valle, Dawn Yuster, Quadira Coles, and Smithe Vargese. If we could please unmute Yasmin Aquino.
My name is Yasmin, I am seventeen years old. My pronouns are she/her, I'm a high school senior from Brooklyn and I'm a youth ambassador at Bushwick Campus. I'm here today because young people have been fighting for police-free schools and many, and for many years, and have been ignored or pushed to the side. And today we are here to say it's time to listen to the youth leaders. During my time in high school, I've witnessed students experience oppressive moments from school safety. One morning, there was a group of English-language learners being told to speak English. This happened inside our school, a place where we're supposed to feel safe. At that moment, none of us did. I felt extremely uncomfortable. The NYPD trains the school safety agents that have caused many of my classmates harm. It's an illusion to think that transferring the SSAs under the supervision of the Department of Education is the solution we need and it is not. We are here for immediate removal of police officers for our schools, changing the title or supervision of these workers does not restore or change what has happened in our school environment. I do not want us to invest our limit funds in something that brings hurt, anxiety, and hate into a place where we're supposed to learn, grow, and be supported. At the school, I attended, and safety would follow us around during our free period. It made me feel like I was doing something bad as if I was a problem. What they were doing was criminalizing youth behavior. There's no reason we should have SSAs in our schools. It insists fear in our school community. Every day during scanning, students would get patted down and our belongings are searched carefully. It was noticeable how students were portrayed in a negative light. They treated some students differently, especially when they selected only specific students to search and pat down. I feel like the school's safety are not there for our safety. If anything, they make us feel unwelcome. I want to make it clear, the efforts to retrain cops will not address harm and has been caused in our school. Our city cannot pretend that taking off a uniform and adding training will address the trauma that students have experienced. We need to prioritize, prioritize school, school, social, emotional, and mental health professionals and create a safe and supported school climate beyond police. Um, police create, don't create safety, they respond and punish. Funding or support and create safety, si- and cares create safety. To be clear, I'm here asking you to listen to the youth and vote no on intro twenty-two eleven, thank you.
Thank you. And next we'll hear from Mam Fato.
Hi, my name is Mam Fato. Police reform is divesting money from NYPD and investing in things that make our community better. And to explicitly remove both police and policing culture from school. Failure to do so is not at all what our community has demanded. Our city continues to fail our youth. Today, New York City is far from where it needs to be to ensure student success as our school faces troubling reality. NYC has, NYC has the most segregated school in, school system in America. According to the New York City Council, our public school, uh, in our public school, seven-four-point-six percent of Black and Latinx students attend a school with less than ten percent white students. Additionally, thirty-four-point-three of white students attend a school with more than fifty percent white students. School segregation leads to chronic, the underfunding of school in New York City, New York State, which has negatively and disparate impact for Black, Latinx, and low-income students, given subsequent, subsequent resource disparities. Only seven-seven-point-three percent of the one-point-one-million children in the DOE system will graduate on time. And only fifty-five percent of New York, New York City High School graduate with graduate college ready. One in ten NYC public school student is houseless. Additionally, in a nation with, in which forty-million students are in school with police but no guardian counselor, no nurse, no psychologist, or social worker. New York City has more school safety agents than any other school district in the US. The presence of police in our school has this pop, has negatively impacted students who are low-income, Black, and Latinx, who are more likely to be subject of ex- ex- school, execute, executionary discipline and police response at school than their white peers. Everyone in the city council, however, has the power to shift this. Beginning with meaningful shifting fund from the police, reforming their responsibility and reinvesting in our community. Our vision for education in New York City includes safe, resourceive, healing environment where all students have the opportunity to learn and grow. To meet this goal, we must pursue policies that value and respect the dignity of students, caregivers, and their communities. This requires, this requires providing school equability resources, adopting a cultural responsive curriculum, providing, preventing trauma, repairing harm, and promoting resourceive practice. To do this, we at the Brotherhood and Sisters Soul alongside a number of other youth and organize, organization and organizers demand structural shift. Police-free school and end-to-all structure that systematically pulls students out of class as a, as part of the policing culture. Fully, fully funding our school as, as to center student success and social emotional support. Expanding and transforming youth civil power, cultural shift. Educators center trauma-informed project, approach. City leaders re-imagine, fund staff meaningful students and community-led safe structures. School thus center healing, expanding evidence-based training for school terms as the element that end, that criminalize marginalized students. Schools institutionalize and fund comprehensive sex education in school, cultural responsive education and civil education. Equitable distribution of technology resource to all school, language assistance for family and students. Equitable success for students, family with disability or neurodivergent. All you deserve is safe, high-quality, holistic, and positively transformative educational experience. If we believe in equity, we want to create, and we want to create feature for all New Yorkers deserve, we must build within our school system of accountability, resourceive justice, behavioral management that does not include the NYPD. We must close the one, the, we must close the billion-dollar funding gap that exists for our schools so that we can begin to address the systematized oppression our students face as a result of legacy of ignore, ignoring the needs of Black, Brown, and low-income community. We must disconstruct the school-to-prison pipeline and broken window policy and truly decriminalize low-level offenses that lead our schools to have negative contacts with the state and, and the carceral system. We must do it now, thank you.
Thank you. And next we will hear from Shadavia Laney Burnett, if we could please unmute her.
Starting time.
Bear with us just one moment. Just having one technical difficulty, Shadavia, just give us a moment, please, bear with us. Okay, there we go.
I'm a senior at Humanities and Arts High School and a training manager and leader at New York Civil Liberties Union Teens Activist Project. We're attacked. I hear the call for more trainings, but what great faith do we have in school safety when time and time again they prove that they cannot live up to their name? They make us feel the exact opposite of safety. Their actions continue to get excused and we pay the penalty, the penalty when it should be the other way around. Why are we putting more money into the very thing that sets us as, us as youth back? Years down in the line, when my seven-year-old brother is in junior high or high school, we'll be dealing with the same thing. Fighting to, fighting to fix the same situation, but it will never get fixed because students like me feel like we're talking to a wall. I hear you wanting to want change that will benefit us for years while we've been telling us, while we've been telling you, but it seems like it's going through one, in one ear throughout the other. This is literally a life-or-death situation for a lot of students, especially Black and Brown, students of Black and Brown color. My people are getting thrown into the school-to-prison pipeline while that same energy can be put into counselors, therapists, and social workers in our schools. Are you actually listening to anything that we're saying? I go to a school of four hundred students with two guidance counselors and two therapists. How are students supposed to feel heard when they're heard and taken care of? When they're, when they can't get a hold of the very people that are supposed to help us? We're here today talking about transferring cops from one division to another, wasting more money towards police rather than investing in actual help that we need, especially in this pandemic. We have to get the answers, no, we have the answer actually. Get police out of our schools and shift funding towards these supports. Every day, schools feel more and more like a prison. What will you actually do to change that?
Thank you. And next we will hear from Merrill Massum.
Starting time.
Hi, my name is Merrill Moshu, I'm a high school student with teens take charge and dignity in schools. This school safety bill into two-two-one-one will threaten the progress that we've made, we've, we activists have made, and the students that we promised that their lives would be better. This wor- this bill would threaten the work of students like me who trusted the city council after we worked hard to achieve police-free schools. This bill is policing by another name. Policing by another name is still policing. And we know who is more likely to get policed. We know that these solutions never actually seem to fix the problem of student conflict. Although student, school safety agents are mostly women of color, especially Black and Latinx women, we want women of color to have jobs that aren't punitive. I'd like to make another point. Mr. Trager talked about the trauma that students go through every day. In twenty-seventeen, there was a terrorist attack right outside my school. Seeing a man being shot by a gun, that feeling of running for your life to go, to get away from the terrorist attack. This is what my classmates had to deal with, like many students in today's age. Years later, although that memory has not yet been erased, our overworked guidance counselors still do not have time for us. For many students, including myself, the guidance counselors are our only mental health that we, uh, resource that we have access to because of the stigma mental health carries in communities of color and the barrier of cost to low-income families. Might I mention that low-income people of color are the majority of New York City students? I want a school system that prioritizes my social emotional needs, not criminalizes students like me. And we can achieve that, starting with scrapping into two-two-one-one.
Thank you. And, uh, the last person is not on right now, Councilmember Trager, so that concludes testimony for this panel.
Just want to thank the students again, this is about you, we must hear you. Um, and we have, we have more work to do. Uh, but I really appreciate you, uh, being here and I've seen some of the students here, previous hearings before, thank you for continuing to speak up. Not just on behalf of yourself, on behalf of your peers as well. It takes courage for students, young people, to really speak up. This is your government, this is your, this is the people's, I guess, virtual chamber, people's house, and we appreciate you so much, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. The next panel that we are going to call will be Dawn Yuster, Advocates for Children, Quadira Coles, Girls for Gender Equity, and Smithe Vargese, Alliance for Quality Education. Following this panel, we will call a Teachers Unite panel, Bella Week, Caitlin Delphin, Madeline Borelli, Natalia Forman, and Jay Julio. We will first start with, uh, Dawn Yuster from Advocates for Children.
Thank you, good afternoon. My name is Dawn Euster and I am the Director of Advocates for Children of New York School Justice Project. Advocates for Children has worked to ensure high-quality education for New York, New York students who face barriers to academic success for nor- nearly fifty years. AFC is a proud member of Dignity in Schools, New York. We are here today to testify in support of intro number twenty-one-eight-eight, regulating the NYPD's response to students in emotional crisis within public schools and are grateful to Councilmember Ayala for leading the effort on this critical bill. We also testify to express concern about intro twenty-two-eleven, regulating the transfer of the School Safety Division from the NYPD to the Department of Education. Earlier this year, many of us watched in horror and outrage video footage of a nine-year-old girl in Rochester who was brutally handcuffed and pepper sprayed by the police. The video made it patently clear that the officer's actions were extreme and unacceptable, traumatizing a young child, her family, and the entire community. While we would like to believe incidents like this are rare, would not happen to our children, and would not happen at school, NYPD data and AFC's experiences working on the ground with families indicate that each year, hundreds of students in emotional crisis are handcuffed by police in New York City public schools. Over the past four school years, NYPD officers, including school safety agents and precinct officers, intervened in twelve-thousand fifty- intervened in 12,050 incidents of students in emotional crisis who were removed from class and transported to the hospital when medically unnecessary. Nearly half of those incidents involve children between four and 12. Intro 2188 is a really critical step. In addition to the COVID-19 pandemic, has created an exacerbated social-emotional challenges for all members of the school community with trauma most
inspired.
People. I just want to add very briefly, while we strongly support Intro 2188, we have been calling on the city to shift funding from the NYPD to support students and therefore want to be really advocating for additional funding to be allocated to train law enforcement officers to respond to students in emotional crisis, including the trust, the training specified in the bill. And also regarding our concerns for Intro 2211, we, while we support the bill's removal of all NYPD officers from, from schools and the trans, you know, and, but we are very concerned about the mere transfer of the agents from the NYPD to the DOE. And we're very concerned that the bill doesn't reflect the articulated mission of our community partners, you know, to actually, you know, remove police from schools. And so we stand with Dignity in Schools Campaign and other allies for calling for school safety to be transformed and not merely merely transferred to the city, to the DOE. The city must really redesign the role of school safety officers and reallocate NYPD funding to resources and positions to support students directly. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak with you. We look forward to working with you to move forward 2188, reimagine the school safety role, reallocate NYPD funding to invest in the critical mental health needs of our students. I'd be happy to answer questions. Thank you so much for letting me go over slightly.
Thank you. And next we'll hear from Quadira Coles from Girls for Gender Equity.
Good afternoon, members and staff of the
Starting time.
My name is Quadira Coles, and I'm the Policy Manager at Girls for Gender Equity. We are offering testimony today to talk about restoring safety and dignity in our schools. We remain consistent in our demands that the city council and the mayor must prioritize police-free schools and invest in our students' education with services programs to support that address the inequities that were laid bare by the pandemic and transition, and transition to remote learning. The emotional and mental well-being of our returning students, school climate and healing-driven transition should be the city's primary priorities. The proposed legislation by the council further entrenches policing in schools instead of meeting the needs of school communities. We all have the opportunity, you all have the opportunity through the budget negotiation process to eradicate violence at the hands of law enforcement and reinvest the money once spent on policing to transform our schools in a direction of healing and support. We strongly oppose Intro 2211, which codifies the School Safety Division within the DOE with the retention of 5,250 former policing staff. This piece of legislation also maintains discretion to any NYPD employee who reasonably believes action to be necessary to address an imminent risk to the public safety or property. Our police-free schools demand includes the total end of police access to school buildings. Intro 2211 does nothing to acknowledge schools' need for resources or otherwise resolved to invest to support schools in ways that sets police-free schools up for success. We are grappling with the long legacy of police, school police violence. Proposing that agents in the division under the DOE do not have to wear uniforms and materials of the NYPD is nothing more than a symbolic gesture rather than an attempt to address the legacy of school policing. Refusing to dismantle the division means the school police complicity and policing culture will continue to be an interruption to young people's education. By blanket transferring periodic training, we are leaving a huge gap for young people to suffer in the meantime, while we all wait for the culture of policing to shift. Outsourced school safety personnel is not a remedy to conflict. It is not the transformative investment that we are demanding in order to meet the needs of school communities. Intro 22, 2211 potentially commits an unknowable or unspecified massive funding to training former police and abstract matters like equity or how to honor the dignity and humanity of students instead of investing in a whole-school approach to accountability and restorative justice. You cannot train people into honoring and humanity and dignity of students. Our demand is to disband the School Safety Division, not transfer. This transition require an OPEC and potentially boundless financial commitment that could otherwise go to building something that more closely mirrors what we need rather than what is convenient or the lowest possible lift. These bills are skewed towards priorities of the law enforcement instead of new big sustained investments in the whole-school community. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. And next we'll hear from Smita Vargese.
Starting time.
Bear with us just one moment.
Good afternoon. So my name is Smitha Vargese. I'm the New York City Campaign Coordinator for the Alliance for Quality Education, and AQE is also a member of DSC. I just want to quickly say I'm so disappointed in the tone-deaf remarks made particularly by Councilmember Holden and Councilmember Grotenschik, who I'm a constituent of. It's just so alarming how there are still members of the city council who are extremely ignorant of their privilege and don't see how black and brown students have a very different interaction with school safety agents in schools. Now, to get straight to the point, New Yorkers like myself and members of the organizations that make up DSC who have attended the New York City Public School System from kindergarten to cuny are calling for the full removal of cops from our schools. Intro 2211 would solidify the council's poor NYPD to DOE transfer decision from last year. The bill does nothing to address what the city truly needs, a secure plan to transition police out of schools. AQE rejects this bill. However, we do support the spirit of Intro 2188, and we agree with most of the language. But the bill calls for additional training for police and safety agents, which we don't support. The bill mandates that clinical and support staff should be the primary support for young people in crisis. However, there is no significant funding to support this mandate. We believe that money should be invested in DOE positions that care for and support young people in their most vulnerable moments rather than throwing more, more money and more trainings for cops. So AQE supports Intro 2188 with our suggested provisions. None of these bills, though, address the main and underlying problem, which is police in our schools. The New York City Council must be bold and introduce progressive bills that will head-on tackle the school-to-prison pipeline. And anything less will mean that the council will continue its complacency in criminalizing our black and brown youth and maintaining the systemic structures that were born from white supremacy. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. That concludes testimony for this panel, and I don't see any questions. So we will move on to the next panel. The next panel will be Caitlin Delphin, Madeline Borelli, Natalia Forman, and Jay Julio. The panel after that will be Johanna Miller from the NYCLU, Nelson Marr, Bronx Legal Services, Anna Ark and Gallagher, Brooklyn Defender Services, and Crystal Baker Burr, The Bronx Defenders. So we will start with Caitlin Delphin.
Good afternoon. My name is Caitlin Delphin, and I'm a special education teacher at a high school in Bensonhurst, Brooklyn, and member of Teachers Unite. I'm here today to speak in opposition to Intro Number 2211. We need action to reduce policing in schools and define more teachers, counselors, social workers and restorative justice professionals rather than spending more money retraining current SSAs, when we have seen so many times that retraining police does not work. I'm going to focus today on alternatives to policing in schools. I work in a small school that is unusual within the DOE in a few ways. Our students' graduation requirements are based on papers and presentations rather than testing. We are a restorative justice school. We've also spent years developing culturally responsive classroom and curriculum, classrooms and curriculum. Although this school is far from perfect, through these efforts, we've seen a significant drop in suspensions and increase in safety. For example, it's been years since we've had a fight at the school. We've been able to do this because students are empowered to lead restorative justice initiatives, including relationship building, mediation, and circles facilitation. And we've made an effort to train all of our staff in RJ practices. We've done all of this without funding for an RJ coordinator or other devoted RJ positions as well as in direct contradiction to the culture of policing present in the DOE. The students, teachers and staff at my school are not exceptional. We are a diverse, unscreened, Title I public school. This can work anywhere, but it won't work without funding and support. Despite all of this, when we eventually do return to the building in person, the vast majority of my students, who will have been out of the building for over a year, will not be welcomed back by additional counselors or social workers to help them with the traumas of having to care for sick family members or feeling the weight of the family's finances on their shoulders as a teenager or social isolation. They will not be welcomed by more teachers to help refocus students who've had to be more involved in younger sibling schoolwork than their own or still don't have access to adequate technology. No, instead, they'll be greeted by metal detectors and uniformed SSAs reminding them exactly how society values their education. Until we are talking about eliminating policing and fully funding education within our schools, we are not having the right conversation.
On this one.
Thank you. And next we will hear from Madeline Borelli.
Okay. Good afternoon, Councilmember Madeline Borelli. I'm a District 15 parent and a District 21 Special Education Teacher. I am also a member of Teachers Unite. I urge councilmembers to reject Intro 2211. This bill will create new infrastructure to police and criminalize students. This reshuffling and repackaging was 31% of de Blasio's phony $1 billion defundment of the NYPD. So from the beginning, this move was never intended to result in change. The hundreds of millions of dollars spent on school policing will come directly out of the DOE's already decimated budget. And we know racism and violence are ingrained into NYPD culture and practices. We have seen time and time again, from all over the country, that reforms don't work, retraining doesn't work. And to go back to the money, instead of spending millions to try and retrain school police, we can instead hire black and brown New Yorkers into positions that actually support young people's well-being and are not through a policing infrastructure. Hire black and brown community members who have spent their careers learning about trauma-informed practices, not former NYPD agents who take a half-assed class on restorative justice. Speaking of which, we can't even get the DOE to properly train us teachers who are already in the schools and trauma-informed restorative practices. But we are to believe that 5,000 school cops will be appropriately retrained? It just doesn't add up. In my seven years of teaching in the DOE, I have on many occasions seen cops escalate conflicts. I have seen students in mental health crisis put in handcuffs. I have seen cops patrolling our hallways in the very same way that the NYPD patrols our neighborhoods. They view our young folks as criminals. They target black and brown students, LGBTQ students and students with disabilities. Policing in all form, including personnel, has no place in our schools, and they certainly should not have a say in how our schools are run. Now we're hearing that the city plans to hire 475 new school cops? My school has to share social workers and speech pathologists with other schools, but we have money for 475 new school cops in a pandemic. When I have kids still trying to do schoolwork on their parents' cellphones, but we have money for 475 new school cops. This is unethical. Councilmembers, I hope you listen to the young folks on this call today because they are the ones who are living out the policies that you enact. If you pass Intro 2211, you're choosing violence for our young people. We don't want reform. We don't want retraining. We want to dismantle and abolish all forms of policing and policing culture from our schools. Please vote no on Intro 2211. Thank you.
Thank you. And next we'll hear from Jay Julio.
Starting time.
Hello, my name is Jay Julio, and I am a 23-year-old educator living in District 7 with teaching experiences within the halls of PS 69, CPE 1, River East, and with hundreds of students at the Juilliard School's Music Advancement Program. I also grew up in the public school system in New York as one of the free and reduced lunch students that, that City Councilmember Trager mentioned, not within New York City DOE, but in Uniondale until I was 16, when I moved into the city. I grew up until the age of 14 in Nassau County, in some of the only elementary, middle and high schools with SSAs and metal detectors on the island. Those of you who know, know why this is so. I won't speak to that experience besides briefly mentioning that school safety officers and school city agents are among the lowest-paid positions in schools and that we who believe in racial justice, asking for the creation, should be asking for the creation of well-paying jobs within school structures that are not police. I cannot tell you a single person from the thousands of people I went to school with that looked at these positions and said anything, but that is exactly who I don't want to be. We all know these are not aspirational jobs. And that, of course, the creation of policing structures within schools is the very school-to-prison pipeline that caught so many of my sisters, my brothers, who in white schools might have been simply disciplined through head-on restorative justice systems by advisors, guidance counselors and school structures that did not involve policing. And that metal detectors and pat-downs literally lost us hours of our lives that could have been spent in the classrooms. And that so often, as soon as my fellow students saw that we were being treated like prisoners in training, that we'd been prepped for this through every experience we had growing up, they completely disengaged from the system. These were the students that brought knives or guns and drugs because if we were headed for the jailhouse, why not act like it? I'm sorry, I spoke a lot on that because I have to dive nine years back to think how that 14-year-old back then thought. And that it was a truly traumatic place despite my later success, despite all the light and life that was in the school. And that's what saved me, everything else in the school that's constantly in danger of being defunded. Every music class, every science lab, every single black and brown peer that I had, every guidance counselor that helped me work through my personal journey. And let's not forget that that student we keep down, Abel Sedeno, who was violently threatened constantly because he was gay, who killed his bullies out of fear of death, a fear that followed him even when he left the school. Don't forget his high school had school security officers. What is our police against homophobia? Our schools cannot be a buy-in until they actually offer us not securitization, but true safety. So no on 2211, and yes on refunding our public schools. The same schools that to this day shares floors and buildings and that have no HVAC systems. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And that concludes the testimony for this panel. Seeing no Councilmember questions, the next panel that we will call will be Johanna Miller, Nelson Marr, Anna Ark and Gallagher, and Crystal Baker, Baker Burr. The panel after that will be Anthony Singfield, Jazmila Ortiz, Naiya Timmons, and Salma Hassan. We will start with Johanna Miller.
Hi, thank you. My name is I'm the Director of the Education Policy Center at the New York Civil Liberties Union. I'm here today in strong opposition to Intro 2211 and in qualified support of the other three bills that are being considered, which is detailed in our written testimony. I do want to use my two minutes to talk about 2211. A legal requirement to train police officers to perform the duties of educators is some, something that no one here asked for, not students, not advocates, and we know not school safety officers themselves. They don't want this. I don't think that that bodes well for them doing it well. The precious funding available for schools has to be spent on teaching and learning, supporting students and improving the learning environment. We can't be retrofitting police officers into makeshift counselors when we don't have enough counselors already. I think it's worth remembering that we're not having this conversation because the NYPD has done such a great job taking care of our kids, particularly our students of color. We're here because no one's happy with how this is going. In fact, just an hour ago, the leader of the School Safety Officers Union just said the words, "Parents, your children are not safe." That's from the leader of the School Safety Union, whose job it is to keep kids safe. It's the largest school police force in the country. It's larger than the entire municipal police forces of almost every single American city. It has an ever-expanding budget. If his belief is that school safety officers are still failing to keep schools safe with all the resources they have, then I hope that today we can finally dispatch the argument that our school, current school safety arrangement is working at all. And you know, if Greg Floyd and the NYCLU are in agreement about something, I think it's worth paying attention to. For more than a decade, we've been urging the city to spend less on school policing and to shrink the mind-boggling size of the School Safety Division through attrition and reassignment, but the division has continued to grow. Hiring freeze that was promised to you. It's the city's prerogative to protect municipal workers, but a job protection program at the expense of the well-being of children is unconscionable. I just want to thank Chair Trigger for raising the question about the need for collaboration. And I want to say, we decline to work with the administration on this transition because we don't trust them. And I hope that if you came into today thinking that you could trust them, what we learned this from this morning's testimony has helped you recover from that. I think it's, there's just way better places for us to spend our money. And as advocacy community, there's far better places for us to spend our time. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. And next we'll hear from Nelson Marr.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Chair Trigger and members of the City Council. Thank you, Chair Trigger, for holding this important hearing today and for your ongoing efforts to support students, families and staff in our public schools. My name is Nelson Marr, and I'm an attorney at Legal Services NYC, and I've been practicing education law for the last 20 years. I want to share my thoughts with the City Council today about Intro 2188, sponsored by Councilmember Ayala, as this bill covers an issue very near and dear to my work over the last 20 years. Legal Services NYC has been one of the few organizations that have provided free representation to students who face long-term suspensions in New York City. From that work, we became quite intimately aware of the practice of schools using 911, calling 911 to respond to students who are experiencing an emotional crisis. using 911, calling 911 to respond to students who are experiencing an emotional crisis. From this, Legal Services NYC took some of the first steps to publicly address this issue. In 2013, our office sued the DOE and the City of New York to stop the inappropriate use of emergency medical services by school officials. Through that settlement of that case, we were able to secure significant changes like school crisis intervention plans, the promulgation of Chancellor's Regulation 8411, and targeted professional development in crisis de-escalation. But unfortunately, we didn't see the significant decrease in the numbers of 911 calls for students as evidenced by the data and individual incidents referenced by Councilmember Ayala and others in today's hearing. So there is still much work to be done, and Intro 2188 takes a good step in the right direction. And it moves the school system further away from using law enforcement response to a student who is experiencing an emotional or behavioral crisis. Whether these situations get de-escalated largely depends on how the adults respond to the child who is experiencing an emotional crisis. Every adult in the New York City public schools need to have these tools to respond appropriately, because a child in any school can experience an emotional crisis at any time. What is clear is that individuals trained through the NYPD are trained to be law enforcement officers, not mental health counselors, and are not prepared to respond in an emotional crisis. So as Councilmember Rosenthal noted, until all NYPD officers are required to be social workers first, their role in responding to children experiencing an emotional crisis should be highly restricted, as Intro 2188 requires. And as Ms. Vargis and many of the students mentioned earlier, there needs to be greater investment in social emotional learning and not simply in a disjointed and sideloaded way that often happens in the New York City Department of Education. Rather, we need a whole-school approach and one that is centered on healing. Thank you.
Thank you. And next we will hear from Anna Arkin Gallagher.
Starting time.
Good afternoon. My name is Anna Arkin Gallagher, and I'm a supervising attorney and policy counsel in the education practice at Brooklyn Defender Services. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today. Our education unit provides legal representation and informal advocacy to school-aged clients and parents of children in New York City schools. Many of our clients are involved in the criminal, legal, or family regulation systems. We believe that all of our city's schools, especially those that have historically presented with the highest rates of suspension, calls to EMS, and arrests, must implement reforms related to their handling of student misbehavior and treatment of students in emotional distress. These reforms can and should draw restorative justice practices and collaborative problem-solving that facilitate holistic engagement with instances of conflict and misbehavior while minimizing schools' reliance on the police. And they should be grounded in the recognition that children should never be placed in handcuffs or otherwise traumatized by their schools as a consequence of disciplinary issues. The city needs to see a financial shift away from law enforcement in schools and a correspondingly substantial investment in resources that help to develop students' abilities to engage in conflict resolution, emotional regulation, and critical thinking. We support Intro 2188. We support, in particular, its mandated limits on the use of handcuffs and other restraints for students in an emotional crisis. Its requirements that clinically-trained mental health staff play a role in responding to students experiencing emotional distress, the boundaries it places on when police officers can respond to students in crisis, and its emphasis on the use of de-escalation strategies prior to any attempt to summon law enforcement. As a general matter, we believe that handcuffs and other mechanical restraints have no place in schools. These are children, and we've seen time and time again that handcuffs and other restraints are used disproportionately on students of color and on black students in particular. And so we would prefer the bill contain an absolute prohibition on handcuffing students. At the same time, however, we appreciate that this bill attempts to limit the use of these interventions only to prevent imminent, serious physical injury. Although we support the general intent of this bill, we're nevertheless concerned that it lacks any real measures for accountability. It's important that there be measures in place to make sure the mandates of the bill are actually followed, and we'll highlight some specific recommendations in our written testimony. Ultimately, it's critical that we make serious strides towards recognizing that traumatizing children through the use of restraints and law enforcement presence in schools does not further public safety or the health and well-being of New York City's children and communities. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today.
Thank you. And next we will hear from Crystal Baker Burr.
Starting time.
Thank you, Chair Traeger, for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Crystal Baker Burr, and I'm an education attorney with the Bronx Defenders. Our school safety system is broken. At the Bronx Defenders, I work with young people who have been funneled into the school-to-prison pipeline, young people who have been failed by the school safety system time and again. Many of our clients have been pushed out of school or have low attendance because of the practices used by the NYPD school safety agents and local precinct officers. Kids do not want to go to jail, so when their schools look, feel, and act like jails, many of them simply stop going altogether. Unfortunately, that's how many students end up with a Bronx defender by their side. Kids in the Bronx deserve better. During the 2019-2020 school year, five of the top nine schools with the highest rate of handcuff and restraint usage were in the Bronx. The Jam Rapport School in the Bronx was the school with the most frequent use of metal and Velcro restraints. Jam Rapport is a District Seventy-Five high school where a large portion of students have a disability classification of emotional disturbance, and all students have IEPs. Jam Rapport should be the model that other schools look to in order to learn about effective de-escalation and restorative justice practices, how to teach students coping skills, and how to give students tools and techniques to self-regulate and de-escalate when they are becoming dysregulated or triggered. But instead, Jam Rapport has made harmful practices such as metal and Velcro restraints the norm. In the 2019-2020 school year, Jam Rapport made up close to eleven percent of the total number of incidents in which metal and Velcro restraints were used for child and crisis incidents across the entire city. Jam Rapport is also a very segregated school in more ways than one, serving a student population that is ninety-four percent black and Latinx. And its reflexive use of punishment and carceral interventions pushes far too many students into the juvenile and criminal legal systems after not receiving appropriate special education services or supports. They are entitled to deal with triggering events or impulsivity. Handcuffing should not be a tool in the toolbox for addressing emotional crises in classrooms. Too often, in this system, children aren't seen as children, but instead they are seen as problems. They are sent from school directly to Lincoln Hospital for emergency psychiatric evaluations for behaviors that do not rise to the level of a child in crisis, like hiding under a desk and refusing to come out. We support Intro 2188 because it addresses these grave harms to children and because it will take these practices out of the NYPD toolbox. Students in an emotional crisis should be met with de-escalation techniques and restorative justice practices rather than the dangerous and harmful practices used by many school safety agents and school administrators. Thank you.
And that concludes the testimony for this panel. Thank you. Seeing no council member questions, I will call the next panel. Anthony Singfield, Jazmila Ortiz, Naiya Timmons, and Salma Hassan. After that panel, I will call Billy Counsel, Chai Ossie, Melissa Clark, Alyssa Figueroa, and Sandra Mitchell. We will first hear from Anthony Singfield.
Starting time. Am I audible?
Yes.
I walk in school, I walk in the school for my fifth period, and the officer tells me to wait. What are you here for? What else could I be there for? Well, we had been there before. I had a different start time than other students, and because of that, I had to announce my business and my school as if I were its enemy or stranger to its mission. This was the language of my school's safety agent on a good day. I'll allow you to imagine our interactions when students get in trouble. Imagine when students return that aggression on bad days. Imagine when we are told to ship ourselves of calculators and scissors to quiet metal detectors. These officers' jobs are to keep the school safe, but that shouldn't have confused their mission to protect the students over the school, for the building is nothing without its children. And 2021 researchers found that up to one-third of New York City public high school students experienced depression. If the first thing I'm introduced to at eight AM in the morning is an officer treating me like a criminal, then every morning I would associate that encounter with grief, and I did. It would take everything for someone to try and arrive with energy to last the eight-hour day, and it was. I'm sure those feelings aren't strangers to anyone in this room. Why should we feed that energy with unprofessionalism, which does not give the safety our students need? Why would we provide more chaos at a situation that already has New York City students at risk? You suggest a transition of power from NYPD to DOE. However, we do not need a mere change of supervision. We need a change of protection. Reject Intro 2211. Give us mental health professionals. Fund more extracurriculars for low-income neighborhoods. Stop criminalizing us. My name is Tony Singfield. I represent Yaya Network's Mission in Justice and Creativity. Help us by ensuring we have protectors in our schools, non-forces. Thank you.
Thank you. And next we'll hear from Jazmila Ortiz.
Starting time.
Hi, my name is Jazmila Ortiz. I'm a part of the Yaya Network Action Committee. I'm a twelve-grader at Gotham Professional Arts Academy, one of the more fortunate schools that doesn't have to go through the terrorism metal detectors. A school that's predominantly black and Latino students with no metal detectors. Wow, that's a shocker. I say that because one hundred thousand New York City high schools go with metal detectors every morning. Half of black high school students in the city go through it. Thirty-eight percent Latinx students do as well. I wonder if you guys actually stop and think how those students might feel. Saying metal detectors are for our safety, is it really, or you guys just start in by the color of our skin? We come to school to learn, not to be investigated or feel criminalized. While reading legislation 20 to 11, I didn't see anything that changes the metal detectors or how scanning is done. Just because school safety agents won't be run by the NYPD, it doesn't really change a thing. It's a title change. It doesn't change policing in schools. If you really think about it, metal detectors are still part of policing. Maybe that didn't run through your minds. We don't feel safe having to go through metal detectors. Metal detectors cause students to be late and miss out important information. Is our education even important? If it was important, then metal detectors would be out of our schools. I didn't know that metal detectors were a part of our education. It just teaches us about systematic racism. Only fourteen percent of white students go through metal detectors. This isn't a safety issue. It's a race issue. When coming into school buildings, students want to feel welcome, not feeling as if they're walking into prison. Another thing is the cost of policing in schools. They take away most of the school's fund. With that being said, the money spent on metal detectors and school safety agents could be used to hire social workers and guidance counselors, something New York City schools actually need. Us students want to be able to succeed, to be able to grow, and to be able to be happy in our schools. We don't need or want policing in our schools. The title isn't enough. That's why we're saying no on to 2211. Thank you.
I'm expired.
Thank you. And next we'll hear from Salma Hassan.
Time starts now.
Hello, my name is Salma Hassan. I am here with the Yaya Network to address the proposed legislation regarding school safety agents. While the proposed legislation appears to take minor strides in the effort to provide safer schools, the fight for the one-in-two black and one-in-three Latinx students who must go through metal detectors and endure heavy policing every day is not over. I attended two different predominantly-white high schools, and in my four years at both institutions, I've had to go through random metal detectors for about eight days of my time in the DOE. That is seven hundred and twelve days less than the one hundred thousand mostly-black and brown students that are required to go through metal detectors daily. Seven hundred and twelve days where I did not have to line up outside of school, have my bag searched, take off my shoes and belt, and make sure to throw away my glass bottle before I entered the building I was expected to learn at. I wonder why across New York City, some of my black and brown peers are expected to do this every day for seven hundred and twenty days. Throughout this meeting, I have heard a lot about policies to change methods of policing, but no change to one of the most traumatizing policing practices in schools: metal detectors. There has been no accountability from the NYPD or DOE that the scanning policies in place are ineffective and that they criminalize students. Metal detectors disproportionately affect and traumatize students of color. Transferring the jurisdiction of the school safety to the DOE is not enough to eliminate the space for policing and bias in schools. Intro 2211 fails to address the demand to defund school policing. You are once again still putting money into the pockets of an officer rather than a counselor or social worker. I see a guarantee to change jurisdiction, but I do not see a guarantee in safety and mental health resources. Students are still being policed and surveilled, and nothing is being done to change it. How can a student feel welcome in a place where they must be scanned to enter? We cannot erase the bias of employees unless you eliminate the space you create for it to happen. That begins with police-free schools and the removal of metal detectors and the investment into mental health resources. Thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes the testimony for this panel. The next panel is going to be Melissa Clark, Alyssa Figueroa, and Sandra Mitchell. After that panel, we will call Catherine Rojas, Judy Cheng, Brendan Gillett, and Naula Odardy Noronho. We will first start with Melissa Clark.
Your time starts now.
Good afternoon, Committee Chair Traeger and members of the Committee on Education. I want to first thank you all for holding this very important hearing on the ways in which police interact with our students and the safety and security of our public schools. My name is Melissa Clark, and I am the Youth Justice and Child Welfare Policy Associate at Children's Defense Fund. At Children's Defense Fund New York, our mission is to ensure every child receives a healthy start, their start, and moral start in life, so that they are able to achieve a successful passage into adulthood with the help of caring families and communities. We provide a strong, effective, and independent voice for all children who cannot vote, lobby, or speak for themselves. As a member of Dignity in Schools New York, Solutions Not Suspension Coalition, and NYC Youth Coalition, we work with students and other advocates to create an equitable system for all New York City youth. We envision a system where our young people can thrive free of criminalization, harmful discipline practices, and police. Now more than ever in the recent history of our city, is a critical time for our students and families. It is imperative to the social-emotional development of our young people that we remove police from situations where students are experiencing emotional crisis. To bridge this gap, it will require significant investment to hire and deploy therapeutic support staff in schools focusing first on schools with the fewest supportive staff and resources in communities who need it the most. Until these things are possible, we believe that a reform set in Intro 2188 are a step in the right direction, de-centering police from crisis response and protecting students from police practices that traumatize children. We support Intro 2188 because it recognizes that school safety personnel should not be responding to students in emotional crisis. Thank you for your leadership and for your consideration of this testimony.
Thank you. And next we will hear from Alyssa Figueroa.
Your time starts now.
My name is Alyssa Figueroa, and I'm the Coalition Coordinator of the Urban Youth Collaborative. The Urban Youth Collaborative is a coalition made up of youth leaders from Sisters and Brothers United in the Bronx, Future of Tomorrow in Cypress Hills, Brooklyn, and Make the Road New York. We have worked together since 2004 to fight for racial and social justice in schools. I am testifying today on behalf of this coalition in opposition to Intro 2211. I'm going to start my testimony with a statistic. Black and Latinx students in New York City make up ninety percent of all youth arrests, issued summons, and juvenile reports. Ninety percent. It is shameful that New York City has allowed a racist school policing system to play out for decades. Intro 2211 will not transform this system. In fact, the bill actually takes us backward in our fight to end the criminalization of black and brown students. Intro 2211 legislates the mayor's plan to transfer to school safety divisions more than five thousand agents from the NYPD to the Department of Education. Putting SSAs in different uniforms will not undo the ingrained mentality and training that results in racist bias in policing. Leaked disciplinary records have shown that this bias has resulted in school safety agents sexually, verbally, and physically abusing students of color. It shouldn't take leaked records to prove what young people have been saying for decades. Police in schools do not make them feel safer. Yet Intro 2211 will invest DOE funding and resources to supposedly retrain SSAs. Extensive research has found that retraining police does not undo implicit racial bias. And we have seen with our own eyes that retraining police has not led to less trauma and harm in our communities. Young people should not be subject to being guinea pigs in what will be a failed experiment. This is not to mention that this retraining would likely cost hundreds of millions of dollars in addition to the four hundred forty-five million already allotted to the School Safety Division in the mayor's preliminary budget. Enough with the investment in SSAs. There are more school safety agents than guidance counselors and school social workers combined, sending a clear message to black and brown students that New York City rather police them than invest in their futures. Numerous cities have already Numerous cities have already taken to completely removing police from schools, including Oakland, Seattle, Portland, Rochester, and Denver. Intro twenty-two eleven will make New York City the first district to simply fold the division of the Police Department into schools, making it fall even more behind in the national movement to end racist institutions. Intro twenty-two eleven was crafted quickly, behind closed doors, with absolutely no input from students. Young people are clear that they want police-free schools. The city should engage them so we can collectively chart a path forward for our schools beyond policing. It is for these reasons that we ask you to vote no on intro twenty-two eleven and instead work with us on real solutions that will make New York City a more equitable place to live, learn, and grow. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Alyssa. Next, we will be hearing from Sandra Mitchell.
Your time starts now.
Blessings and good afternoon. Thank you, Committee Chair Trager, and just making time for us to be able to speak our hearts. And thank you all members of the council, as well as all the community advocates. My name is Sandra Mitchell, and I am providing testimony today on behalf of the New Settlement Parent Action Committee, which is a parent-led Bronx organization where I am a leader. And we are also a member organization with the Dignity in Schools Coalition and part of the Healing Center Schools Working Group. As a Bronx parent and a mental health advocate, it is clear that the city of New York needs to invest in counselors, not cops. It is time for New York City to reinvest in the highest quality education that respects the dignity of all students and pursues restorative approaches to conflict and harm. It is time to rein, for reinvestment in supportive staff positions and continuous professional development. We're calling for funding to have black and brown New Yorkers for jobs that support young people's social, emotional, and mental health. It is time we need to hire necessary personnel such as restorative justice coordinators, paraprofessionals, community outreach staff, nurses, social workers, and guidance counselor. It is time we need to invest in a new culturally responsive, healing-centered school curriculum. It is time we need to invest in the policies and procedures that would encompass the healing-centered school model coupled with sustained, and I say sustained, etched in stone, sustained, culturally responsive, supportive education at its core. It is time all school staff need to receive professional development and receive ongoing workshops in trauma-responsive education practices. It's called, so called TRP. It is time New York City schools to know and to understand that New York City schools have failed our students from pre-K to high school and college, decade after decade after multiple decades.
I'm expired.
I'll close in saying it is time to reinvest in our public schools, and it's the right thing to do. We must protect, empower, inspire, and nurture the genius in our New York City students. We should be investing in counselors, not cops. I thank you for your listening ear, and I hope that I pierced your heart and pierced your soul so that you will be able to do what is right before God Almighty. Thank you.
Thank you. Here, do you have any remarks for this panel?
I want to thank them for their very powerful testimony, quite powerful stuff. Truly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. And seeing that no council members have their hand raised, I'm going to go ahead and call our next panel. Michael Perez, Robert Malik, Althea Ebo, Kim West, and John Felsey. I will now, we will now begin with Michael. Michael Perez.
Time starts now.
Just bear with us one moment, please. Well, we'll start with John Felsey. Some of our registered panelists dropped off, so we'll just start with John Felsey. Can you please? Thank you.
Time starts now.
John, please accept that and mute. We'll, we'll turn it, I apologize. We'll turn it back to John. But we are going to turn to Nayola Ododri Naradja.
Time starts now.
Thank you.
You're still muted.
There. Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. So, thank you, Councilmember Trager and the Education Committee. My name's Nula Odardi Noronjo. I would just like to provide a report from the ground. I'm a proud mother of five, a grandmother of two, all future current or public school graduates here. I believe we have great local public schools here in Queens, which is my area of knowledge. I've been a mother, a PTA president, SLT member, and now a CEC member for District Thirty. I've been in and out of our great local public schools for almost fifteen years, and I'm constantly in and out of the schools here in Northeast Queens. But most importantly, I want to reiterate Councilmember Trager's point that the chief educator in the building, that's the principal. They must be in charge of hiring, firing, and managing all the employees in the building, including the school safety officers. Everyone in the building must report to the principal because education has to be the focus of everything that goes on in that building. Secondly, we must recognize the positive impact many SSAs have in our schools. For example, one school I work with, the SSA runs a school. When you walk in, the SSA knows what's going on, who's in, who's out, what special programs are going on, where the principal is, where the assistant principal is, what school program's on that day. While many school safety agents have informally become adult confidants of students, they are often a helpful adult in the building, but they should not be security guards. I'm not against individuals, but about the role that's being defined for them by this bureaucracy. For too long, many of our school safety agents have become receptionists. When a school receptionist's job is important, it is the face of the school to so many people, both the parents and the public. This is the first face they see. It should be a parent coordinator or similar person who basically welcomes people to the school. In an immigrant community like mine in Queens, the blue NYPD uniform causes a lot of concern rather than comfort. Removing just the logo isn't enough. It's something. As a member of District Thirty, most of my experience is in pre-K to eight schools. And in fact, in Queens, our biggest safety issues are actually traffic safety, but the SSAs aren't allowed to go outside and deal with those issues. I echo the call for the need of positive role models in our schools, but they should not be in NYPD uniform. They need to be counselors, social workers, and positive role models. We can do much better than these bills. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Now we will hear from Althea Ebo.
Your time starts now.
Good afternoon. My name is Althea Ebo, and I've been working in New York City schools for the last seventeen years. I'm currently a dean, student advocate at Chelsea CTE High School. Prior to that, I was a dean and teacher at the George Washington Educational Campus in Washington Heights. I'm also the mother of two young men who have graduated from public high schools in the city. I'm here to speak in opposition to intro two, two, one, one, which will entrench policing in New York City schools and and suck up hundreds of millions of dollars that should instead be invested in what will lead to true safety and the well-being of our students. The hiring of counselors, social workers, nurses, and school aides who prioritize the humanity of our youth and the implementation of restorative justice programming access to DOE schools. While at George Washington, students were met at the beginning of each stay by school safety agents who ran the metal detectors. It was always clear that the SSA's sole purpose was enforcement, getting students into the building with speed. They were definitely not there to make the students feel good about heading into school. There was always shouting, "Take off your belts, take your shoes off," and this is what shaped the beginning of students' days. Young people get into fights. It happens. At the schools I taught at, the trend was young people get upset, SSA's calm, SSA's cool, NYPD, and there was a lack of restorative practices. This is not how you create a safe space for learning. This is how you dehumanize children and make them hate school. Transferring SSAs from NYPD to the DOE will not will not erase the verbal and physical harm that this can inflict on students. At my current school, Chelsea, things are different because we practice restorative practices in restorative justice programming in our school. If an argument happens, students are given space and time to cool off, and we have a circle process where we discuss what has happened and make agreements with each other on how to solve the problem. These restorative practices are very successful in mediating conflicts, but our schools still lack some sources. We need to fully support students. Our student population is largely black and Latinx. Students deal every day with trauma of systemic racism and class inequity. Conflict must often, conflict most often arises when this trauma is triggered. Students need staff members who really know them and spaces where they can go to talk things out in a, in, to get to, before things get to a crisis level. But our social worker only comes to our school three days a week and has another school they go to. My time's up, but that's my statement today. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. We will now hear from our next panelist, Kim West.
Your time starts now.
Good afternoon. My name is Kim West. I am a parent, a teacher always, and a retired school administrator. I am a child advocate that believes in justice and equity for all in a safe environment. I am one that believes that the emotional state of an individual impacts on his or her overall development. This applies to both child and adult, and impacts on decisions that he or she makes in life. On February third, the MBSK Unit of District Twenty-nine hosted a session entitled, "Let's Talk at My Table." The session brought youth and police officers together. There were very deep, open discussions, concerns, and questions expressed by both elementary and adolescent students. They spoke from their hearts. The fear of police was well in their thoughts. They asked why certain things happen. We know that these concerns are not equitably shared by youth in all communities. Some kids will never be engulfed in these fears. If issues surrounding one's thoughts and feelings as a child are not resolved, they become crucial factors in the evolution of that child into adulthood, impacting future decisions he or she makes. As we know, social media is here to stay. And looking at and listening to some of the many voices that I've heard, I too say bringing five thousand police officers from Department A and some planting them in B is not the answer. If there's a cancer in A, that cancer comes to B. We need to reimagine schools. We need affective support. We need civic understandings for youth, restorative practices, cultural responsiveness, immersed as nourishment and armor for every child, especially black and brown children who the research shows and we know experience much more than others. For years, schools have begged for guidance counselors, basic things that they should have. Me as a parent, I have a son. I want him to live and thrive as a normal child. I don't want him to fear. I want him to just to blossom, which is something that I know most parents want. The types of fears kids are experiencing, they should not. Let's reimagine our school system. We need safe environments. We need partnerships. We need collaborations. Thank you.
Thank you. I will now turn it back to John.
Your time starts now.
Okay, we will, we will come back to John after the next, the next panel to see if he has, he has unmuted himself. So the next panel will be Catherine Rojas, Diana Palomo from Big Brothers, Big Sisters of New York City, Sandra Sanchez from the Yaya Network and Kaiser. We will first begin with Catherine.
Time starts now.
Hi, everyone. My name is Kathy Rojas. I am a product of public schooling. I grew up in Queens. I'm now a teacher in Queens. I've been working in the public school system for about probably like seven years. Anyways, all of this to say that both, on both ends of the spectrum, both as a student and now a teacher, I really think this is, to be honest, a smack in the face. I mean, our students right now through COVID are facing food insecurity. They're facing housing insecurity. Our schools are having their budgets cut. I work at a school in Elmers, Queens that just saw six hundred sixty-five thousand dollars cut this year, this school year. We don't have enough money for teachers. We don't have enough money to literally feed our kids. Our youth are struggling with employment. SYP got cut. I mean, the list goes on. And instead of funding all of those things, you're going to tell me that you prefer to spend millions of dollars on a budget to a force that has already proven to be oppressive and racist? If we look at who is targeted by these school police officers, eighty-nine percent of the people stopped by police, by, by police officers in schools that are reprimanding them are, are black and Latino students. Have you not been listening to the protest movement, to the youth all of this summer, saying time and time and time again that they do not trust police? Police are not trained to deal, to counsel with students. Having more people in the school yelling at them to go into classes does not feel comfortable for them. It is not a safe place for them. What we need to be doing is divesting from police and really investing in what our students need. More trained counselors, more teachers, more job opportunities, SYP, after-school programs, okay? So this is really, I, I can't even believe that this bill is on the table. It's really, really a smack in the face to both our youth, to our teachers, to everyone that has been working so hard to provide the necessary resources to our kids coming out of pocket, and then you're gonna give this funding to an oppressive institution. I just, it's really ridiculous. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we will be hearing from Diana.
Time starts now.
Thank you to the Education Committee Chair Trager and members of the committee for holding a hearing on public school safety and security. My name is Diana Paloma, and I am Biggs and Blue Program Manager for Big Brothers, Big Sisters of New York City. I'm here to express support for intro twenty-two eleven, sponsored by Councilmember Constantine, which will ensure that the NYPD be fully removed from school safety and that school safety personnel will be retrained with a focus on restorative justice, challenge of development, and de-escalation. Our organization's mission is to ignite the biggest potential in our youth. In two thousand and seventeen, we created the Biggs and Blue Initiative with the goal of building trust between officers and the community. Our group mentoring model allows for officers to mentor youth during the sessions with a curriculum focused on trust-building, leadership skill development, and community engagement. As a program manager, I witness the impact officers can have in the youth's life if they're being presented as mentors and not merely authoritative. The perspectives change as little create bonds with officers rooted in trust and mutual respect. Our organization is committed to advancing diversity, equity, and inclusion. As such, we created the Bias Awareness Training, provide youth development training, and peer mentoring spaces for officers to share best practices applicable in their communities. In addition, we developed a set of new program standards focused on accountability and putting youth first. Our mentors are expected to uphold the values of the Brothers, Big Sisters of New York City, be in good be in good standing with the NYPD, attend enrollment meetings, and engage in youth development training. Littles get to learn about the officers, build trust, create positive relationships, and officers understand the complexities of youth development. Our hope is that these relationships persist outside of the classrooms, that our littles go back to their community to see their local officers as their mentors and a trusted adult, and for our officers to see the community from its own perspective and respect each member. For them to learn the, to learn from the youth and to offer real support and guidance rooted in addressing youth needs. Thank you for your efforts and support of this bill. We look forward to continue to provide safe spaces for our youth to ignite the biggest potential.
Thank you, and thank you for, Klima for taking over. Uh, next we'll hear from Sandra Sanchez, followed by Kaiser.
Your time starts now.
Ninety-one thousand, one hundred and fourteen New York City high school students go through metal detectors every morning. Forty-eight percent of those students are black, thirty-eight percent of those high school students are Hispanic, including myself, and fourteen percent of those high school students are Asian and white. Not discriminating, they say, right? But we see the huge difference in percentages. And the reason for these metal detectors is believed to be for safety. But what if I told you that is not the reality? What if I told you I felt it was more like a prison? What if I told you I felt like I was being called a criminal? Are these to prevent shootings, or is this another way of telling, telling students of color that they are the problem? That they are dangerous? Answer that for me. Another way of saying, we don't trust you. Are we the problem, or is it really the way the school system was built? Spending one thousand through thirty thousand dollars on one metal detector when we could be using that money oh, for, I don't know, maybe counselors, maybe looking for more mental health resources, but safety first, right? Why not try and help your students stay happy and motivated? Why not make them feel like they matter? Why not talk to them to see how they're doing? But instead, we need to make sure they aren't carrying a knife or gun. It's not like we're still children. It's not like we, we still get scared. Oh, wait, that's right, we do. How would you feel if you got stopped for having a bobby pin on your head? How would you feel if you were stopped to take them all off in front of everyone? Because that is what happened to me. And let me tell you something. It's embarrassing. It's shameful. It's dehumanizing. With that, I have one request. Let's get metal detectors out of schools. Not just the police. Let's break the system. Let's rebuild it. Let's start a conversation among each other. Let's make bigger change, a change no one will forget. I am a student from Gotham Collaborative High School, as well as a member of the Yaya Network. And I stand against the school systems to have metal detectors and policing them. Also, to add on to that, I still have classmates trying to learn English, who just moved to New York City. I still have classmates trying to keep up with the math we're learning. And you are worried about spending money on some police and metal detectors. Are you kidding? I have helped my classmates out of the own kindness of my heart, and I will continue to help my teachers translate work for them and help them succeed, even if you won't. And I will make sure they graduate, and I will be the person they can come speak to when you have, when they have no one. I would do the job you should be doing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And next we will hear from Kaiser.
Time starts now.
I am Kaiser. I'm a teacher at MS fifty in District Fourteen in Brooklyn, and I'm on the Steering Committee of Black Lives Matter at New York City Schools. I'm here to voice my opposition to Intro Twenty-two eleven in chorus with young people across the city who took time on their vacation to advocate for themselves at this meeting. I want to thank them. I grew up in Westchester, and there weren't any school safety officers in my public school. The budget was instead spent on multiple full-time guidance counselors and social workers, increased teaching staff, so we could have small class sizes, and access to varied sports and arts offerings. These are the things that create a supportive, safe, nurturing atmosphere where students feel valued and loved and protected. And that is how we can prevent harm from occurring in our schools, instead of reacting to it in a way that in fact perpetuates the violent cycle called the school-to-prison pipeline. We know that this is how thousands of suburban, white, rich schools around the country function. Resources are allocated for support rather than surveillance and punishment. And it's racist and classist to presume that this should not be the case in a school system with mostly black and brown low-income students. If anything, New York City public schools should be spending disproportionately more on counseling staff and on enrichment programs compared to a school with mostly white population. Because we do know that our society's failings and oppression of poor people and people of color can cause them to be disengaged in school. School safety officers do not help this problem. They do not make students feel safe in their school community, as the students themselves have told you repeatedly today. There are schools in my district where there is a documented history of racist rhetoric and actions by teachers and administrators. And when these concerns are raised publicly, the black parents seeking support are yelled at and silenced by people in power, including the chancellor. It's an insult to them to put the control of school safety agents into the hands of these same racist administrators and then claim that this will somehow keep their students safe. Please vote no on Twenty-two eleven.
Thank you, and that concludes um, testimony for this panel. The next panel that we will hear from will be Kim Famous from Healing Centered Schools, Hope Newton, Center for Family Representation, and Spring Dawson McCure from Teachers Unite. Following that panel will be our last panel, which will be Naomi Sharlin, Dominic Repole, Timothy Metzger, Rama Elnhas, and Bonnie Massey. We will first hear from Kim Famous.
Time starts now.
Hello, I'm Kim Famous. I'm a parent advocate and the current Bronx Borough President Appointee for C E C eleven in the Northeast Bronx. I'm also a member of the Outreach Committee of Healing Centered Schools. We've been talking all day about school safety agents. And I believe that there should be a shift in this watchdog mindset and instead provide protection and true safety and security for all our students. I live in a predominantly white, middle-class neighborhood where my daughter went to elementary school, and they also have middle school there. Every day, I was greeted in a friendly manner by the school safety agent who knew everyone by name and also whose parent belonged to which child. I have attended, you know, so, with meetings at Truman High School, which is less than a mile away where they have metal detectors and have personally experienced indignant treatment by the school safety officers there and cannot imagine what it would feel like for a child to have to go through that experience daily. Healing Centered Schools has a model that aims to create an environment in which school safety agents are not needed. With the increase in mental health workers, situations can be de-escalated before they become physically violent or restrictive techniques are used. Every situation is not life or death. Healing Centered Schools has a roadmap in which they promote the transformation teams that can be formed within schools to include a holistic, comprehensive approach with dealing with the communities, the administration of the school, community-based organizations, teachers, and input from parent advocates and families. This is a collaborative effort in which we should all be aiming to have within the school system. School safety a- ages need to be aware of the implications of their actions. They are not just managing individual incidences. Children as young as eight years old are being suspended. A child who is suspended is twice as likely to become a dropout. And once a dropout is eight times more likely to be incarcerated. These are all facts that should be made aware and public knowledge so that people can be aware of the prison, the school-to-prison pipeline. We have heard examples of several major cities, although not as big as New York City. Oakland, Seattle, and LA, mentioned by Kinyana Reed, are all examples of having school safety agents removed from the school system, having positive results and having the retraining of the school staff in social, emotional awareness. Again, this should be the goal for all of us, to have collaborative efforts for mental health and safety for everyone involved.
Thank you. And next we will hear from Hope Newton, the Center for Family Representation.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Chair Trager, members of the Education Committee for the opportunity to speak on what is on every parent's mind. My name is Hope Lizette Newton. I'm an impacted parent advocate with the Center for Family Representations Policy and Education Advocacy Team. We represent two thousand four hundred parents in abuse and neglect proceedings in Queens and Manhattan. The parents we represent face a variety of allegations, including educational neglect, which have intersections with the issues that we're talking about today. I also serve on both the Steering and Outreach Committee for the Healing Centered Schools Working Group. Today, we're here to talk about a safe environment where our children feel psychologically, physically, emotionally safe to learn and grow. School safety agents train for seventeen weeks at the NYPD Police Academy. They learn about law, police behavior, um, po- uh, police and behavioral science. They learn how to write summonses, detain, and arrest with deadly force if necessary. School teachers, principals, social workers, guidance counselors, and administrators go to college for at least five years. They study everything from child psychology, child development, early education, leadership counseling, to special education and more. A graduate degree is required with field placements to apply what they have learned. When you give, I don't understand why you would give those with the least amount of education and skills the responsibility to resolve problems for children instead of those who have the ability and the training to do it, uh, to deal with solving issues related to child development, conflict resolution, and de-escalation practices. It does not create a healthy environment. It does not create an environment of safety. It creates an environment that normalizes criminalization of school-based conflicts, behavioral issues. It does not create an environment of physical, psychological, and emotional safety. As the NYPD Division of Safety Budget continues to increase, the New York City Department of Education School Budget for Guidance Counselors, Social Workers continues to decrease. So when we say defund the police, we mean stop increasing the budget for police-trained school safety agents to handcuff, detain, and write summons, summonses, and increase the number of school guidance counselors and social workers. We have a model. There is an evidence-based, proven practice of a holistic, healing-centered approach that centers the wellness of student and staff needs. That needs to be implemented to address the challenges the New York City Department of Education, children, families, and our communities will face on the other side of COVID. When children return to school after more than a year with limited social, emotional connection of families and peers, a healing-centered approach that's inclusive of input from families, parents, administrators, and the community is what we need to move forward to serve our children, preparing them for success as opposed to preparing them for prison. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, next we'll hear from Spring Dawson McCure.
Time starts now.
Good afternoon. Thank you. I'm a white parent raising white children. I'm a psychologist that's part of a team who's been working in collaboration with New York City school leaders, teachers, staff, and parents for the past fifteen years. And I'm an Assistant Professor of Population Health at NYU Langone. These views are my own. I'm here today to urge you to reject Intro Two-two-one-one. I stand with students, parents, community leaders, and teachers unite in calling for divestment from policing and investment in restorative approaches to conflict and harm. In calling for funding to hire black and brown New Yorkers into jobs that support young people's social, emotional, and mental health and sharing responsibility for transforming systems of oppression. To support your decision, I offer some takeaways about the research evidence on school police officers, but here's the bottom line. What you have heard today from young people is absolutely borne out in study after study after study. Staffing schools with police has substantial harmful consequences, and there is no evidence that this costly strategy prevents school shootings as it is often framed. Research involving interviews with officers across the country finds that those in schools with more white students were primarily concerned about intruders or other external threats. Whereas schools with, whereas officers in schools with more students of color viewed the primary threat as students themselves. Stationing officers in schools is a setup for black and brown children, creating conditions for typical child behavior to be criminalized via arrest and juvenile court rather than addressed with developmentally appropriate consequences and support. Rigorous research documents that increasing the presence of officers in middle and high schools increases the use of exclusionary discipline, which disproportionately removes black and brown children from classroom learning, diminishes their connection to teachers, and hinders academic skills and well-being. There is robust evidence substantiating alternative practices and policies that ensure safety and support children's learning and development. I urge you to take courageous and bold action to reimagine school safety. You may be tempted to downplay the evidence and call for more time to study this issue, but what if this policy has gained far more momentum than its evidence? Where does the burden of proof lie? At what point do task forces become stall tactics? Thank you.
Thank you. And I see some other people have come on. So the next panel, um, and our last panel before we do a wrap-up that I'll be calling is Naomi Sharlin, Timothy Metzger, and John Felchi. We will start with Timothy Metzger.
Starting time.
Good afternoon. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to testify here today. My name is Tim Metzger. I'm a special education teacher at Brooklyn Frontiers High School, and I'm a member of Teachers Unite, which is an organization of New York City Public School Educators working to dismantle the school-to-prison pipeline. I'm here today to urge councilmembers to reject Intro Twenty-two eleven, a bill that would clarify the transfer of the NYPD's school division to DOE. We need to build schools and communities that address the needs of young people and frame safety as reducing harm rather than punishing behavior. My, my school was a transfer school, and we work hard to build a community where our students feel safe and find success. We're able to do this in part because of our partnership with Good Shepherd Services, which provides counselors for all students. I believe all schools should have these kinds of supports for all students. It is unacceptable if they would hire more aides at this time when schools need counselors and support staff to create safe and successful schools. I fully support schools looking like their communities and hiring a black and brown staff across all parts of the school community. However, SSAs are among the worst-paid positions in schools. I was shocked when I realized that those SSAs in my school who were most connected to our students and who went above and beyond often left and become cops because they were paid poorly and there was no pathway to career advancement as an SSAs. The city council should not be fighting to maintain policing roles, but should be investing in creation, in the creation of a supportive school position that pays black and brown workers well, which don't require a bad degree and which do require training in restorative justice and de-escalation. Positions like restorative justice coordinators, professionals, youth advocates, community outreach coordinators, and parent coordinators. Performance, restorative justice isn't just a program, but a meaningful cultural shift that needs funding and time. Attempting to simply retrain one of the largest police departments in the country, NYPD's School Division, is an expensive, ineffective, and misguided move that won't change a deeply embedded cultural police. It is time for us to be serious about change that can make our schools safer. Just shifting the responsibility from NYPD to DOE with no change in philosophy or commitment to dismantle racist systems will only perpetuate the trauma. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. And next we'll hear from Naomi Sharlin.
Starting time.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity. Um, my name is Naomi. I am a teacher in um, uh, high school in the Bronx. Um, I've been a teacher in New York City public schools for over ten years in three different boroughs, um, all in Title One schools. And in my experience, schools struggle to meet students' social, emotional needs. Schools don't have the resources to meet the needs of our students. Teachers, and again, I'm sure I'm echoing things that other people have said, but teachers often take on this role of being a social worker, being a therapist, which, you know, in a way we're happy to do, but in another way we're absolutely not trained for. Um, and so it's, it's not fair to us, and it's also not fair to students who are being short-changed in terms of having their needs met. I recently started working at a school that does have a robust um, social work department. And it's been really striking to me to see the difference in the classroom. Um, and that I am able to do so much more in the, I mean, in the classroom now on Zoom, but um,
And that I am able to do so much more in the, in the classroom now on Zoom, but I am able to do so much more instructionally because my students' social, social-emotional needs are so much more likely to be met. And we heard from young people earlier today who try to go see a social worker and they don't get seen all day. My students are able to be seen by a social worker when they need to talk to somebody. And yeah, the difference is just, it's so stark. And so I would like to kind of add my voice to the chorus that we make real substantive change to actually allocate resources towards supporting students' social-emotional needs. Putting school safety officers under the heading of the Department of Education does not do that. That is a stall tactic from where I stand. We need, we need real change. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And next we will hear from John Felchi.
Starting time.
Good afternoon, everybody. Can you, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Okay. So thank you for allowing me to speak this afternoon to the chairman and the committee. I just had a few quick statements that I want to make. I just want to say I do have a mission and message in the New York City Public School System. Okay, so this is important to me. My name is John Felchi. I'm a former school safety officer. I was a school safety officer in nineteen ninety-four, before, before, with the D O E. And I merged shoulders from N Y P D in two thousand eight. I left the job in two thousand sixteen. I'm now presently a social worker. So, so I understand this from both sides. However, keeping that in mind, every system, in my opinion, has to have professionals for different, you know, different needs. Okay, so even although we do need more counseling staff working with the students, especially after this pandemic is over, we do have to keep in, in mind that there are a lot of the other situations where a trained, if you want to call it a security force, a law enforcement force, will be necessary. And that's, and, and ready, you know, to act, such as events that occurred like on nine eleven, okay? I was on our school safeties in nine eleven. It was other chaos, which we all know that, natural disasters, and so yeah, therefore removing school safety agents of the New York Public Schools will be a policy that I really think that, that we really do need to look at and visit. And again, as, as we said, to retrain the entire force at this point would be a detriment, I, I believe. And yeah, so that's my, my sense in it. And thank you for allowing me to speak. Thank you for allowing me to voice my opinion concerns.
Thank you. Appreciate that. There have been many people that have dropped on and dropped off throughout today's proceedings. So when we call someone's name, they may have been logged off of Zoom. So if anyone is back on Zoom and registered and we did, and you did not call your name and you still wish to testify, if you could please use the raise hand function in Zoom, and we will call you in the order with which your hand is raised. So we have Bonnie. So if we could please go ahead and unmute Bonnie.
Hello.
Starting time.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Bonnie Massey, and I am a school social worker who has been working in New York City Public Schools and school programs for about twenty years. And I just really want to adding to that, that a lot of the work that I've done over the last like ten, ten years or so, ten to fifteen years, has been doing restorative justice work in schools. And I want to thank you guys for like the moves that you guys are making. I really appreciate it. And I've been involved in a lot of the work that's been happening over like the last decade in trying to decrease suspensions, decrease arrests of, you know, and trying to make all of this stuff more equitable. My concern has always been and continues to be is that there's not enough resources put into that work. And, you know, as the speaker before me just spoke, said like right now, after, especially after the pandemic, as we're going back into school, we're going to need more and more social workers. We're going to need more and more, and not just social workers, right? Like people who are youth developers, people who do that work, who know how to do that work and who are trained in that work, and training of all school staff to do that work regardless of what their positions are. It's one thing to put things on paper and say, oh yeah, we're going to do restorative justice now. It's another thing to actually carry that out in a school, and it takes a tremendous amount of effort. I'm seeing my time go down. And so I just want to say it's unconscionable to me that we're going to spend money putting that on, you know, bringing officers in, regardless of where the officers are, who they work for, what their bosses are. It's unconscionable to me that we're going to spend resources on that when we need resources so badly to do this other thing well that we've been saying that we want to do and that, you know, people say. And I'm saying, I have myself like been somebody who's been involved in meeting circles between people who were at each other with machetes. And it's those things that stop people and, and fix those things. And so I just, it takes a lot though, and we need those resources.
I'm expired.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chair Trager, there are no further hands raised, so that concludes the public testimony portion of this legislative hearing.
I just, I want to thank all the students, the educators, social workers, school psychologists, school staff, parents, advocates, everyone that took the time out today. This has been some of the most powerful testimonies, certainly of my tenure, very sobering. And, you know, I, I just, I try to center myself back to my teaching days as well. And understanding that the word safety, it's, we have to look at it holistically. And we had, again, I'll just share with my colleagues, a number of my students shared with me that they were experiencing food insecurity. That is not something we can go to a school safety agent to, to respond to. A number of our students were dealing with trauma impacts from whether it's domestic violence, other housing insecurity, not knowing where they're, whether they'll have safe housing, supportive housing. At the same time, as I mentioned, you know, repeatedly, we've had school safety agents putting their lives on the line even now during this, during this time, this pandemic. Folks who have tragically passed away because of the pandemic, workforce that's predominantly made up of women of color, they don't make the salary of officers. And, you know, and this is something that's, this is, this is very critical work because we have to center kids. But I'm also mindful that we're dealing also with, with humans, human beings and people's lives. And you know, there have been some calls, for example, to what some people mentioned during the budget fight last year to, to, to fire these positions. And then to use the money to prepare them for different careers. And, you know, there's practical questions such as who's going to pay their rent? Who's going to support them with health insurance and so forth? They're human beings. They have children who also go to the school system. And so like the public advocate and other people have used, you know, it's not just about a just transition. We really do need to have a very holistic, broad, reimagining conversation about not just school safety, but school climate. I know that we many oftentimes associate school safety with like suspension numbers or other types of, but, you know, I want to center the, the conversation to the word.
Council member, you cut out. Chair Trager.
A, can, can folks, can folks hear me?
No, I was trying to get your attention, but I don't know if you maybe couldn't hear me.
Can you hear me now, Malcolm?
Yeah, you cut out for the last minute or two.
My, my apologies, but I, I just, I wanted to say, just to kind of summarize, is that this is, this is a conversation that's far deeper than just simply moving things, moving personnel. And quite frankly, students, educators, labor advocates, they must be at the table. This is not something that can be done in piecemeal, or this, this has to be a true collaborative effort, collaborative discussion. I was just sharing, if folks lost me during the conversations, that this is a very important but, but difficult, challenging conversation. Because I just, to repeat that, I believe that school safety, I, I appreciate their work during the pandemic. I appreciate the, the role that they can play. I do believe fundamentally, school leaders are in charge of schools. That is something that we saw earlier today, that N Y P D had a difficult time answering. You saw the, the spirited exchange and debate about who's in charge of the building. What does that mean for students? What does that mean for staff? That has implications. But at the same time, I am very mindful that there are people who do value the work of wanting to keep kids safe and supported. But we do need to center what the kids are telling us. They need more counselors. They need more social workers. They want restorative practices to be embedded in, in, in terms of the entire school community. I, I would echo that right now, the key word that's needed for now and moving forward to the next school year or into summer is the word connection. How to reconnect with our children, who is best suited and licensed to, to conduct evaluations of where our kids are at, taking stock of where they're at, getting baseline data of not just academic, no, it's social-emotional baseline data. Are our kids okay? So that's a safety conversation that doesn't always get centered in this debate. But that's going to certainly be heavy in my mind as we now and moving into this budget season as well. So I just want to thank all of my colleagues. I want to thank all the advocates. We may not always agree in every single detail, but I know where your heart is. It's about the children and about keep, keeping them safe and supported. And also, I have to say this, a number of school educators and, and support staff, they're human beings and they're experiencing trauma. We don't really hear this enough, but I've been on the phone during this pandemic with principals who have broken down in tears trying to fight for their kids to get hot, hot meals. Teachers fighting like hell for their kids who are battling housing insecurity and other issues. That's trauma for them too. They've had loved ones pass away, members of school communities pass away. So our educators, our school staff, they're also enduring trauma. And that also impacts what happens in the school community. So we need, this, this budget and this, this year ahead, it is critical to not just simply, you know, move to, move to September for every, this is about reconnecting with our kids and our staff, evaluating, taking stock of their needs, not just academic. You know, the only evaluations I want to hear is about our kids and our staff, are they okay? What more can we do to support them during this very difficult, challenging time? Some people want to center it to academic. To me, are our kids socially, emotionally okay? Are they, that is critical. That's a safety conversation. So I just want to say we have more work to do. We've got a lot of powerful testimony, we're going to continue to go through this. I'm going to push the administration for true collaboration because quite frankly, this has not been it. This has not been it. And I truly appreciate all of you for doing the work well before the pandemic. And certainly, your, your work has been that much deepened during this very challenging time. So I thank all the panel, I thank my colleagues, thank you, Malcolm, and thank the extraordinary council staff for their work in partnership. This hearing is adjourned.